From trustee Brazil and then to discuss it together. But before we do that, we'll have time for public comment as we do with all our special meetings. So if those, we'll start first with those who are present. If you are here and you would like to make a public comment, please come forward. You have three minutes. And then, once we finish with all of the folks who are here who would like to comment, we'll turn to those who are participating remotely.
Do you want to take role? In the role.
Take role, sorry.
It's a regular special meeting.
A regular special meeting, I'm sorry. We'll take role and then we'll start public.
A regular special meeting.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Clintoff, present, Brazil. Kerry, present. Noel, present. Riser. All here.
You say pleasant or present?
I didn't get back till three in the morning, man. I'm working on like vapor here, so.
You're doing great.
You got me at a weak point here.
And then, Will, we should just kind of firm up the agenda. That it's a public comment and discussing presentation.
And then, we're having a presentation and then we're discussing the presentation. But we're not taking any action today. And then, we'll be adjourning after we discuss. Please, Pam, go forward.
Good morning, Pam Boyd, a SIO resident. Good morning. I am encouraged to see this working session and what it will bring for this board. I have concerns that date back to the spring of 2021 and August 2021, when five members of the board voted in special duties akin to those of a charter township or supervisor along with doubling his salary. Only two of those members who voted for those additional duties are still on this board, one being Supervisor Hathaway and the other Treasurer Palmer. The other voters for those overreaching duties are no longer members of this board. That was a huge red flag for me back in the day. What did that discussion and vote do for our township? It gave this board more angry residents. Well, I'm anxious for this working session to spell out a better board strategy. The facts in those duties are what I call the elephant in the room, or supervisors' folly are still in force. Until you correct the 2021 power grab, you may have a hard time moving forward. I ask, as a 30-year resident of this township, for you to take the supervisor's role back to the definition of a general law supervisor, Chapter 21, Section 4161, Revised Statutes of 1846. By the way, one of the general law township duties is the supervisor shall be secretary of the Board of Review. I've gone to every Board of Review meeting in the last year and a half, but I, except for one, if I recall correctly. And I have never seen our supervisor in that role as secretary for any of those meetings. And then, this morning, of course, I had a PS. So I pulled up my August 2021 summary of that board meeting, where, and I'm sorry, interview administrator, I didn't make the comment. And so, I'm going to read a brief section of that. And if you flip it over to the circled in pink. See, next question. How many residents have had management position in their everyday jobs? The sign of a good manager is one who knows how to delegate jobs, not take on more, and more jobs that other people may be better qualified to do. A good manager also brings his team together to work as a cohesive unit. If you haven't been to any BOP meetings, then you wouldn't know that every month, the supervisor shows us how much they are not a cohesive group. Red flags much? I'm just warming up. Our clerk has concerns that the supervisor job description below have taken one of her statutory duties out of her control. So, the history of some on this board taking away the clerk's duties has a long history. So, I felt strongly during this discussion that newer BOP members were not respecting her concerns by saying, "We can work together to figure things out." I'm sorry, what? The job description of supervisor, which was agreed to in a previous meeting, was slightly changed in the documents for this meeting, which was, by the way, being voted on for approval. Why slip in changes without discussion? Why not say, "Oh, I've made changes to the description." Any discussions? What happened to the campaign promise to be transparent? Some of the trustees seem to be in a hurry to pass the damn thing, meaning a new job description and salary increase and move on to the next topic. Those members of the BOP who'd objected to the hurry-up-and-pass, Clerk Clintoff and Trustee Noel, did not have enough support. However, that doesn't mean they were wrong to raise their questions. In fact, I would go so far as to say that every resident who spoke up that afternoon was against voting for the damn thing too. Can you hear us now? Thank you very much.
Mr. Rowley, can you please put the camera on? People speaking.
Somebody has their.
Yeah, I'll stop sharing, sorry.
Sharing.
I was so excited to finally figure out how to do it. There we go.
I have a presentation. My able assistant, who will work for $15 an hour in parking space, is passing it out. Hey, folks, I'm a research person. I did this exact same exercise when it came to deciding who the FOIA coordinator is. This is my exact same format. The way I derived this, initially, I looked at general law townships with populations greater than 10,000, all-inclusive. This is not cherry-picked data. These are all of them, and I've added a couple of close to us as good examples. So, what we have here is a chart that shows these various townships, their taxable value, which, as Mr. Rowley told us, gives some sense of the workload. It lists if they have a manager and who the financial person is reporting to. My understanding is this meeting is to talk about org structure. So, I want this board to have knowledge about how other comparable townships manage their workload, their org structure. So, all of this information is derived from these township's webpage. This is all public information. If you want to verify any of it, go to their webpage. If you look hard enough, you will find it. The only one that was lacking is Summit. And I did not call them to figure it out. There is at least one township that has a unique relationship where the planning director is in charge of finance. What usually happens is, as townships have, are less population, less taxable value, then they start to share duties. And so, here's a classic example where that was done. So, if you look at this, you see predominantly that the reporting structure for finance is to the clerk. And there's a reason for that. And these townships have reference to the reasons for that. I have additional data here, if anybody has questions, township-specific, on their rationale for why they do this reporting this way. And when they talk about duties for the manager, except any duties that are statutorily assigned
Thirty seconds.
to elected officials. And I have that detail. I just wanted to give you the high level. You would see that predominantly, it's the clerk. It's statute. It's not rocket science. The rest of these townships understand the statute. I also want to point out that for SIO Township, the clerk was responsible. Up until the board, four prior members, no longer here, counting Patrick, changed that responsibility. They changed that responsibility in violation of statute. Okay? I'm not done, Will.
You're done with your three minutes?
No, Will. Ms. Boyd had four minutes.
Buy yourself extra time, I'm sorry.
Ms., excuse me.
Who's next?
Ms. Boyd had four minutes. I'm not done.
I'd be okay if we're going in on three minutes.
Thank you.
All right, one extra minute.
Nobody does this to me. Now, on the second page, only one township has an org structure listed, and it's Brighton. And I thought it was interesting, because this is the one that clearly spells it out. They have a manager. They clearly highlight the reporting structure. It clearly goes to the clerk. So, please, please, take this information. Ask me any question you have specifically. I have it all recorded here. This should be the basis of your decisions.
I have a follow-up question for Kathleen Brand.
Can we wait until we're done with the comments?
Yes, it can.
Who's next for public comments?
Good morning. Kat Stein, longtime resident of SIO Township. Talk about hope. And the definition of hope is to want an outcome that makes your life better in some way. Okay? So, I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you how hopeful I am for better governance of SIO Township due to the three new trustees, to the joint other valuable members on this board. The last two years have been a struggle for the residents of SIO, as we have watched the heightened level of dysfunction of SIO's governing body. And we weren't watching it in real time. We were reading about it, story after story, printed or posted about SIO Township embroiled in yet another crisis or conflict. You now hold three seats left by previous trustees, then blindly follow Supervisor Hathaway down a path of dysfunction of their own making. Your arrival to this board helps correct the balance of power it has been severely lacking until now. However, this board still has a couple of major hurdles that may impede any immediate plans you have to right this ship. One of these hurdles being a mindset with all things related to treasury that are done because that's the way we've always done it. The other hurdle is the amount of authority the supervisor has acquired in a conniving manner. Power that should be removed and replaced with the same level of authority held by other supervisors from general law townships. Please understand you have the full support of many residents as you work to overcome, correct, or remove these hurdles. I, along with the other members of this community, are encouraged by the experience and knowledge you bring to the table. You have already shown that you are independent thinkers with ideas and plans that you seem eager to carry out. It has taken two years for this township to reach the sad state it's in. Speaking for myself and others, we don't expect brilliance and we don't anticipate wrong decisions to be righted overnight. But we are very hopeful for a better tomorrow for all of us who reside in SIO Township. We have a, work as a good team here, and I hope that you have many successes. Okay? And I look forward to attending the balance of this meeting on Zoom when I leave here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kat.
David Green, SIO Township resident and voter. I understand some of you were taken aback by my behavior at the special board meeting held on November 1st. I'm not here to apologize. I'm here to explain. I and many of my fellow residents do not trust the supervisor. For you, Mark and John, this probably is hard to believe. But that's because you've not been here for the last two years to watch the devolution of this board and the dissolution of democracy. Having served on the township board for over 10 years, I know how a good board should function. Perhaps a few, perhaps the last few board meetings have given you a glimpse of the issues you face. I think you saw some today. We watched this man disrespect, ignore, insult, and otherwise abase the township's very qualified, now former township administrator, David Rowley. Mr. Rowley came to the realization that his time here was being wasted, and he resigned after only six months. But he left behind an 11-page memo detailing what has to be done to correct the issues. Have you read this issue? Have you read this memo? I bring it to, with every board meeting, I bring it. To my knowledge, only one of these items has been accomplished, and that is the hiring of a parks director. It was needed, no question, but not nearly as much as the hiring of a finance manager and the conducting of an administrative audit. I believe the clerk put an item on the agenda over maybe 10 times to bring in an outside CPA firm. Each time, the supervisor summarily took that item off the agenda without any discussion. One has to ask, what is he afraid of? He also has ignored the invalid advice and counsel of some of the board members. When one of them would question an agenda item before the agenda was approved, he would simply respond, "Now is not the time for discussion." When the item came up for discussion, he would move the model motion and it would pass 5 to 2. Does that sound familiar? "Now is not the time for discussion." Take it from one who campaigned with him, who went door-to-door with him, who helped him get elected, who thought he knew him, who had high hopes that the team we ran for would be moving SIO forward. That was our slogan. Nothing can be further from the truth. This man cannot be trusted. He is not a man of his word. He will do and has done anything in order to attain and retain power. Speaking of power and control, have you two read the job description of the general law township supervisor? Reads more like that of a general. If you haven't read it, you shouldn't. And after doing so, I think you'll feel like many of us in the township. You need to rescind motion 2021-31, the motion that put this job description into effect. You need to put the power back in the hands of the board members. You'll need to do that before any meaningful discussion about doing things together and revamping new organization can occur. Thank you.
By the way, David, Mr. Hathaway shorted you one time.
I'm not surprised.
Thank you.
Come on, we're talking about fair.
I have iPhones, we just don't count, right?
Yeah, would, maybe, Will, would you prefer somebody else use time?
I'm pressing this button, it's counting down three minutes.
Will, I'm not suggesting you would be wrong.
If someone else would like to keep time, that's fine.
I will do it.
No, someone else on the board.
I've been timing things too, kind of silently. And David was at three, and other people asked to go to four or went to four. And so, I think we shouldn't get too hung up on a three versus an extra four minutes. So, I don't know, let's hear.
Thank you, John.
Everybody does not have a time limit on comments.
Your time is up, buddy. Ryan, please proceed.
All right, good morning, everybody. First off, one thing that nobody's done so far. Welcome trustee Kerry to your first official meeting. One of the things I understand speaking to me about, and one of the things that's crucial, I see it up there, is working together as a team. It's something I've done in my own organization this year, to work together as a team across all the employees. We can disagree, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but we need to work together to get to our goals. Otherwise, we're going to fight with each other and we're never going to get to where we want to go. We have to work together as a team. Can we have a bad day? Sure. Can we have problems and can we have differences of opinion? Absolutely. But we need to know what our goals are and we need to work to get to them. One of the things that's key to that is organizational structure. And I think that's one of the areas where the township needs to clarify who's doing what, how we're doing it, and when it's going to be done by. That's really, really important, because if we don't know what our goals are and when we're going to try to achieve them, we're probably not going to be able to succeed. And one of the keys to that is obviously something like the budget, which sometimes has gotten down to the wire. And then, also the audit, where we're still working to get the audit done, but we don't have a goal of getting it done by December 31st or January 5th. Whatever the goal is, it's better to know what your goal is and hit that date by doing the things you need to do to get there. The organizational structure will be key to moving all of us forward and allowing us to have a better township. Shorter meetings, hopefully, maybe?
I don't know.
But definitely something that will make everybody's life better from all of you sitting on the board, the public, and the taxpayers. It's, thank you.
Is anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Hi, everyone. Wow, this is quite a different tone. And I appreciate, I can't see, but I think it was John who said that we shouldn't be getting hung up on a few extra seconds or minute when it comes to comments. And I completely agree with that. And let me tell you why. It feels to me, well, very deliberately, this board, this past board, created a situation where residents, well, this past board and the board before, created a situation where residents weren't listened to. Hundred people showing up at a meeting saying, "Don't do this garbage deal." And they did the garbage deal. So, there's a long history of this us-versus-them mentality. This is not how I approach my work. Ryan kind of stole a lot of my thunder with his comments. He was highlighting the three things I insist on at work prior to my team starting a job. And that is knowing the roles, the goals, and when it's done. And I think if you specify who's doing it, what they're actually trying to achieve, clearly, and when it's done, you end up with a success, because you have a clear communication, you're transparent, and everyone has expectations that can be met. The frustrating part is when expectations aren't met, like when our government isn't representing us. This board, the changes that have occurred over the last few months have stirred up a board now that is ready and willing to focus on some of the challenges that we have faced over the last few years. That feels great. One thing that I'd like to ask is that we establish, reestablish for meetings like this, comments at the end for residents. And the reason I say that is because it's difficult for us to give you our feedback on a topic discussed if we can't comment it at the end. And it leads to the frustration during the meeting of wanting to say something but not being able to, even if it's like. So, yeah, let me just say this. I, on my part in the past, I have deliberately abused the chat and other components of the Zoom application to share my frustration and lack of ability to communicate to the board what I wanted to say. I think we've reached a different stage in the relationship between the board and the residents. I think we've seen that in the last two Board of Trustees meetings. And if we are going to be a team, I would appreciate the fact that you would want to hear from us at the end of the meeting in our reaction to especially special topics like this. And I will commit to not being a jerk on the chat or turning off, turning on my microphone and saying something during the non, when it's not time for resident comments. We reached that level of behavior because there was nothing else to do. At least I did. I can't speak for others. This is a great step in the right direction. Thank you very much. And I just want to appreciate everyone in the room and what you're trying to accomplish here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah, hi, this is Paula Globerson, and good afternoon. And thank you for doing this working session. And I'm very encouraged with the new members and how the board will function in a better way. And I want to make a comment about autocracy and the supervisors currently being in charge of every single committee and committee meetings. And that's not how a general law should function. And we need to get back to how previous, well, at least I loved when Mr. Tickle and, yes, the township was smaller, but it was very collaborative with the community. And I want to specifically talk about the newsletter and the reason why the editor quit and that the supervisor was censoring information. And I'd like to see, as part of this organizational chart, that we get a newsletter back and that specifically more people, residents, know about these Zoom meetings and that they can go to YouTube and watch the planning commission and what's going on with the, like, heritage right now. And since the board spent taxpayer dollars, the $54,000, which I think is probably the, one of the best usage of money in a long time, we need to get more resident participation instead of people being surprised and being angered and get more people involved in committees and making comments on the rules. And I don't have all the numbers for, like, which statute number, but Supervisor Hathaway needs to not be in the organizational chart as the head of every committee. That is not advantageous for anyone. And I'm very, very encouraged with the new members of the board. And I think things are going to improve when you have everyone independently thinking. And I really appreciate what's happening and you spending your Saturday doing a working session for this organizational chart. And we need this finance manager situation and business model figured out ASAP. There's got to be a qualified individual. I almost think we should ask Mr. Rowley if he would consider coming back, because he had a lot of very good ideas. But anyway, I appreciate that. But just like control, control of media and one person in control of what is going into the newsletter or on the website is not appropriate to me. But thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Who's next?
Robert Pattinson.
Jim. Jim, can you let me in?
Please proceed, Rob. Thanks, we'll move on to the presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kathy, you did have a question.
Yes, question for Kathleen. You've. What you handed out to us, you've got manager down here four times. Was this your term or are they called managers as opposed to administrators in these terms?
No, they vary the phrase. I just consistently stayed with one. So.
Thanks.
Okay, right. All right, let me get back to sharing screen. All right. So I'm gonna kind of drive this how I would drive a meeting, executive meeting, right? It's a lot more open. You have to call people, you can call out. It's dynamic. It's okay to get emotional. It's okay to speak up. Say what's on your mind, right? I mean, that's how I would run this, right? So I just want to start off by saying, and I'm gonna do, I may have a little bit of a pitch session in part of this too, right? Is we talked about, is unify this team. This has got to be the number one rule here of you folks, right? And you get a, if we use this term, I'm gonna keep beat this up until everybody drives in there. There is no I am right in team. It does not exist. And I am getting really tired of that, right? We all are here together. One thing you mentioned about, you said, hey, Mark, if we have a manager, we have an admin. They have seven bosses. Kind of yes, I hear what you're saying. Kind of yes, kind of not. The way it should work. Is we as the board, our bosses are the residents, right? They tell us what to do. It's no different than we have shareholders in the company. Shareholders basically direct the board. And we'd be a board of directors. Here we're called a board of trustees, right? We follow the will and the will and desires of the shareholders. In this case, it'd be the residents. And we, the team, create a set of goals and objectives, right? We hand those down to a CEO. In this case, it'd be our manager or our administrator. And by then, they execute those goals. I think Jonathan said it, he's spot on, right? I hand you, I say, here's the objectives I'm looking for you to achieve, right? How you achieve those, that's not on office. If I gotta tell that person how to do it, I got the wrong guy or the wrong girl, right? I'm not gonna sit there and micromanage this person every day. They, we enable them, we give them the authority, responsibility, and then we measure. How they achieve those goals. If they don't live up to it, we find somebody else. It's really that simple. And I think what I see this team doing a lot is a lot of micromanagement. Everybody wants to get in everybody's business, whether they have the authority or not, whether they have the knowledge or not. Everybody has an opinion on everything, whether their opinion is valid or not. It's like, enable them. Our job should be to help, right? Help that person, you know, push for, right? Only when they ask it. And we're not, we're not doing that. Everybody's getting everybody's business. I just, it's a head scratcher to me. It's like, that seems hard, right? So again, it's not a team effort, right? The other thing I see this team doing is we don't, we don't focus on what's important. We get lost in minutia. We have a whole thing, we're back and forth about office chairs. Just somebody pick some office chairs, man. Who cares? We have so much bigger problems to cover, right? We have, well, you probably weren't part of that.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, there's just, there's a whole back and forth. I'm just giving an example. And I'm not just looking.
It's okay.
Just because you're gonna be across from me. Well, we went through a whole thing about just, you know, a bunch of back and forth that we just. Hey, John, you're in charge of office. Just fantastic. Go pick some out. Great. Because we have such bigger fish to be frying right now, right? With the finances and the audit, all the others. So I want to go focus on that, right? So again, we have some of that stuff that needs to happen. I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna save this for the end about the new hires. I did talk to Mark Thompson on Thursday. Fairly disappointing what I heard, to be blunt. And I'll say that for later. Actually, really disappointing. Because that's, if we can't hire Mark, I don't know how we're gonna hire a finance director.
Explain who Mark is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Thompson is a tentative administrator. Seems like a great, would be a great hire, just a great hire. And he has serious doubts about coming here. Serious doubts.
I don't know that he has serious doubts. I think he has some reservations of. I've talked to him too.
You just talked to.
I don't want to.
Yeah.
I talked to him this week and I also, Kathy and I had an interview with him last Saturday. And he needs, we represented to him and he represented back to us. That there needs to be a structure in place with clear lines of authority, reporting, all that kind of thing. So I. I think there's light at the end of the tunnel. And I think that a successful meeting today with respect to where we are on org charts, I've seen. Different org charts out there to the extent that we can coalesce around something, not that we want, but that we can live with, that works best for the township. I think that'll assuage some of his concerns, Mark.
Agreed, one percent. And that's what, what the conversation with him was, I would follow up with him tomorrow based on the outcome of this meeting. So I think.
I'll be watching on Zoom. I don't know that.
Yeah, you might be. It's very possible. What, you know, I still want to get into some of the things I heard right now. Let's save that till later. I just don't want to go there quite yet. So part of my thinking was, when I put this agenda together, was first off, I think we should all be able to agree on this other strategic. Twenty twenty three, oh, I love it. And I don't know if I included everything, was all included. So I know you had some stuff you wanted to add to the agenda. I wonder just to make sure we're all aligned on that stuff. How we do those, maybe getting the how today. I just want to make sure the what, what are we trying to get to? And we have some slides there, so we'll get them in a moment. Then I just want to kind of jump into, hey, here's the tactical stuff that seemed to be the hot stuff. This is all open to discussion. Maybe I got the right ones there, maybe I don't. I'm gonna kind of lean on you guys to tell me, do I get the right most pressing things? But those are things that I heard during the meetings, but maybe there's, maybe there are others. You guys know I'm really big on killing these camps. There is no, there's only one camp here. It's Camp Sio. There's no other camps. And there seems to be a, sometimes a little camp, or Jessica camp, or other camps. I just don't want any camps. There's only one camp, Camp Sio, right? That has to go. And the most important thing, I need to end by three o'clock because I gotta get something to smoke for the game tonight, to make this very clear to everyone. I have people coming over. The smoker has to start by three. So those are, those are the goals. And then we can kind of just go in here. This is the one I want to keep everybody focused on. We got to, as a team, work together. What I have noticed, I will say this much about Will and Jessica, again, I've never said anything behind your back that I wouldn't say to you guys publicly. I think you guys know that, right? I try to be very transparent. I think both you guys are smart folks. I think you both want to do the right thing, I really, from what I can tell. Again, I don't have a history here. If we could all work together, the change we could make would be incredible, right? Especially with the talents of John Reiser, Kathy Knoll. Julian, Madonna. I'm getting old. I just think it's a force to reckon with, right? If we all just focus in one direction rather than cancel on a lot of energy, right? Now, I know some people maybe agree with Will or disagree with Will, or agree with Jessica, just be there. They're the people that we elected. We need to empower and help them. And then we need to help them work together, right? And done. Right?
Yes.
Those are elected, elected folks, so. Okay, enough with the opening spiel.
Let me be clear on what I meant by we are the administration. Since we're a general law township, we don't have, when we, the higher levels of government, like the charter township, the supervisor has more power. You get to a village. Than in a city where the mayor has most power, but you still have. So it's, we are responsible.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
So it's not we're micromanaging, but we are responsible for what the administrator does or anybody else under, you know.
As you guys know, I lean on you guys for all this. I have. I know you guys are a little way more about statues, so they can pretend to be. Okay, so let's go to the deck now. And then again, this is all open for edit, all open for discussion. I'm married to anything here, right? It doesn't, and by the way, I don't care if it's my idea or somebody else's idea. I just want the good idea. Doesn't matter. You can tell me, hey, Mark, that idea is stupid. I won't be hurt. My feelings won't be, again, I've been married for forty one years. There's nothing anybody can say to this room that'll hurt my feelings. It hasn't already been said to me. Well, in case. Trust me, when I say that. So if we go to the first one, these are different things that I heard, you know, from the meetings I've been at so far. But if I didn't encapsulate everything, you guys need to tell me. But, you know, we need to have all the financial data, you know, updated, published online. Again, how are we gonna get to that? This is gonna be a separate meeting. I just want to make sure that we encapsulate everything that we have. All financial data is concealable. Project standards are documented and available online. So I'm thinking things like a sad project, for example. One of the ideas I had against an IT guy, right? We can put this in, call Microsoft SharePoint. We can make templates. We can make all that data readily online. That way, the users always know. For example, we have a sad project, like in Merlin Way. David Reed would know, hey, did he sign off on the, on the quote, right? Does he know where the project stands? Do you know that we've signed the agreement? Where all those things are, they're readily involved since we're spending their money. They have a right to know those things. So we mentioned the newsletter loud and clear. We gotta have one that talks about what our strategic goals, our updates for each, for each relevant department. And the commissions, all the various commissions, the parks. To me, that's all transparency. Am I mismanaging here? Do we? Got her every, I mean, is this all good?
I think that's good. I think those are great. I would say the first two bullet points, I think, are doable within twenty twenty three. Just with the right hires, we could get it done.
Okay. All right, I would say this, so let's put some names. So we prefer to say, Jessica, these kind of fall on, on you a little bit then? These are yours, right?
Yes, provided we have the right, I mean, it's a combination of Donna and me, but I think provided we have the right analytical skills and IT skills. And our staff, we can do all of that through BSNA, our current program.
Yeah, I would never expect you guys to be getting into the doldrums of code.
Absolutely, yeah.
Feed that to an I P R T person. They just make sure it's.
We'll have our chart of accounts done. We'll have things kind of labeled and measured and meaningful.
Cool. All right, so let's put, I love always assigning, you know, kind of general, and again, we'll get into more of the detail here. This is all just high level strategic right now. That, no, no, to me, that's, we'd be thrilled if we could do this today. I'd be pretty happy. But let's, all right, so let's empower, make sure Jessica then, and we talked about that earlier. If Jessica's given the responsibility to do that, we have to empower her. With the authority to do that as well, right? And then just measure her success. Stay out of her way. If she asks for help, we help her. If she doesn't need any help, we just, again, stay out of the way. Okay, so that's everything on transparency side?
Yeah, but Mark, I'm not opposing this, but sometimes the devil's, not sometimes. I suppose every time, the devil's in the details. So what does number one mean? What does it mean with respect to BSNA? What does it mean to ledgers? What does it mean to authority? What does it mean to Sandy Adler's role? What does it mean to interaction with all that, you know?
John, a hundred percent agree with you. That alone would be a separate meeting.
Okay.
If I tried to do all that today, we'd never get through it all. So I hear you loud and clear. I agree a thousand percent. I just want to start at the highest level. Do we all at least agree on the top level steps? Because if we don't agree there, I don't want to jump into detail if we don't even agree on these things.
Listen, I'm, I'm fine with this. I want to know what Will thinks about this too.
Others want to come in.
No, no, Kathy, I don't mean, I'm not trying to be subordinate to Will. My apologies for interrupting, but I would like to hear. Go around the horn and hear what people say on this. That's all. My apologies, Kathy.
Yeah, yeah, let's make sure this is encapsulated. But you are absolutely right. Just to summarize, there is a, the devil's always in the detail, the actual plan, the actual statement of work in my world. So we have to write that up, right? I'm just trying to say, the high level, what is the high level goal, strategic goal for twenty twenty three? If we agree on these, then you're right. The next step would be to jump into.
The.
Not the bolts. Yeah, the nuts and bolts of it. Okay, sorry. And then we assign it, so.
Okay, I wanted to make a comment on the newsletter. These are detailed comments. And I'm stating this now because we've got some recent correspondence regarding submitting articles for a newsletter. I think we pause until we have specific details wrote down for the newsletter. So that maybe it becomes a priority meeting real soon, or an issue to cover during a board meeting soon. I don't want a haphazard, thrown together newsletter that is not a reflection of this entire war to go out at this time.
Okay, so this is what I think I just heard. So we have to put someone in charge of the newsletter, but the person who's in charge of it is the aggregator of data. Not necessarily the writer of the data. They aggregate it. But somebody's got to be in charge of, hey, Kathy, do we get your latest update? And Donna, do we get your update? And Jim, where do we get your update? Those kinds of things. And also, I guess, I'd agree what's in a newsletter, right? There should be a standard form format for that newsletter.
Yes. It's a representation of the entire board.
Yeah.
Not just one person.
Hundred percent.
One person shouldn't have total executive control over what goes into the newsletter.
Either we get a report from you or from Donna or from Jessica, they have full editing rights of their own materials.
So Kathy, can you help me understand?
Well, you should, you should.
I know, but that's not our staff's quote.
I've got like ten newsletters and they appear to me to have. Stuff from Will, stuff from Mary, stuff from Marsha, stuff from Donna, the things from the fire chief, and then going back, there's just. It's kind of like this group effort that people contribute to, or have I got that wrong?
You have it wrong. So what you're seeing is articles in the newsletter, and that's correct. Those articles are there. But many of them were edited by Will. And. One of my points is, and I know we're going off track here, going into details, but there should be no advocacy in the newsletter. There has been, and I will show you outside of this meeting, specific examples. I brought them to Will's attention. He has ignored them. I will show them to you. I have my newsletters at home. We can discuss it privately.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand that.
Do you have a better understanding?
I, I, I understand your position. I don't have the understanding that you do, having seen the examples, but I appreciate your point.
So.
Okay. So, so I agree with you. It's, it's, the newsletter has, until recently, always been a good representation of the township efforts. We can improve it. We can go electronic, do a lot of things. We've always had a very principled editor who's representing things, most recently Mary Gillis. And why Mary resigned, not to speak for her, but was because Will's understanding was that through his job description that the board passed in August of twenty twenty one. That he has sole authority to state what is said on behalf of the township. And so, for example, when David Rowley would say, oh, I didn't say that, and then Mary would be in a situation where she'd have to go back and forth with Will. Which, you know, Mary has years of editing experience, is a great writer. And then this summer, it was in my article. So when you say each person writes their own thing, you know, I write an article about, you know, elections and finance and records. And I say, hey, we've got the finance director position open. And I write a sentence in there that says, and in the meantime, any retired CPAs with public finance, please contact the township. Will struck that volunteer solicitation out, and that became the straw that broke the camel's back. He called the printer, this and that. And, and so that's where, I mean, of course, we can talk about free speech. That's not what this meeting's about. But what is the board funding in the newsletter? Is the board funding the supervisor's newsletter? Or is the board funding the township newsletter? Because there is no reason, you know, I mean, something like that, soliciting a volunteer. It's like, come on.
So we're getting into the micromanaging.
You go rabbit hole there. But go ahead.
Suggestion, could we, we have a lot of things that need to be, from the past board, we're a brand new board. So we will, and your presentation is to go through the different things that you have seen that we need to be working on. So we have past issues, but we are a new board. So let's focus on the facts for right now. And then create the newsletter, we're gonna work on the newsletter as a board and come to a consensus on how that should be taken care of. But right now, we can fill in the back history because each of these, every single subject has a back history.
Oh, I'm sure, the devil's in the details, as John said. Again, I don't want to go into that detail today. Let me just, I'll sum it up with this, because I know this is the hotspot, clearly, for everyone. My gut would be, everyone, the process would be, everyone submits an article. We have someone who, we have a person maybe edits, it makes it sound better, maybe we're all not good writers or something like that, makes it sound better. They send it back to you for approval, so if you write something, you would approve that. Oh, I like your edit. So it sounds good. You make me sound good. Everything's always team based, right? There's no backtuck, there's no smack, there's none of that. It's always a good thing. That has to go, right? And then we look at that review, they review it all as a board, and then it goes out and gets approved, done, next, next step, right? That's how it should happen. That's simple. And we should document that process and move forward.
So before we move on from this topic, I just want to say I strongly disagree with trustee Knoll's representation of the background as well as. How Jessica described the incidents that led to the resignation. But I don't think we're spending our time wisely. But I don't think we're spending our time wisely by delving into.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want to go into rabbit hole.
That's fine.
And by the way, anybody, please feel free to call rabbit hole when we do it, and our, our means, you have to throw in a dollar uh in a jar every time we go down a rabbit hole.
I I have an idea about how to move forward on this topic. Um, what, one thing that I do think is time sensitive, Mark, is that, um, Jim and Will are pushing out a newsletter right now as we speak. And so that's my concern right here, is that, um, we we haven't had a newsletter since, uh, uh, editor since the summer. It's an issue the board needs to address. In the meantime, Jim and Will are gathering articles, and they're going to send it to the printer and spend township money unless we either say stop, don't, you know, print a rogue newsletter article to all of our households, or we take the time to figure out a process now. So I would say the probably shorter thing to do, Mark, is to all agree to just put in place a pause, and not put anything out to print right now, and not authorize any expenditure of township resources because, and and Jim and Will, please correct me if I'm wrong, but from everything I've seen, you're planning to pull together a newsletter and publish it within the next six weeks. Is that correct?
Um, I will correct you, yes. We are planning to put together the township's newsletter.
Uh huh.
But there's no rogue aspect to it, so to use that term
Okay.
is a misnomer, and it's actually.
Well, and and I got your back. I think we should put out a newsletter. We 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 haven't, we didn't have a fall newsletter, and I assume the winter one comes next. I really think we should now. Maybe they should send it to all of us so we could take a look at it before it gets published, to make sure that there isn't advocacy, to make sure that there isn't cheap shots. Uh, but but, and I know this is subject to change, hold your seatbelt, Will, but but it it says in Will's job description, and I know that there's, that's the, it's a hot button, it does say that serve as the primary spokesman for the township, write communications on behalf of the township, review and approve for general communications such as the newsletter. So it's in his job description. Whether it should or shouldn't be in there, whether it's BS or not, but so so I think we should do a newsletter. Uh, I I I I think it should go to the board before it goes to 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 the public for us to review, so that it's a so that it's a product of this body, rather than a product of two people's opinion, and I I think if we get a commitment from Will
That would work.
and a commitment from Jim to let us have the the draft, Will, then then I think we're good to go.
But we'll circulate a draft before we send it to the printer.
And then we.
Wouldn't that allow input from the board? If you see something, Kathy, if you if you see something that you feel crosses the line into but sort of, I guess, what was the term you used, advocacy?
Advocacy?
Yeah, then.
Right, right, right.
Because I I agree. I think that the the newsletter should be reporting, it shouldn't be sort of taking positions, and we were crossing the line in the past in doing that, and I'd like to move away from.
And 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 Will, I'll say this, I like the format, I like the editing, I like the look. I like, I guess maybe I'm saying I like Gillis's work on this, and she did all that stuff. So 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 I don't know what role she should have, or I I'm not trying to open up a a rabbit hole there, but 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 I I I think.
We're on track, we're on track to do a newsletter looking like the the newsletter of the past.
And they just send it to us, and if there are red flags or something, we can give us forty eight hours to look at that?
I've got it, I get, I I think that's reasonable for right now, let's get one out, but going forward, let's define a really clear process, everyone's involved. It's not so sprung on us, right? We're not surprised. It's very defined, and that should be, it's pretty.
Okay, I've got concerns about pushing out a haphazard newsletter
I wouldn't want to do that here.
that isn't a reflection of the entire board.
He said, he's got to run it past us, Kathy.
Well, wait a minute.
Who's going to be the editor?
Well.
Well, wait a minute, we'll have no editor. We haven't resolved this. We haven't resolved the issues with Mary.
There there's nothing, she resigned. I'm telling you, please, go forward.
She's the best editor.
When is the deadline?
The deadline for people to submit articles?
No, not to submit, to get out to the public.
Well, we're aiming to get it out in early January.
Why?
Because it's the winter newsletter. It usually comes out in January.
Who will, who will edit my article, for example? Who will?
You will be the final editor.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If we can agree, if we can agree.
Whoa, 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 wait, 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 wait. Don't.
There we go.
Look, look at Will, why wouldn't she? If she wrote something, she should be the final editor of her own material.
But the the, um, the way that we were approaching this is that people would submit their articles, they would come to the township administrator, and he and I would work together on assembling the newsletter. If people want to send, if people want to have a chance to review it, that's, if people want to have a chance to review it, that's fine. But part of the problem that we were encountering in the past was that some articles by some people were crossing the line into advocacy, into board debates. And I, that's what I think we need to move away from, and I admit that I did it myself, so I want to move away.
You've got a rough draft right now, right? You've got a rough draft, is that right?
Well, we're we're pulling it together. The deadline is December fifth for people to submit their articles.
I don't, I can't do that.
It's December fifth.
I don't support this.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, why is that okay?
We're not working as a team.
Well, is it okay that she doesn't support it?
I've always supported it in the past, and this
I don't have time to.
this method is wrong. This is wrong.
I asked this of the board. Don't we owe it to the township?
Not in a flawed manner.
But I'm not saying this.
Not in a haphazard manner with these two editing.
It's not haphazard.
Come on, no.
But if we get, if it has to come to us, and we say, hold the phone, we, I mean, what if it has to come back to the board for approval so that we can look for these things?
You know, we've already missed a newsletter.
Yeah.
And in the past, it's happened. I have every newsletter going back to two thousand eighteen. So for right now, let's, maybe what we should do is work on the structure of the newsletter, the whole organization of that, and then move forward with the newsletter as a team and a new board.
How about this? How about you give us a chance to put together a newsletter, we'll run it by the board for everyone to look at and make sure there's no red flags, no advocacy for positions, no treading into, you know, debates of the board, that it's actually a newsletter that's informative without being sort of inflammatory. And see if we can do it, and if you, if 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 we use this as a test, if we use this as an opportunity to sort of see if if it, if we can do it, then you'll be able to say, oh, no, that was flawed, but if we can do it.
So what happens if I say no, you'll do it anyway?
Well, wait a minute, hold on, hold on.
That's what's happened in the past.
Let's, Kathy, let's, let's give, let's give them a chance. We get, we're not working as a team, that's.
Well, we're not. We, as a team, should come together with definition for how this newsletter is going to occur. This is going to be a haphazard, rolling together of YouTube. A professional editor sits in our audience. We need to work with her and bring her back, and that's going to take some time.
I disagree, I disagree.
You disagree on what?
Mary Gillis resigned, she's not the editor of the newsletter.
But maybe if we can come together as a team, we can talk to her and get her to come back. That's my hope, because she did an excellent job.
Residents really liked her work.
That's wonderful, and I certainly appreciate all of the work that Mary Gillis did in the past, but she has resigned, and there are some issues with, um, how the newsletter was produced in the past that I think I don't need to be raked over the coals in this particular discussion. But what I propose is that we use the model of the newsletter that, uh, Mary Gillis did a great job of establishing over the past couple of years, and we use the, um, the person that was the consultant who did the desktop publishing, she's already been contacted, to, uh, put the thing together in the right format. Everyone can produce their article, just as you did in the past, Kathy, or you, Jessica, and we will assemble a newsletter, and we will put it out, and if, um, the board has an opportunity to review the draft before it goes to the printer, then anyone can sort of point to things and say, wait a second, you've missed something here, this is inflammatory, this is crossing the line into advocacy. This needs to be, you know, corrected. That way, you you have an opportunity for input.
Just one veto, one veto stops it.
One veto stops it.
Correct with reason.
So so so.
That's not, no, we're not talking about vetoing, we're talking about editing.
I am.
Folks?
Well, no, we're not talking about everyone has a veto power over the newsletter, we're talking about everyone has an opportunity for input.
Kathy, we gotta, we gotta come to compromise on this. You gotta be able to live with Gillis, and you gotta be able to live with the newsletter. Maybe, we gotta come together, like, if we all pledge that we're going to keep advocacy out of it, if we all pledge when we write an article not to take, take, take cheap shots, it really starts internally. We gotta please ourselves, we gotta step up and not give these guys, I almost said, but be a, you know, the word that starts V and S, but but we gotta give them legitimate, legitimate articles that, you know, sads in the fire stuff, there's a lot of stuff they need to know.
Of course, I know all of that. I've been participating in the newsletter for years.
No, but so why can't we, why can't we get one out as soon as?
Because we have no process. We need to schedule a discussion.
Why can't we use the process that we used to have?
Mary's not here. We have to negotiate. No, she she hasn't said that she will be our editor. We will have to negotiate with her to bring her back.
This is your idea. Um, this is not, this is not, this is not a need that we need to have Mary Gillis as editor.
That's his idea too. Well, that's John's idea too.
Well, again, my point, Will, is if there's a six to one vote to have Mary Gillis as the editor, not that there will be, then Mary Gillis is going to be our editor. I I'm just saying, we all gotta be, we all got, we all got a big picture compromise, and there's some, there's some sandwiches that we gotta swallow, that we ain't gonna like to for the good of the order, and there's no I am team, or whatever, there's no I am right. I know there's something about a vowel in a team.
Okay, yeah, I have a, I have a suggestion. If we could get the newsletter into residents' hands by the end of January, and then the beginning of, of the end of December, that we could have all our articles, we would have time to all of us go over and edit, and, you know, it's still winter in the end of Jan- January. Right now, I feel really rushed with all of this, and I know that you have your eye, your schedule the way that it has been, but we've already missed a fall. You know, middle of January, or the end of January, when nobody has anything to do but read the newsletter, and we could really put out our first excellent newsletter as a team.
I think that's a good idea.
I I don't, I don't know that there's a need for more time implicit in the situation. The the way that Mary has done this in the past, and I've worked with her on a number of newsletters, is she puts out a deadline, and then she goes and reminds people to get their material in, and she usually is is chasing certain individuals. I'm probably one of the people she's chasing um, right up until her deadline to get it to, um, you know, the printer. And then you get the newsletter out, but it's a matter of setting deadlines, and then, uh, working with people to get their material in, and then getting it to the desktop publisher, and then getting it to the printer. It's a process that's well laid out.
It's more than that. It requires integrity and skills.
Please, Jessica.
Thank you, Mark. So I just want to figure out a way to to move forward. I agree in a compromise, but I do want to, you know, share like some data here, um, and some information is that, you know, I I, we've all worked with Will on the newsletter, and 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 the the conflict with the newsletter has been with the authors and Will saying yes, no, yay, nay. The conflict, and I will say, Mary has operated, while she's also a resident and also my deputy, she has operated with incredible integrity and independence, and has managed the role of editor. There's times where she comes to me, she's like, oh, Jess, don't say that, that sounds cranky, right? I mean, she's very good about it.
Yeah.
Um, and so, and my objection to having Will and Jim lead this is, um, Will, you know, we have experience of Will, you know, censoring my articles, saying, you can't solicit for a volunteer. I mean, this is absurd to me, and I also, so the data tells me these two are not the people who can do it. I think too, Will is also not understanding and doesn't know what goes into the process. He just described the process that he sees about the deadlines. He doesn't know what goes into all the connections with the other agencies, what editing really looks like. The last thing I want to notice, what John Reiser is suggesting and what Will Hathaway is suggesting are two different words. I think I heard you say, what if a newsletter comes to the board and we all approve it, you know, any red flags?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then what I hear Will say is, um, we'll send it out for input. Those are two different things, and 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 I have seen this movie before. And it doesn't end well when we don't have agreement on this. So so what I I would support, what John is saying about if we had a process where it comes to the board and we all approve it, we're not all going to be seven editors.
But 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 if if we know that the other party, I shouldn't say party, I meant to use your word camp. If we know that the other camp that we're trying to get rid of, if we know that what we're writing has to go to everybody, I think there's less likely to to embed those kind of thing, so I think.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned about that. I'm concerned about censorship.
I am too. I am concerned about censorship. I'm concerned about people using their article, their column in the newsletter to put forward positions. Jessica, you've done it over and over and over again, so don't use me as some kind of example for what's wrong here. You have violated the norms of the newsletter over and over and over again, and that's part of what we've got to get away from.
This is, guys, we are so down a rabbit hole here. You want to, you want to get the details of that?
No, 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 we can't, we can't, we can't. Well, Mark, I have, I think, I think having awkward conversations that we can move beyond is important, fleshing it out. In 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 my world, we do a newsletter, we bring Gillis back in, sorry to use your last name, Mary.
I love your idea. By the way, I support your.
Provided, provided that she's willing to do it, she works for us, and 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 like, and she knows, she's here, she gets that it's not going to be cheap shots against other people, it's not going to be advocacy, we're not going to talk about why we need to do this or don't do that, so.
If you, if you were the editor, and you went through the newsletter after all of our articles were in, and you saw any of us using this as a weapon, would you be willing to bring it up to the whole board? Send an email to the whole board?
If that's our new process.
If it's a new process, right. So what I'm hearing from Will, what I'm hearing from Jessica, what I'm hearing from all of us is we want transparency, we want to have openness and accountability. So how are we going to do that if, I mean, we should be able to do that as a team, and if you were part of that team. I'm not saying that you are right now, or you will be, but it's a, it's a thought for all of us to think about. We need somebody on the outside to look, to keep us all in check, I guess.
Yeah, and I I, it was not working, there were problems with it, for all of the good things that Mary did as editor, there were problems with that situation, and she resolved it by resigning.
Let's hear. Okay, but Will, we're in agreement that if we had somebody, somebody that's outside of us, not in a camper team or whatever, to look at this and give us all the red flags, if there are some.
Well, I think, actually, what what John had proposed, which I think we should try, is sending, circulating a draft, having everyone have an opportunity to look at it, raise flags about any things that they see that, um, you know, are an issue, and that way we can
So, so will.
have that kind of review together as a board before we send it to the printer.
I get that she resigned, but all I'm asking is, can people try to put bygones, you know, you know, can can we take a fresh start with the, with someone who is successful? I, uh.
We have, we'd we'd have to do some, uh, working through of a a lot of the issues that I have with what happened with Mary.
And and I, and I got your back, Will. If I see an anti-Will thing, I'm going to say this is bullshit, and it needs to be changed. I really, I really do.
It's not, it's not, it's not that simple. It's not that.
Well, it can be, it can be. Look, get all the inputs, guys. It's just, get all the inputs. We have, Will create a draft, we put the letter together, let's have Mary edit, so it all sounds cohesive, all sounds good, I'm all for that. Let's all review and approve it, all together as a team, once we sign off on, and we'll go publish it.
Can we try and just say that we're together?
Well, yeah, we actually have to work together. Imagine that.
I object.
So so, so part of the problem is that Mary Gillis is a deputy clerk, she reports, she, she reports to the clerk.
So, I, Will, I don't care. Will, I don't care. I don't care, honestly, I don't care.
Well, this is.
We're impugning her integrity.
Will, I, listen, you're going to have your final turn.
She weren't just spending five minutes impugning mine, but look, look, there's a lot of personnel matters implicit in that decision that you are putting forward there
But Will, you've got.
that we have not talked through, and I don't know that this is the right format for talking them through. So let's not pretend that this is an item we can decide in this working session. This is an idea, we, let's discuss it, let's work it through, but let's not jump to this conclusion.
I got that.
But Will, if we can't, if we can't approve a free newsletter that people like, how are we going to do a budget? How are we going to do billing? How are we going to do sales?
Well, okay, so why don't you give us a chance, Jim and me, to do the newsletter?
We are.
You are embarked upon it, but you've, you've got, you're inserting somebody in here.
Who's going to edit it? Who's, who's going to, it's a skilled editor. Know who the skilled editor is going to be, but it's not Gillis, who else is it? Fine, give me another name. Will's is a skilled editor who knows how to, knows how to edit words.
Well, I've edited lots of things throughout my life. I've written a dissertation, right?
We need somebody, we need an outside person.
It's it's possible that I could be able to, you know, write and and edit pieces. I've reviewed everyone's, with Mary, I have worked with her, I've I've edited everybody's articles in the past.
Yeah, have Will and and Mary work together then.
No.
How about Will and Jim work together? How about Will and Jim work together and do this as an experiment, and if people really feel after that that there's some flaw in the way that we did it, then, you know, fine. But let's not try and reach a decision here in a working session on something that actually requires a lot more discussion and personnel.
It is.
I think you're getting close. I think we're getting close.
So, so.
Uh, but, but what I wanna, it's, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
But expect it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just gonna apologize.
That's okay. Um, so, so I think that, yeah, the inputs are, you know, everybody, it's, it's certainly, you know, all the officials, department heads, community people, the draft and the editing, kind of the solicitation and the editing, that's all kind of an editor job.
Okay, yes, Jim.
Um, certainly, um, I think that, that, that's kind of the assembly and and I think that, you know, if there's any sort of who's in and who's out, that's where a neutral editor is helpful, so that's why it's helpful with this solicitation and assembly and editing. The review and approve is fine. I have seen my articles change after the review and approve because, because what Mary does is she gets a couple drafts, certainly Will edits it, I edit it, the department edits it. She does a great job of back and forth with every author. And then, for example, when we're writing about Gelman, sometimes we have to have our attorney review it before it goes out. So there's lots of moving pieces and she manages it really nicely.
Hold on, I got an idea. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
And so.
Oh, he's onto something. Hold on, let him go, let him go. Hold on, here we go. Let's, I think I've got a counter. Let him go. We're gonna, just for this one right now, let's just have Will do it, cause Will wants to do it, so let's just do this. I think this will be fair. So you guys edit these drafts, these assembled drafts, and that's fine. Will, okay, you know what? We're gonna trust you, Will. Edit it, but you know what? Everybody gets to sign off. She's gonna sign off on her edit. Everybody gets to sign off, and whatever edits you may have made or may not have made, these guys all have to approve.
Of course. It always goes back to the author.
Right?
That's a change in practice.
Okay, but that's a, that's a good change. That's a good change, right? So you sign off, so everybody's comfortable.
It's a good change for me.
The final thing, once this is put together as a sample, we all together approve it, and then it goes out.
Um, does, does Gillis have a role? Or no?
As his first draft, no. As his first one, no, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to pulling Mary back in. I'm okay with that.
Okay, okay.
I've been trying to find a compromise right now to get this thing forward.
But, but. But, is there some, is there, does somebody have to like format it and columnize it and page it?
Yeah, that's, that's, somebody's gonna assemble it, right? Will's gonna assemble the, the.
But does, does Will have the, I don't mean this, how it sounds, Will, does Will have the skill set? Does he have the program? Don't you, I assume you use some sort of publishing software and you gotta embed photos and you gotta do all that stuff?
Yeah, we have an consultant who pulls the whole thing together. But how much does that cost?
That's, that's not, that's not, I will say, Will, Mary, to that point, can you please provide the information about what role that person has?
Yeah.
Cause I know they don't, I know when it comes back from the graphic person, there's all this editing of it.
Cause I used to edit.
It's not, it's not that, it's not that process. It's elaborate.
If I delegate the, look, I'm not gonna tell Will about how, I'm going back to, if I delegate the authority and the responsibility and then Will does a crap job, then you know what? Will doesn't do it anymore. We'll find somebody else to do it. Simple as that.
Well, we'll catch that on the review.
Yeah, exactly. So let's give him a chance. If he does a crap job, I don't mean that bad, Will.
I just wanna be clear, Jim, Murdy, the township administrator, and, and I am working on this together. It's not just me.
Well.
I understand. I'm, I'm just saying, this is how we should operate everything though. Delegate the responsi- responsibility, authority, give them a chance. If they do a bad job, then we don't have them do it a second time. Simple as that.
And then, Mark, um, on the approve and review and approve then, um, because I, I, I have, you know, prior experience that, you know, I would recommend against assigning it to these two, but if the board wants to do that, I get it. Um, I, I don't think these two can do a good job of this.
Let's see.
So then, we'll see.
Thanks for the thought of guidance.
Let's see. Let's give them a chance.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm being honest. So, so then if we give them a chance and it comes forward and it, you know, and then, what does that step look like precisely, Mark? That review and approve?
We, we're, we're, if we need to make changes, we'll need to make changes, right? I guess it's, it should say approval, review and edit, I guess would be the other.
Okay, that's fine.
Might, might be one more term in here, edit, right by the board.
Okay.
And then we finally do a, once we, once we edit, review it and approve it, that's finally, they get this in the backwards order, then we, then we publish it.
That's fine. Okay, but then it's what the board approves. It doesn't say it changed again.
Yeah. No.
Do you look?
Once the board approves, we're done, we're done.
I have, so, so Will and Jim, would you agree with that?
What, that we, that there will, there'll be no more changes after the board review?
After the, you didn't hear Mark. Mark said approve, board approval.
Yeah, once it's approved, it should be locked, it's done. What, what, what changes would you make after that?
Well, I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to game this out in my mind, because I feel like, you know, people are going to be, have certain expectations after this. So that, my vision for how this would play out is that we would gather together all of the materials. We'd do the usual back and forth with the authors to make sure that they're comfortable with how their words are represented in their article.
What does that say?
If, if somebody, you know, has a strong disagreement, you know, then, you know, we'd have to try and work that through. But the goal would be to produce something that we could then circulate to the board as a whole, so that the board would be able to sort of read it through and say, wait a second. I mean, you're not reading through, I would hope, for, you know, editing of particular words so much as you are looking for the red flags, the things that Kathy was talking about where it's crossed the line into advocacy or, um, sort of inappropriate, sort of raising of, of debatable issues.
They're gonna, Will, they're gonna review the whole thing.
Yeah.
Well, I guess if, if people wanna say, oh, well, you should use that instead of which in this art, in this sentence, I suppose people can do that.
We're not writing a, a three hundred page document here. It's only eight, it's, it's.
I know, I know, and this is, this is making it way more complicated than.
It's not, this is pretty simple. To me, this is simple. And Will, we're giving you the chance. I mean, I don't want you to be compl- you should be happy about this. This is a compromise with you.
Well, okay, so, so, so then. I, I understand, I understand. I'm just trying to talk it through and make sure I understand and that we're all on the same page here, literally. But, yes, we circulated to the board. Hopefully, at that point, the board is just saying, oh, yes, you know, this is fine, there's no red flags.
Once it's approved, it's locked. There is no more changes. It's locked.
Well, what if, what if the, we circulate it to the board and somebody on the board says, I view this as advocacy, and everybody else says, well, we don't view this as.
That's why we're gonna edit, review and approve it.
Right, so.
At a meeting.
At a meeting.
At a meeting.
Yes.
No, no, that is cumbersome. That is, that is adding.
Doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be cumbersome.
What?
If it's ready, it's, and we review, it's done.
Because, because, I, cause I can read, you can send it to me beforehand, right? I can have it like on the radio.
Yeah, it's like we don't have the minutes.
It shouldn't take more than ten or fifteen minutes for any kind of edits. I mean, I can't imagine what this would be.
Yeah. And.
Will, let's give it a chance, Will. Let's give it a chance, man.
All, all right, all right. So, 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 what we're, so basically what you're saying is we're gonna gather this all together and have the review by the board and then a vote?
Yes.
At the meeting, at the first meeting in, in January?
Well, we could, I mean, we could do it like,
That's how.
it stands unless someone votes to, to not do it. Like, the presumption could be that it goes through. It's like, I, I, I'm thinking that Will H and Jim M create and draft, uh, the twenty twenty-three winner SiO Township Newsletter, um, uh, including the solicitation of articles by department heads, trustees and other boards and commission members that Will edit the draft and submit to the Board of Trustees, that the Board of Trustees review, edit and approve the draft, and that Will publish the newsletter. Now, um, whether that changes step two with the editing, it involves Ms. Gillis in the future's TBD, but let's just get something out there and let's use this as a test to see if we can work together.
It doesn't need to go to a board vote. That is, that is adding another step.
A little test. I, I, and I'm not saying it needs to go to a board vote.
Well, you know, it's more than just everybody working together, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But, yes, yes, let's all work together. Let's have people have included someone.
Let's just go some perfect together.
But unless people are pointing at something that's in a really egregious problem with it, let's not get into micromanagement. All right.
Agreed. Amen.
So it does go to a board vote?
No, no, no.
I don't think it needs to. I think, I think the board can bring it up. If, I, I, I think the presumption that it's gonna be good because we looked at it. And if any board member wants to add it, they, he or she can then do so. I mean, I don't think we should, I don't think we should encumber the public's time, our time at a board meeting on this if we can work it out ahead of time. Now, is that deliberations in violation of an open meeting act, question mark? You know, if we're looking at a newsletter?
No, it's not. If, if you circulate something to the entire board and the board responds to an individual, not to the entire board, then it's.
I don't, I don't think so. Well.
Cause you know what's really coming down, dude? This is really not another newsletter. This really doesn't. This is all about the trust.
Oh, I know. That's why, that's why it's good to let it go.
Right.
And the validation of that. That's what this is really on.
I, I, I agree. Mark, come here and.
I agree, and I, and that's why I think that just for this first one, bring it to a meeting, we prove it. That doesn't have to be our process always, cause I don't think it's efficient, but we need to rebuild trust. And I will say, you know, the, the, you know, is, you know, with, with, with some, yeah.
I love this. Let's see if we do one better. Let's just see if we really have to break. Let's see, we get the draft and we all just go, wow, looks good, move on, next. I would hope that's the case. We didn't even have to talk about this meeting. He can publish us out, send it to everybody prior to the meeting. We all looking, oh, awesome, that's great. Next.
Let's rebuild trust by rebuilding trust instead of eroding trust, is your proposal.
So what, what I, what I fear is going to happen, I mean, just, just, no.
It won't happen. Whatever you're fearing, it won't happen. Okay? Whatever that is, it will not happen.
Okay, so then. Okay, because if there are, so, so then, so, so, so how, so if, if it goes out by X date to the board, we presume it's gonna be good, and then, one, and if I say, oh, they just announced we're gonna put a village on the May ballot and we never discussed that, veto. Then what?
If there's some major stuff on there, we will stop. We, we will do a full stop. That will not happen. So I'm, let's, let's trust Will that he's gonna do the right thing.
So that means. But then, but then if, if somebody, you know, has that kind of big.
Well, let me ask you a question. Yours or mine? How, how Will does all the right things? How you gonna feel about that? If Will actually does all the right things in his defense?
Right.
That'll build some trust?
That would.
Okay, so Will, this is his chance to build some trust. So let's, let's do this as an experiment, a trusting experiment, one of those where, you know, you fall backwards and see if they catch it kinda thing. So let's see what happens, right? Let's, 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 let's roll with it. We gotta start somewhere, man. And to kind of John's point, if we can't agree on a newsletter, how we gonna do anything else? You know, God.
Okay. Okay, and, and but I would say on trust too, if one member of the board says, hey, big concerns, and this newsletter gets published anyways.
Yep. Yep.
Big.
Then we all know, then we all have our answers, then don't. Okay, but let's, let's, let's.
If it's that big a concern, we'll catch it too. Shame on us for not. And, and Will, 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 we should have each other's back if it's a big concern.
Right, and then, and then we're not authorizing the funding for the publishing.
Yes, Mark, can I ask one question?
I'll, I'll put that in here.
I was just gonna ask, what about, Don, we haven't heard from Donna. I, I would just, and for the source of hearing from, for the, for the sake of hearing from people.
You're a voice of experience. You've been here longer than everybody, so you know. You have a wisdom person.
I don't know how we ever did a newsletter. We all worked together. We, we are fortunate to have professional talent in office with Mary. It was fun working with her. You know, you get the wrong word, whatever. But, we did it. We got it done.
And by the way, there is nothing wrong with you as you draft yours. You're, you're, I think it's a myth, if you wanna work with Ms. Gillis and work it out and have her tune it, bring it to Will, why do we care? Sure, go for it. Why wouldn't you do that?
Yeah, she's the best writer here.
Absolutely. I, I'd want, if I have a talented editor, and a good editor makes you look sound, sound better, right?
It makes us all sound better.
Absolutely, but if everybody chooses not to do that, Will, you don't want to work with Ms. Gillis, you don't have to. But if, but if Jessica does, fantastic, awesome. Right? That way, everybody's got the freedom to do whatever they want, to have whatever they're comfortable with. That's, that's, that's what he's double, right? So, all right, so I think we got, we're gonna trust Will on this one. It's gonna be a big trust thing. We're gonna start to build back some trust. Just give the guy a chance, right?
Did you wanna go back to your PowerPoint?
I do.
Hour and a half, I mean, Mark, I think she needs a.
I think we all should have a break. I mean.
Rushing, should we take a?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah.
Five minute break?
Yeah, a little sugar, a little sugar rush.
Five potty break?
Then we, we'll come, we'll come back to your, next item on your PowerPoint.
Do we need to vote on this? Yeah, for, for now.
I know, I know.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah, for the recess, yeah. So just a couple minute recess?
I thought it was a five.
Okay.
Recording stopped.
All I got is, all I got is the stuff to enter the poll. I just. Making the sausage.
You got no trust. No trust. No trust. Will's your big chance to build some trust.
Well, I, I came for it, you know?
I'm, I'm, leave the way for you.
Right, we're gonna teach her on the new verbs.
Right, move out. Well, there's no trust. That's why the micromanagement all happens, cause there's no trust. That's the problem. So it's not the newsletter?
Still better.
You know the good rule, what?
I don't like the rules.
He's like, no, I gotta give him the.
Give him the sugar first.
You can roll that bird?
Oh, yeah. You know, he wants to sell.
Must sell out.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, are you feeling okay? Comments that you had, nice little, we'll listen to going on.
Yeah, it's gonna be a chauffeur and a personal chef, mostly.
Maybe they would sell those, maybe they would, they would just pull out.
No, that's enough. That new high guest. So, some days, maybe, maybe three years, maybe four years.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me.
We're singing. I think we're a speaker. I, I kept like looking at.
I, I, the rules all been realized. Gotta remember that. As long as, I have a plan. I do actually have a plan here. I gotta start. Yes, that was very nice.
Every time you cut me off in a meeting with your.
I need some sugar. Always helps. Only got two and a half more hours. I've been smoking starting to three o'clock.
Yeah, I know, cause we're all, we're all showing up.
I got smoked for about three and a half hours, four hours, so. Rips. I got a bunch of people coming. It's, it's eight o'clock tonight, man, right?
Yeah.
Purdue.
Boiler makers, the sheriff.
Oh, yeah, I, well, they're, what, they're eight and four, right? So.
Wow, there was one year they hadn't won anything and they.
Yeah, I, you know, and you're making a good point, cause I don't know, like, did they relax now? They beat Ohio State, or they get like, eh, we're kinda cruising mode? No, that's right.
Handling of a situation.
Hey, whatever happened to the, whatever happened to Michigan State guys who in the, in the tunnel? Whatever happened to those dudes? They get charged?
One of, at least one of them. Seven, I should, seven of the eight have been charged with felony.
Oh, they had, was felony. Yeah, I mean, it should be felony assault. I just didn't know that.
Eat someone with a helmet and give them concussion? Yeah, I think so.
I thought maybe they were waiting till after the season or something before they brought charges or.
No, I don't think so. The last I saw, at least, at least one of them was charged with a felony, but all of them, there's like charges pending against, I think, seven of the eight. One of them, they said.
It's our first meeting. No, nobody knows.
What a way to lose your career, man. It was all so stupid. So you know that, that painting's called, I think, Knights and Hairs. Oh, Starry Knights. Is that what it is? Starry Knights? Okay.
There's another one that's very similar.
It's an awes- awesome artist, yeah. Alright, we ready? Woo, okay, we're still on page one.
It was really difficult to get him to paint it on.
Hey, what are we doing for lunch, Will? By the way?
Nothing.
Donuts.
What? You can get the pizza?
We need to.
No.
I'll make you a deal. If you get to slide four by one fifteen, I'll buy you all pizza.
Hey!
Alright, thank you, Alan.
I like this guy.
I get with my kids. You get a goal, you get a pizza.
He wants some of his life back. He's like, I'll really shell up money to get some of my life back.
What do we have to do, Ryan?
Is you end, end slide four by one fifteen. You have slide one.
Alright.
Kind of side doesn't have.
Life goes.
Okay, so, we've agreed that, I think we all.
Oh, I'll get it. Go ahead.
It's recording.
Is it recording?
Yes.
Oh, it's recording.
Okay.
Oh, we're on.
We've been on the whole time?
I don't know.
It makes people jealous that they go to game over.
Did I swear again?
I don't know.
Okay, so I think we've agreed on this transparency. Uh, I've never beat up one PowerPoint, uh, bullet so hard, but we did. Okay, that's okay. So transparency, we all agree, we've kinda covered. We get to these things in twenty three, are we gonna call thumbs up, right?
Are you ready to move to number two?
Yes, I like the things that we are, right?
Page two or bullet, item two?
Well, unless everybody tells me these are the right things.
Can you go back one?
Oh, alright.
Clear assignment of roles and responsibility. That's a big one. Thumb tag that. Put a pin in it. We'll come back to it.
I think I've got that on the next slide. I'm talking about that, yep. Accountability, right? Clear assignment, clear assignment of goals and responsibilities, right? You said that. Did you hear the slide?
I have it printed out.
Includes strategic tasks, deadlines, and how we work better at success, right? This all ties back to driving these things. We have to, so what I would expect, if I said, alright, um, Jillian, you're gonna do the sad. You, you're gonna go, hey, here's how I envision this working, right? And she's gonna take her best shot. It might not be perfect, right? She's gonna, I, I, my expectation always is with my employees, is take it as far as you can. Just do the best you can do. That's all I'm gonna ask. Don't just sit there and go, well, I just don't know anything, I couldn't do anything, and decide to something else. That's BS to my, we don't, I don't.
You don't have to worry about that.
I know, I know you would. I'm just giving you an example. I know you will, you know more about the sad project than anybody here, right? Certainly way more than me. So, but the, the, the point is, I'm just giving you this as an example. She would do it. We'll all help her. When she asks her for help, we'll give her input. We'll help her if she asks for it. Uh, but if not, she's the one that's gonna own the process. And if she says, Mark, this is it, this is what I want, I'm gonna go, okay, great, right?
Well, it needs to be a board, a, a, but, and I also, whatever we do, we.
It's a hypothetical that you're using to illustrate your point.
It's a hypothetical, yes. I'm just saying, here's how it should generally work, is I've, you, you, you've been put, you've been charged with it, you have the authority, the responsibility. I'm gonna have an expectation of when it's gonna be done, and how are we gonna measure that, that it is done, right? Does it hit all the injects, does it give the transparency back to our, our residents? Does it, uh, meet all the, uh, the, the things that maybe Donna might need from an input perspective, or that maybe what Jessica might need, or, or what would happen? That, that type of stuff. And that's just a general principle of how we should do any task that, that is dealt.
Can we move closer to pizza?
Yes. Can't eat the pizza. Yes. Alright, next slide. Slide two. Let's go, baby. We're halfway there.
There you go. Oops, too far. There you go. That's where we're supposed to be, right?
Yeah, so this is what I'm really big on, right? We do not have, I can tell, at least in my, some of the things I've seen, and I'm sure there may be another, very repeatable processes. So again, back to the, I'm just gonna keep using the sad, 'cause it's just the only one I know, by the way, so I'm not, I'm beating that one up.
Oh, no, sure, friends.
The only one I understand, or kinda sorta understands, is again, I would envision that to be, like I said, you could share, sort of, I think, a SharePoint template, if you're not familiar with. What SharePoint is, it's a Microsoft product, where it's fairly easy, you wouldn't necessarily, you'd tell the IT person, here's what I want it to look like, right? You'd work closely with them, but it'd be a whole defined process, like, hey, here's a checklist of all the things you, you need to do before you start a sad process. When they're done, the check light goes from a checkbox to green, right? Or, uh, and by the way, here's the way you upload your documents, and here's the way, here's another tab that shows all the published requirements, which you have to have, that kinda thing. And they're very, very configurable to make them exactly how you want. And just when you wanna make up a new sad template, use new template, bam, it lays out the whole thing for you, you populate it, off we go, are the races. Very repeatable, easy, efficient. It's all online, it's all published to all, all the residents, so they can see it and they can give them time.
Yeah.
There might be a ton of things for clerk, a ton of things for treasurer. I, I, you know, you guys told me.
Couldn't agree more on the efficiency. I'd say inside a township hall, probably there's like eighteen to twenty-four months of work to do to relook at all of our service models. I mean, just inefficiency across the board, I think, is by bringing that in, that's how we're gonna reduce that general fund deficit.
Yeah, I'll, I'll lean on you for that, Jessica, and like, hey, yours, and what you always do is, I, my suggestion, Jessica would be, you said they're eighteen, twenty, pick the lowest hanging fruit first, the ones that have the easiest ones with the most impact. And you just kinda just prioritize those, stack rank them.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you, if you try to tackle all twenty-four at once, you, you're gonna know where, right?
Yeah, and again, if we have the skills and house, we could do it.
Yeah, try, do, I'd say do one, see how it goes. You'll learn a lot from that first one, then pick out the next four, right? So pick a low lying fruit, easy, fairly easy to tackle, it's kinda in your head like, wow, it just looked like this. We can make that happen. That'd be my, my suggestion to you. And then again, you're gonna work closely with that IT person. You're gonna tell them what you want. They're kinda, it'll work for you, right? But you, you drive the look. They're not here to drive the look. They're just, they're basically what I call hands on the keyboards.
Yep.
Uh, so again, love your time, make some communication whenever we can. We gotta be, get ourselves back in twenty-first century. I like to think this Ann Arbor-ish, we're a little bit of a, our own little Silicon Valley here, right? I mean, let's at least get us into the two thousands, right? Right now in the nineteen nineties. Uh, let's do all that. And again, I also have review the cost of all of those parts. I mean, I, it seems like we spent a ton of money at home. I, I don't know, maybe they're a bit bad or different. I have no idea.
I, I, you know, I have that slide. In the third party's, I guess I'm curious, on a dollar basis, and maybe it's for Donna, Will, and, and Jessica. Which parties do we spend the most for? Is it Carlyle Wharton? Is it OHM? Is it, is it Vink? Is it Homey A? Is there somebody else that I don't even know about? Is, is it, like, you, you, what, what are some of them? Donna, if I can ask Donna.
Well, right now, probably the, the numbers tell us that our, uh, attorney fees are high. Vink is our, I call him, no offense, a general practitioner attorney.
Okay.
But there are things that he says that's not my expertise, and that's how Homey A got into our.
So they're, they're legal fees. Legal fees, Vink and, Vink and Homey A.
And staple here for Delman.
Oh, gosh.
And see, they're all specialized instances, you know? Um, OHM, which are probably the best municipal engineers. Yes, they have other divisions in their firm, but they're very, very good. Uh, and then you mentioned Carlyle. They do nothing but municipal work. And they are the best up.
And how about Washington Engineering? Do we use them on a, a regular basis?
We do.
And is, what's another big one? Like IT support, or are there?
Well, the IT support is relatively new with NetSmart.
Well, are these the kinda thing you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, and by the way, I should just say, what I'd like to do at the end of this kinda, goals and objectives, we're gonna eventually assign tasks to everyone, right? Or at least, hey, you go figure this out and come back, give us a presentation, tell us more, right? So it might be, hey, Donna, give us a list of all these third-party cost structures, uh, and then we might assign then, hey, to review that, hey, these are legal things. John Reiser, Kathy Knowles, what do you think? Are these, uh, are these reasonable fees or unreasonable fees? His own, who's gonna review own? Those kinds of things. We can kinda get more down to a tactical list at that point, and again, delegate it to someone, and then have them figure out a plan and bring us back the results. That's what I was expecting we would do, right? We're gonna divide and conquer.
Are, but you don't intend to do that right now?
No.
Okay.
No, I just wanna get through, is this the right things to even?
Okay, I just, I think we'll probably move faster if we don't get down into the, the weeds and each of these things.
Because we'll nev-, we'll never get through it, right? Fight taking. Uh, okay, so accuracy, again, our records have to be audited at a time. I think that's the, right? We need, but, but after the balanced budgets, I'd like to see a really simplified from Mark's point of view, right? You know, a two-page P and L, a two-page balance sheet, just standard, you know, like, expect to see in any company.
Yeah.
We have though.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, maybe do an I seven too.
Yeah, the village.
Yep. I'll send them out. And I'd say also on the balanced budget, as a policy goal, I want a structurally balanced budget. I mean, from year to year, it may go up and down, 'cause we sometimes have balanced budgets, but have, you know, structural problems. So I'd say a structurally balanced budget, where we're, you know, really looking at our fees and kind of aligning with the economic cycle and things. So I just, it's nothing to change. I just wanna be clear about what we mean by a balanced budget.
So, uh, maybe this is a dumb question. Are we required by statute to have a balanced budget?
Yes, sir. By the end, ye- yes, we are by the, we're, we're, Donna, if I, I mean, to be more precise, yes, we are by the end of the fiscal year.
No. Oh, a budget is a plan.
No, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just asking a question.
But I want to clarify.
Okay.
The budget's a plan. We're supposed to have a balanced budget when we present it, and you have to vote on it. You don't go to the end of the year.
And then things arise where you have to shift.
It can, yes, things happen.
So we really need deadlines to make our, our goals to make our.
And Mark's point is inaccurate when we're doing less shifting. Don't you mean by that, Mark?
Yeah, and it should be the same structure, point, it should be the same structure every time. I mean, 'cause that's the only way you're gonna be able to compare and contrast. If it's constantly shifting, I don't even know if I'm doing better or worse. And it should be something I should be able to consume and understand and take action. If I can't understand it, well, then there's really nothing I can take action on either, right? So.
And that's why the chart of accountability's important, so we have the right building blocks, so we can actually do those things.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent, yeah. Again, I'd lean on you for all that, right? You tell us. Uh, we kinda recovered this one, we had special costs, sad other side costs, we provided in detail again. I think that's all back to that SharePoint site that we talked about, or whatever, nothing to the SharePoint, just, it's a Microsoft tool, we probably have it for, if not free, close to free. It should be.
We do have it, we just don't know how to use it.
Yeah, we'll show you. It's, I got tons of my team that need it too, so it's not a big deal. Uh, again, uh, we talked about participation, so we gotta make sure that we're always just truly communicating back to the residents. They always feel like they're, they're part of, they shouldn't feel that way. It should be the reality that they're, they're part of. It's their money that we're, David trusts us with. We gotta make sure that we always are communicating where their finances are back. You know, David Reed had a lot of good points. We didn't tell him all the money we're spending, he's gonna have this lecture, as you know, that was not, that was not fair or reasonable, right? And there should be some kinda actual electronic sign off. So, for example, you have a sad project within SharePoint, you can say, alright, residents of Merlin Way, here's the cost. I need you, 'cause then, I don't, maybe saying, hey, I didn't know, you didn't tell me, you have to electronically sign off all ten residents, or whatever, it needs a majority, or whatever that is. I don't know what the rules are. There's, we have some kind of physical evidence that everybody signed off on, 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 on the project. They were aware.
What, Mark, I think that's an interesting idea. I think that, that is gonna take some investigation to make sure that we're not actually creating sort of multiple approval points for an SAD that really has one approval point.
We can send.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna, yeah, I don't, I don't care. I don't want that detailed. We're gonna leave, leave that to, Jillian's gonna figure all that out.
Well, we have a roads advisory committee, and Jillian is the board rep to the roads advisory committee. Um, she's succeeding Kathy. So, so she, she's communicating back from the roads advisory committee to the board. It's the board that still has the authority.
Understand that. I just wanna make sure that, that the, that the residents are knowing the money that's being spent.
Yeah, I think that's the key point.
Yes. And they, I, I got it. I approve, I'm, I'm good with that, right? I signed off on the estimate, maybe. I signed off on the timeline. I signed off on the.
That's the thing I wanna, that, that I, that I think we need to look at more closely, this sort of idea of residents multiple times.
There needs to be better communication with residents. We agree with that.
Yeah, and, and whatever's appropriate. Well, maybe I've got the wrong sign off.
I just don't want us to move on with an assumption here that, that we're gonna do something about that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, hey, I believe in this. It's up to Jillian. I'm gonna let Jillian, Jillian's gonna drive and tell us.
The, the committee.
With the committee, yes.
And ultimately, it's us.
Somebody's gonna be the.
Yeah.
Ultimately, it's us.
Somebody's gonna be someone. Okay, cool. Next slide.
Okay, alright. That's right.
That's funny. This wasn't me. So, long day, sorry about that, but you know, when we had this, put this together, over what this twelve free meeting. So here's the, actually, the actual agenda I wanted to cover for today, right? We got the high-level stuff done. Is the audit, legal fees, open agenda budget, and the new hires, right? So, go to the next slide. I think, I don't think that counts as a slide. So, this is a little throw discussion. Now, where are we at the audit? I, I talked to Jessica well back, and we had like a, a left to do list, and Jessica said, hey, man, you know, she's the one closest to it, why don't you just give us a list of to do's? And maybe, I think we did that, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have it for today, but we can talk about it.
Yeah, actually, hey, just validate with Plant Moran, is that?
So, yeah, so, so since we talked about that, I think, I think Jim, Jim has been in touch with them, and I've been in touch with them. So I think we need to decide who's taking the lead on the what's left to do, um, would be helpful, um, because I think that that, or unless the board wants to take time now to decide how we wanna finish this up. So for, for example, we've got Nick Armalagos, the contracted CPA, who the board contracted within May, reviewing the financial statements, doing the closing year journal entries. Um, and then we need to, what we need to have consensus on, I think, as a board, is the MDNA, which we need to write. Um, and it's, it's a letter that we.
Help me out on that.
Sure, it's the management discussion and analysis.
Okay.
It's normally, um, you know, not a big deal, um, but I think with all of the, um, problems we have, and differences of opinion about who is authorized to speak for the township or not, and what might be said, I think it's a document we need to have board sign off on.
Okay, so, so Jessica, what, what, what needs to be done?
Okay.
In your mind, what needs to be.
Um, so I would say, you know, um, I can, you know, I can revise the MDM, MDNA, and then get sign off by the board.
Okay, so Jessica, you're gonna.
Wait, whoa, whoa, this is Jessica's proposal.
Okay.
I think it's ampersand A, otherwise you've got ecstasy that drug, MDMA. I think it's MD, ampersand A?
It's actually, yeah, 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 it is, yeah. MDMA, yeah.
And is it Nancy?
Yeah, I'm not being MDMA.
Analysis.
And what is the, what is this?
It's, it's, it's just the management discussion and analysis. So it's the first letter that is, it's on, it, it represents what's been happening economically with the township. You know, last year was like COVID or something. It's high level. It doesn't get into any operational problems.
Okay, okay, so, so this stuff that needs to be done.
Yep, the other step is.
I, I would put Jim's name next to that, because it's not, it's not.
Okay, this is.
Let's propose.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's just talk about what needs to happen and then assign. The other thing is Nick Armalagos, um, is finishing his review of our financial statements and the closing journal entries.
Well, instead of turning next name, just put what the task is.
No, no, but this is actually something the board contracted with Nick Armalagos CPA for.
I just wanna, I just wanna listen to everything that needs to be done, it's all.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, why don't we just talk about the tasks? So I don't care about who's doing.
So, so Nick's, so, so Nick's the.
Yep, the, fine, Nick is, or it's, so the two tasks are review of the draft financial statements, and entering the closing year journal entries recommended by Plant Moran. Nick is reviewing those now, looking at them. Plant Moran always has a bunch of closing year journal entries and recommended adjusting journal entries for us to review.
So review draft, MDA, review draft, and then journal entries.
Will, please, can. I would, I would like to.
I'm just, I'm just trying to help him capture what you're saying.
Oh, the hell.
Okay, um, so, so what I'd like to do is, um, so, so then we need to have what's typically called a management meeting with the auditors, and that's where they give us the real deal. And in the past, it's been the supervisor, the treasurer, and the clerk. And I'm strongly recommending that the whole board be part of that.
Okay, well, just, just, just give me the.
Okay, the quote unquote.
Just make sure, just give me this, just give me the high-level bit.
Management meeting.
After that, you have orders, and what happens after that?
Yep, and then the auditors go back and they write their letter, which includes, um, the, the findings. There'll be material findings and other findings.
And what, what happens after that?
And then there'll be an opportunity, which we don't usually use, but I would imagine we want to, to do a response letter.
It's a response letter.
To kinda say how we're gonna. To kind of say how we're gonna handle business. And then they submit that to the state as, which is the prepared audit and the letter to the state, as well as what's called an auditing procedures report.
Hold on, hold on, submit to state, audit?
Yeah, the audits, the auditors submit the audit, the letter, and what's called the A P R to the state. And then that triggers the process from the state where they're gonna come back to us and say, here's all your issues and how, and then we talk about how we correct them.
Okay, and response. Unless we do everything right, then we're, we're pretty good. Jessica, you seen that before?
Yeah.
That, what, what are the odds of that happening?
Zero.
Oh, okay. So if they're gonna tell us to do something, no matter what.
We know, we know that we're gonna get.
We're gonna be involved with treasury for the next couple of years.
So, can I ask a question? Uh, I don't wanna ask of the, uh, don't take this the wrong way. I was gonna say old timers, but the folks who have been here on the board for a while. Uh, Kathy and Donna, is this how it's kind of been in the past? Is this the process that has been?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay.
And we've always in the past, last year, struggling, this year's struggling, we've always had A plus plus audits.
Okay, now.
Asking how, how it's always been. Typically, typically, the officers are the ones that have been present during this management.
The three elected, you mean?
The three elected officers, however, I do agree with Jessica that everyone, we should have an open meeting.
Well.
I'm trying to see it, yeah. I don't mean, yeah. You're like, oh, what's that?
That everyone, we should have an open meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm already.
And I don't know why we said it that way.
I know, and don't you think it's a good idea? I mean, given all the issues we've had here.
Sometimes.
A good idea to what?
To have this initial management meeting as an open meeting of the entire board, so we can all hear the initial presentation from Plant Moran.
So the auditors come here, and then we ask questions.
Yeah.
They would ask the auditors what their.
Wait, 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 wait. Before we.
Wait a second, wait a second, is this the right process? I just wanna get to the point. Is this right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we add that.
Yes. And then, and then the next, and then after the audit is finished, that's when the F sixty-five and all these other things that are required to the state can happen, but that is the correct process.
Okay, are we like kind of good once we get to here then? I mean, then it's kind of standard, it's just like a whole nother nightmare once this happens.
Not a nightmare, but.
There's, there's, there's more work to do, but, but we're talking, we're, I think we get into the what happens next, we're beyond the audit into the response.
Reforms.
Yeah, but we're, we've now submitted our audit, at this point, we're like.
Well, there's a, what Jessica was just saying is there is a very important report that's contingent on, uh, getting the submission to the state that can't be done until you complete that.
So after that.
So the F sixty-five report.
Yeah, the F sixty-five.
Where, where is the F sixty-five?
Where's that?
Editor at the bottom.
Here?
No, very bottom, then the F sixty-five.
Well.
After.
It doesn't, it's not contingent on the response from the state, though, so it, it could go higher up.
Well, true. But that's fine, yeah, congruent.
Okay, alright, cool. Alright, so we all agree, somebody snap a picture of that.
So, I, I, I have a question, this.
Oh, there we go.
In our, in, in our, and I have my agenda with my notes, at our November fifteenth meeting, Jim spoke about getting some things by December first, and, and like, where are we now in all this? And, you know?
So, right, at the moment, right now, Nick is doing his review, he said he was going to be able to get to it today.
Okay.
The, the, uh, the management meeting, we attempted to schedule that from, for next Thursday. The clerk was unavailable.
And what, 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 okay, management meeting, where is that? Is that?
That's, that's the meeting with the auditors, that's the management meeting.
That's that one, yep.
And what, what, what date did you set it for, Jim?
So.
He tried for Thursday, but it didn't work.
So, but Jim, isn't this gonna be a meeting of the entire board?
No, that's just an idea.
No. No, that's, it was a management meeting with the three officers and the accounting.
Let's talk.
I would, I would, I would.
Boys.
The board, the board can be.
What, what, what date is, what date is it set for?
It's not set. I mean, we, we.
Can you, what day would you like to have it set for?
I would like to have it set for as soon as Nick is ready and Plant Moran's available, so by next week.
It's the three, like twelve, three.
Yeah, so next week sometime.
So, uh, let's put a deadline in front, which Friday.
It will not be, it will not be next week.
The night.
Oh, will not be.
Why?
No, because the auditors are not available.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, so.
So they wouldn't have been available on Thursday.
They're not even available.
They weren't available on Thursday.
They would have been.
They would have been, they possibly may be available a week from this Monday.
Because our next board meeting is the thirteenth, right?
Twelve.
So is this gonna be an agenda item on the thirteenth, an update on the budget, budget update?
Well, it could be an update on what the management wants, if, if we can actually schedule the management.
Audit, thank you. I, I think we just, we, I think it should be an agenda item to keep it moving and to keep trend, the process transparent on where we are.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so Jim, when, when do you think this meeting, what's the deadline?
The, the earliest that we could schedule that meeting is a week from Monday, which would be the.
Twelve, twelve.
Set to twelve.
Yeah, it's the twelve, twelve.
Okay. I wanna, I wanna attend it.
Okay. It's goal, I'll put a goal here.
Yeah, and, and what I, what I, what I would say about it, in, in the past, and, and I do think that this is related to how we got into this pickle.
Yeah, I wanna attend it too.
Last year, there was a management meeting, it was just the three of us officers, along with Rebecca Maude, our finance manager, and then Diane Benson, who was consulting for us. I believe Sandy Eckler was out on leave at that point. Um, and there, that is when the, my experience is, that's when the auditors give us the real deal, and where we can really say, okay, so, because they talk in auditor language, and it takes me a while to like, get, like, tell me what we need to do differently procedurally. That's when we have those really important conversations. And, and it's very different than what they typically do, then two months later, when they come to the board and give kind of the glossy picture. And so I, I had talked to, um, Dave Wild, I said, look, for like a township who's, who's in the state that we're in with our finances, you know, we really wanna restore public trust, and also, we have so many new board members, I want all of you to hear it, so, I thought we could do one of two things, either have two meetings, you know, I mean, which takes more auditor time, and they're so busy. Or, at this point, frankly, they're not gonna say anything. I mean, Donna, Jim, I have, we, we've all, we know what the issues are gonna be.
You guys run the money, right? I'm, you two are in charge of that, I see you here.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm supportive of it.
You guys are telling me what to have here.
So.
If somebody else wants to participate, go for it. Well, if you want to, I just have.
But here's a problem. Does it constitute an Open Meeting Act violation?
No, but what I'm.
If, if you're not discussing, if you're not deliberating, I mean, I don't know.
What I'm saying is, let's have it as an open meeting.
What's that?
There's no reason not to have this as an open.
Well, then you gotta have a special meeting and the publication and the timing, you gotta be right in availability, so.
That's right, Rock, it's no big deal, I understand, it's no biggie.
Uh, um.
Can you set it up for, or just let us know, and we can create a special meeting?
Yeah.
How, how?
I'm a toy, I wanna be educated.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly, I certainly wouldn't advocate for that.
Why, why?
This is a work, this is a working meeting to get a job done, without advocacy, without posturing for the public, without all these other things. This is what this meeting is supposed to be about, and I know I've heard a lot of resistance from our auditors for turning this into a public spectacle.
Okay, that is no way, I, I would not heard that.
So, you know, as I say, personally, personally, I don't, well, I have, and personally, I don't really care, but I think that, that the auditors really wanna get this job done, and get the job done properly, without turning it into a public spectacle.
At some point, will there be a public meeting with this?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
They, those auditors report to the board.
They will present to everybody.
Yes, they come to the board.
If, if we, if we've been on time, we could have had that meeting prior to the filing of the audit.
That's like two months later.
Well, that could have been here somewhere.
Right, yeah.
No, it doesn't have to be that much longer, it, it, it'll have to be a, a regular meeting in January.
Okay, I, I just wanna, are, are, are we done here? We, we've submitted our audit to this point, right? I just, let's skip.
No, well, what, what you mean, are we done when we get to that point? We haven't done that yet, no.
Submitted to state. I. I understand. I'm just trying to get us to here right now. I, you guys are.
I think Mark goes, are we done with agreeing on this process?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get us to here, man, we're, we're covered all over.
I, I, I think we don't wanna add more complications to this, and trying to turn, trying to add another public meeting to this process is not necessary.
Okay. We don't even sound like we don't need to. Thanks.
Thank you.
Security. Uh, alright, so, uh, we do this by twelve, twelve, honor letter finalized, when, when, when can this, when, when, we see this? I guess it's up to the honor, right? So we don't know. I guess we give them, give them a week, I mean, which, 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 which in the past, Jessica, I mean.
Up, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I really don't know, I mean, we're at the, we're at their mercy, I think, I think two weeks probably for that.
Okay. Alright, so, we got the holidays, uh, let's call it, uh, one, uh.
The notes from that meeting, the report.
Four, five, baby.
Sure, yeah, that's.
And then our response letter, can we do that in a week, Jessica? I mean, what do you think?
Um, yeah, that, that I think we'll need board consensus on.
That's.
So, one, twelve?
But, yeah. Yeah, sure.
And then what do you think we submit by state then?
That's on the auditors.
So, can we say one thirty-one?
Whoa.
Yeah.
Why are we pushing it way out?
I, I, I'm asking.
We're not, we're just keeping it real.
It's kind of asking ourselves, man, let's not kid ourselves.
Well, I don't know, Jim, I mean, you know, I know you're a little distracted by cleaning up this film, but I, what's, what's, what's doable if, if, um, we are working, just focusing on working with the auditor to get this filed with the state? Does this have to drag out into next year?
No, it doesn't, uh.
Yeah.
The, according to the, to, to Dave Halasek, we need to get, the management meeting is first and foremost. And before we do that, we have to have this M D N A as part of what we bring to the table.
Right.
Now, let me ask you a question, I'm gonna back up here. Who am I holding responsible for this?
Jim is overseeing the audit process, there's no reason to shift. I know, she would like to, she would like to be in charge of the audit process, as Jim is overseeing.
She's got her hands up.
No, 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 let me say, let me, let me, let, hold on here, look.
I don't care.
Yeah, look.
I just want somebody to respond.
I'm, I'm willing, I am willing to be responsible and get it done. What I, what I don't want is more than one cook in the kitchen. We never, the board never assigned Jim this responsibility. So let me just put that out there. Jim works for the board, the board never assigned Jim this responsibility.
That's not true. Okay, hold, 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 nice, thanks.
And, and I don't have to do it, I just want it done right. And what I don't want in the M D N A or other things, I don't want all the good information that comes from that management meeting for this board not to understand it.
Alright, so, so, my always thought would be, and I mean, Jim, you tell me if I'm wrong, so, hold on, I'll tell you all. Is, this seems like a financial thing to me, and finances typically go to the clerk.
And the treasurer.
So, I'm, I, I mean, Donna, I mean, am I wrong on that one?
I would like to clarify a word, I said it before, the responsibility for the general ledger is under the clerk.
Okay.
The responsibility means an entire township and many townships, as Kathleen probably has seen in her research, they can't do it by themselves. So we have hired finance people. We still need help in the finance area. I don't believe, saying it openly, our cert cannot do what is required here. We need to have, we do have in-house, by the way, but whatever it takes, someone to make sure these reports, all of this process is done correctly. Now, I believe currently that Jim can do it.
Why do you believe that Jim could do it?
Because he's been, and, and Assessor is involved in so much of the ongoing process. We don't have assessing, we don't have taxes, we don't have township.
That's true.
It's the number one key department. But anyway, let's go.
I'm not so sure.
I understand.
That's kind of following the, like, the question.
Never mind, never mind, let's just.
Alright, alright, so, so, let me, let me, let's see how we all, let's just see how we all work together to another little test, we'll, 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 uh.
My personal problem. But anyway.
Trust test here.
We can get it done, but, there having it done correctly is, is key, okay?
Okay. And, and I think what you're saying, by the way, just, you, 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 it's not because of her, she doesn't have, she doesn't have the right support that she needs to get this done correctly, right? I mean, she doesn't, she, we have a finance director in our mix, and we probably help a lot.
I would say.
So it's not a lack of skill on Jessica's part.
Well, we have a consultant, that's why we brought him in, so, I'm good.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make, I, I don't think that was a slam at all, I just wanna make sure.
Yes, well, I was stating in fact, and yes, we tried to address that.
Okay, alright, so.
We have assigned this as a board to the township administrator. We have an in, we have an interim township administrator.
When, when you went.
We have a job description, I sent it out just a couple of days ago. Kathy, if you check her email, you'll find.
When we assigned it to it?
It's under his job description to oversee this process together with supervisor. It's in our job descriptions.
It's, it's also.
Wait, but, hold on, hold on, guys, let's answer this question. Is Jim thinking it's done? Who's, who's out there? Jim, can you get it done? I guess, it gets done. I honestly don't care.
When was the de- the deadline for all this?
As long as it's done, but if it's not done, I'm holding you responsible. If it's done wrong, I'm holding you responsible, I'm holding you to everything at that point.
When was the original line?
You're gonna own it.
And I'm, I'm supportive, I'm, I'm supportive of that, if it gets done, it gets done right. I mean, we don't know, one, how long Jim is going to be here. I, and how long this process will be, right? Two, I would say a requirement, just like the newsletter, and it goes back to trust, the recent S and P report that Will wrote and sent to the papers and all this stuff, okay?
Jessica, I'm going this far.
M D N A has to be a consent, has to have board sign off, and response letter has to have board sign off. And, um, the meeting with the auditors, if it's not gonna be an open meeting of everybody, then I think, hold on, John, don't interrupt me, please, then I think that we need to, um, have notes, those of us who are going will have notes and a write-up that we share with the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, so.
But, but with, but with those conditions, I'd be fine with Jim doing it.
Fantastic, okay, so two things, I'll make the council break it up.
Or Mark Capson, or whomever we hire, the administrator.
Anyone else.
Let's not put, yeah, yeah.
Anyone else.
I think, are we talking about the audit today?
Yeah, just, right.
This, this audit, I think.
The administrator. One, one comment I wanna make, and I, I, I'm gonna still listen to both you guys. Anytime you talk smack about Jessica, you're talking smack about me, because Jessica's part of my team. Jessica, anytime you talk smack about Will, you're talking smack about me, because he's part of my team. We gotta stop that, period. Stop with the history. I, I, you guys both have tons of, I don't care, I honestly don't care. I don't give a, okay, I just don't. Right? Because that's not gonna help, I can't fix the past, none of us can. Work together as a team, alright?
Right.
I, I don't, again, don't talk smack about me, you guys are talking smack about me, I don't want you talking smack at all.
And I suggest that we use the same approach to this that we just sort of painstakingly worked through in terms of the newsletter.
Yeah, so, so Jessica.
So this is, this is under, this is underway, it's being, it's being, it's being overseen by the township administrator.
Yeah, and Jessica.
My, my.
And, and I've already know from hearing from Jim, that he's very, very sensitive about the M D and A letter.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I just finish my thought? Gosh. And so, I, I think that he's on track to produce a draft management letter that will be reviewable by the board in the same year as the newsletter.
You're, I was gonna take, you didn't let me finish, you interrupted me.
Okay. Oh, alright, well, fine.
I was gonna say, now, Jessica is, uh, is, you know, you, you, Jessica said, I'm gonna trust you, Jim, that's what she just did. She's stepping back and saying, okay, go for it, right? So I'm just saying, she's letting some stuff go, so on the other hand, you guys gotta, you know, give Jessica some slack too. She's working as a team. That was the point I was trying to make to you. She said, I'm okay with it as long as.
I had a couple of conditions, a consensus, M D N A, response letter, and report out from that management meeting.
What does that mean?
Can you agree to that, Jim?
What does that mean, can you?
I don't know what the report out means.
I wanna know.
I also don't know what consensus on the letter means either.
It means we all have been informed.
Oh, that's fine.
But we, we can, we can figure it out. What I wanna say is, M D N A and, and any response letter, any letters to the auditors that are gonna be public talking about our condition, how we got here, how we're gonna fix it.
So where do we put that in?
Because that's a requirement, isn't it? So it's that, that M D N A and that response letter, if you could just put little stars or something next to those, those are.
The one above it.
Yeah, those two would have, um, you know.
Or not, not immediately above it, I'm sorry, up at the top.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, I thought.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, agreement, so that it's, um, because that's what Donna and I did in the last corrective action plan. She took on her areas, I took on my areas. And that's how it should be. I don't want us speaking about each other's areas. And then the other thing is that meeting with the auditors by twelve twelve, um, a write-up for the other trustees. Um, and I know that the auditors would be happy to have one-on-one phone calls if they, if they can. They're just so slammed right now.
Okay, Jim, I need some dates from you, buddy. Because I'm, I'm holding you, we're all holding you accountable. What are my dates, man?
Key one is the twelve twelve date, I think. That's the meeting with the auditors.
That's the goal, but we can always shove everything back, but that won't do very well. Well, wait after that, what are my dates here?
Uh, well, I, my understanding from Plant Moran is that it probably will take a week or so to go through their standards.
Don't give me all the news, just give me the dates. Don't care.
You know, it's, uh, we could possibly have a letter ready to go to the state, the submission to the state.
Yep.
Could, could be before Christmas.
So.
The twenty, twenty three, was it twenty third, twenty three?
Should we do the eve of Christmas?
Yeah, I'm gonna twenty two.
Oh, okay, twelve twenty two, that's.
Okay, you're saying by twelve twenty two is your goal?
Yes.
Alright, I really don't care about all the other dates, as long as you make them, this is the only one I really care about.
Does that, does that, I mean, does that mean we'll have like a draft audit by then, question mark?
No, that means that's it.
You can submit it to the state by that, all the other state, I don't care.
So the, the draft, the meet with the auditors is to discuss the draft audit?
Yeah, to discuss the draft financials, and Nick Armalagos will be there to sort of brand around us and talk about them. They'll also start telling us what all of our material findings are gonna be, because, but that's really important.
Yeah, okay. And then we could say, oh, that's not right, we can, we can order.
Well, and it's not so much, that's not right, what's so valuable about, about that meeting is that's the only time where they say, like, hey, you know, there is an issue with, you know, handling, you know, this. Um, and, and say, and Will say, whoa, really? You know, that's the chance where we say, okay, so, so what do we do to fix it?
So as a, thank you.
And they'll never write that up for us.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to gum it up, I'm just asking you some questions. Does the board need to approve the audit?
No.
Okay.
Does the board need to approve anything? Like, do we need, is there, does there?
Formally, no. At, in a, in a month or two from, whenever it is that they come back and give us, we, we kind of formally accept it, but that's.
So, and, and when will there be a, a presentation by the auditors to the public?
To the, to the board in the public meeting?
That's right, no, to the board in public, that's right.
January, that would be my goal.
Would that be the first meeting in January?
No.
No, okay, soon.
Either the last meeting, hopefully.
What is that last?
And, and I'm not arguing, but why, why is that, Donna?
Yeah, but they. Just the process, the timing, it seems like it's always been at least a couple of months after.
But we'll have been filed. I mean, we'll at least have got it in and we'll get the state off our backs a little bit. That's the key, because that's the F sixty five.
No, the, the state, the state will start to become on our backs at that point, so.
So, how about the, we're, we're getting letters about the, we're getting letters about the audit, the F sixty five and all that stuff, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
It's, it's triggered by the missing the deadlines.
No, I get that. When, when will we, when will we be in good graces, comma, with respect to that issue, comma, with the state?
Once we, once we've done this filing, so his target date is the twenty second.
Christmas miracle.
And, and then, and then there's the F sixty five.
Those two things have to happen.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not trying to push for no stops, and then I'm trying to, I'm trying to ask you letters.
I'm trying to understand.
What do we have sixteen, F sixteen, once the F sixty five likely.
I think shortly after.
Within, within days of filing the audit, we know.
Is that New Year, like, New Years? Is like F sixty five by New Years, question mark?
Could be by the end of December.
Yeah, I'd say by the end of December, it's.
The F sixty five?
We have to give, uh, we have to give somebody time to actually prepare the F sixty five.
Okay.
Which is.
By then, you mean?
Which I don't, I, I can't, I have to.
It just takes like a day.
You have to think that's significant on that regard, but I'm told that it's just a lot of cutting and pasting of this from the audit.
Internal, Jim?
Internal, Jim?
Internal, yes.
Okay.
Are you gonna, are you gonna erase them?
Alright, we're moving next, next topic. Reporting. So, uh, this whole way of reporting, uh, that's correct, I mean, yeah, so what I would expect is, everybody would submit, I'm talking about the reports, we, we have a recording structure for every board meeting. What my expectation would be is.
My crew is saying they don't, they can't read your writing.
Oh, I, you know what, I, you know, everybody, I always tell IT people, because they, I'm always on a keyboard, right? So I have terrible, terrible memorities. Okay, so, reporting. Uh, we, we've been pretty bad on getting reporting out, and again, I think reporting is important to our residents. As it is, it's actually more important to our residents, frankly, than it is to me. So what I'd like to see is all reports are due. Uh, and I know sometimes you guys are busy and you have jobs, so I, I get on, that's cool, man. So why don't we, why don't we say that we're due by, on Monday, the Monday before Tuesday's meeting?
Okay, this is the agenda you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I'm reporting now.
The, the, the reports, our committee and officer reports to the board.
Oh, for the board packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, yeah, I should have said that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yep, yep. Uh, I'm gonna propose that we get them by Monday by no later than noon. That way it gives you guys the, for the weekend or Monday morning. Is that, is that cool?
Yeah. The two-seat board meeting?
Yes.
You mean the mon, the week before?
Yeah, it's a very late, because right now we hardly sometimes.
No, wait, 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 the week before.
You meant the week before.
No, 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 I think he's talking about just the reports. The packet is a different question.
Right, we understand that, but when?
I'm, I'm, it's not other reports, not the package, just reports.
Yeah, so the, the Monday, the day before the meeting, you want the reports.
Just the reports, the packet can go up sooner than.
But should the reports be in the packet?
You can add them too, that was my thought.
So, see, and, and I think, I think, uh, she's got a point. So who all has to make reports?
Well, that's a good question. So here's what I thought. It should be the clerk, the treasurer, the supervisor, the admin. Now I just think it'll make, uh, start that makes sense when we execute the first report.
Sometimes there's fire, sometimes there's police, sometimes there's planning, sometimes there's Gelman. I mean, like, how many, how many reports are there? And getting a boatload of reports on Monday at noon is like, are you, that's, that aren't, that aren't in the packet, so I think.
I, I'm hoping to, I'm hoping so, yeah.
Will, Will, when is the, when are, when, when's the deadline that you need things for the, uh, packet?
Well, the, the goal that we set for ourselves in the rules board is to have it out, I believe, Thursday at five prior.
Well, that's the, that's to everybody, but when do you need the reports or, you know, anything I love seeing the things?
To go in the packet, ideally you'd have it at least the day before, the Wednesday before at noon, I think.
Yeah.
I'm correct.
When, just Wednesday at noon. Is that in the time for you?
It's, if, if.
Well, people can upload directly.
It depends on, on how much stuff is coming into the agenda. Sometimes we get overwhelmed, overwhelmed, I get overwhelmed, or we have stuff that we, that comes in that's not really finished. And that can make it more, more challenging to get it ready and out, um, and often, actually, that happens. So it's rare that we've actually met that Thursday at five deadline.
So could we maybe move it up to the Monday, the week before?
We should wait till March two on this one too.
Yeah, right, right.
I know, we're just chatting.
Where did everybody go? She just handed.
Pizza.
And John, John, I would say too, you know, it's been kind of, um, tradition and formal, you know, to kind of hear from committees and officers. And then what, what I used to do when I worked with Will on the agenda is, is kind of tried to have fire once a month, utilities once a month, um, you know, police quarterly. But I think that we could look at kind of a schedule more broadly. Somebody could be empowered to come up with a schedule, so you're not hearing from everybody every single meeting, but maybe, because we need to hear from parks and paths, assessing, but we may just wanna say like, once a month, once every other month, something like that.
Well, maybe, so the road advisory committee is the first Wednesday of the month, and then that first meeting of the month, I could have my reports for that. And then if you have Gelman, well, no, that's in the beginning, you know, something like that, I can guess where you're, would that, would that be helpful, Will?
Yeah. Something to come up with a schedule.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to think, I, I think what Mark is trying to get at and, um, what I've heard from others as well is, is there a way to make, um, the information sharing to the board? And by virtue of doing that to the public, to make it, um, more efficient.
Ryan, thank you.
Wow.
You're welcome.
I just have the burger, I'm eating pepperoni, so I'm sorry, but it's cheesy.
Thank you, Ryan.
My food trumps everything, so let's get some food.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll take a five-minute break?
Five. You're either not eating or you eat fast.
Thank you. That's all, what is this one, Brian? Why don't you explain, explain yourself? They're not all the same.
Recording stopped.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, all the same?
Yeah, I don't know, I just.
Recording in progress.
All right, we're back.
We'll leave this at the bottom. Don't forget.
Did you want to move on or are you?
Yeah, all right, so I guess again, again, we got to pick out the day. But I get, I, I just try to get to is I'd like to see it be great to have the residents and myself have a set of reports that A are understandable, that are meaningful. Right, we can absorb. Uh, I'd like to see them dedicated to the, on post on the site website, some kind of chronological order so I could see what trend are we getting, are we doing better, are we doing worse? Right, uh, that's why I hate digital speedometer, right, because you need relative position. Right, uh, simple, take it soon. And why do we do this? Increase residency and board and we're going to be more efficient.
So I'm, sorry, go ahead, John. Can I say something here? And I'm looking at our rules of order and we're kind of segueing a little bit into our meetings, our agendas and our reports. And we have, we have, we have rules that say that reports for members of the board on behalf of various committees, boards and commissions shall be submitted in writing and delivered to the supervisor and administrator by twelve P M on the Wednesday preceding the regular meeting for inclusion into the meeting material. Presentations to the board should be in written format and possible submitted to the same member. So we have a rule on this. And then we have the distribution of the packets, which should be by, by five o'clock on Thursday. So we kind of have some structure here, Mark, that we either have to follow or modify if it's not meeting our needs or if it's not working for us. I, 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 I'm not fighting you on this.
No, I, I, I'm okay, I'm flexible this way.
I'm, I'm with John, I think, I think we stick with the deadline that we have. But to integrate kind of what you're saying, I think what we need to do is one empower somebody to come up with kind of a, a schedule of kind of who would report when, you know, looking at the twenty twenty-three board calendar. And then the truth is, some people are going to need help editing. I mean, or, or, or we need to not provide such a standardized format for the report. So either it can be kind of open.
What does it say about written?
You know, so kind of like maybe somebody is going to write two paragraphs, maybe somebody else is going to have data and metrics. But if, if the baseline is just written, everybody can do it. If it's standardized, some people are going to need an editor.
Yeah, so here's what I'm thinking, I guess, it's kind of a yes to both, I guess what I was thinking is. If your, whatever yours, yours always might be written, I doubt yours is used by the numbers. But maybe yours is going to be written, that's okay that they're different. When I say standard, just whatever report you give me, whatever the court's report is, this Wednesday make it the same kind of report and the following Wednesday, that's all I'm saying. If yours is numbers and Will's is written, that's okay.
Got it, perfect, I'm done.
I'm just looking for consistency.
Can we all agree, can we all agree that to the extent possible, board, the report should be part of the packet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that means Will has to get them soon enough to include them, right? And, 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 and reports should be written and provided in the packet rather than delivered on the, on the, on the day. Uh, you know, kind of like Brant tried to get away with, once you drop this on us.
Thank you.
Ooh, touche, touche.
No, no, but you're, I mean, but it's, I mean, really, because so we can all better, but it's better for, I mean, I need some time, I'm.
So what are the days?
Looking at this stuff, we all do.
Well, if we, why don't, why don't we, why don't we try using the rules of order schedule?
Okay.
And um, what I would say is, you know, I think part of the problem, and I was talking about this with Jillian at the break, is, is that I think people feel like if there's a, um, when we have the meeting and it says, you know, your report, um, people feel like they have to say something and they don't always have a lot to report.
No, no.
So, and that's, I think the same should be true of the written reports. If you don't have something, a lot to report, you don't have to.
No, that's a good point, in fact, I don't even, even frankly, even want to have a report cycle in your board, in your board, I don't need. If we have question, well, the open area, we have questions, but I need somebody to present a report to me. If you have to present a report to me, then it's a bad report. I should be able to consume it as is.
Well, well, okay, I will say you're going to get some weak written reports for which you actually need to hear from the person to understand what we need to know.
Yeah, and, and Jessica, I agree with you. I mean, in kind of like, so we will open it and say, hey, Jessica, help me understand this, or help, or you could ask a question. Hey, Will, help me understand that, I'm not saying that we just don't have the time for it, but I need somebody to.
Of our departments and our committees in particular, I'm just saying, like, some, some people, there, there may be, you know, questions that actually elicit what we need to know, that's not offered in the written.
You know, we can always say at the beginning of reports, does anybody have any questions about any of these reports?
Yeah.
Now, but I want to say.
And the answer is no, we move on if there are questions and we have, have some questions.
Now regarding sheriff and fire reports, I want to hear them, the public wants to hear them. You know, um, it doesn't have to be as, um, with the fire chief is, he doesn't have to read his report, but go over the, 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 um, most important points because we need to know if there's a fire in John's neighborhood or, you know, or, or there's many fires over there or emergencies. You know, just to keep us up on, you know, the different areas of the township and the emergencies and whatnot. And, and also what we need for our fire services.
Yeah, I guess what I wouldn't, I would say, my only counter that was, I don't need him to go through every, hey, I went here at ten oh five P M and did this and ten oh one P M. Yeah, I, I, I'm sure he's got that report.
Unless it's a major, I think, but the incidences, some of the major ones, I think, should be. And also it provides, um, safety if there's somebody that was smoking in bed, you know, this is what happened. I mean, they're going to have to do an inspection, but this is just to keep the safety in mind for residents to be proactive as well. So it's kind of, but there's many layers to this, not just.
Here, here would be my kind of, here would be my kind of criteria for, you know, when you want to talk about reports. The things that are asking, the change of behavior though, right? You know, you made a good point, hey, there's some safety things are here.
Yes.
That's actionable because it's going to change someone's behavior, right? So that, that's kind of my first criteria of any kind of report, right? Um, it, it, it's all going to follow under action, I wasn't say it's, you know, is there some kind of financial impact? Right, but that still kind of guess falls under action a little more I think about it.
Yeah, but I, I also think it can help, which we've tried to do over the last couple of years, is get department heads in front of the board more. And we've been doing a better job, but we got a ways to go, like our parks and paths director has worked for us for many months, haven't heard from her yet. You know, she's going to have a report, you know, assessing, you know, and, and it can be quarterly or something, but I think the more information, the better.
I like your quarterly, yeah, we get it, I like, that's a great idea. We should have a news line for it. But let's get a quarterly, quarterly, uh, report, uh, from all, what would you call it, departments, I guess?
Yeah, departments and sheriff.
I don't want to enter into some terrible. Wrong, so that'd be, uh, sheriff, fire.
And departments.
Parks, okay, are those departments up?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Like you were saying, there, there may be other reasons why we would need to have somebody come and talk to us about something specific.
Yeah.
And not wait, you know, for a.
Yeah, oh.
But that would just be an agenda item.
Right.
Okay, so reports to do, well, have an open area, hey, does anybody have any questions to report? But I don't, we're not going to have everybody kind of in the, in the future, doing a separate report every time. Kind of just burns time unnecessarily. I'm trying to get our meetings down to two hours, guys.
Oh, yeah.
God bless us all. You got two kids to go home to, I know, well, they're probably sleeping though.
Usually, they usually wake up right when I get home.
Where's the coffee? Okay, uh, great, so I, I, again, I just said, uh, yes, create some reports. Uh, by only asking all your reports I make gives us, you know, hey, could you include this or could you include that? Or this is too complicated, you can touch, you need some feedback.
Good.
Or, or all of us.
That'd be great.
Jill may have feedback or Kathy may have feedback, right, just help us make a good report, this is consumable, that's all. All right, okay, don't need to re, report, and again, I think we can start this next, let's try and start this next meeting, right?
Sure. So that means reports for members of the board on behalf of various committees, boards and commissioners shall be submitted in writing and delivered to the supervisor and administrator by twelve P M on the Wednesday preceding the regular for inclusion in the meeting material.
That's this coming Wednesday.
Right, so we got, if there's, if you're on our planning commission riser or if you're on a, the road, uh.
I, I can let everybody know, I can send out an email later today.
So we all got to kind of step it up to make sure that we have that. Um, and whether it's one page or twenty pages, you got to have it to Will by Wednesday.
I would aim for succinct reports.
I agree. I, I said, I, I.
Highlights, you know.
I'm with you, I'm with you on that, but you know.
Add the due date and time to the calendar that's on our, oh, website, on the website. Um, is it on the website too?
The calendar that we have.
No, no, the, the.
The, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the, the reports need to drive action, if the report doesn't drive an action, it's just data, it doesn't do it, I guess, I just don't care. It's got to be something that drives a behavior.
But it's more than that, it's letting us know what's on the forefront, like the planning commission did something as.
Right.
What they did.
That would drive an action or a behavior, right?
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, I understand, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen reports that we should have by Wednesday at noon.
Yep.
Including roads, supervisor, clerk, treasurer, everybody's, if you got.
If there's something to report.
Well, they, they should let you know though, so they don't just miss.
Yeah, but what I, what I don't want to see is nothing to report and then, oh, by the way, here's my report for today, last minute. And, and that, that's just not part of the packet, it's not part of the record, residents can't process it, I can't process it. I can't, um, find out from Jillian, I'm supposed to vote on it, all that kind of stuff.
Well, let's do this, let's take our first swing at twelve thirteen, let's all agree that we may need to improve the process, but at least it's not our thing to do.
Yeah.
You make, oh, those are all sailor points, right? So let's just take our first swing at it, work together as a team.
Yep.
How can we improve it?
It's, it's a work in progress.
Work in progress, absolutely.
Should we ready to move on?
Well, and by the way, you got to give Will at least the credit, they always make sure we move along, like, God bless.
Okay, here we go.
Can you go back a little bit? Go back a little bit?
What was that?
Sorry, I skipped something.
Kids just mess away.
No, really not, but before that.
What's right after reporting?
Part of reporting. Um. No, that's it, thanks, appreciate it.
Just wanted to make sure to mess with it.
No, I really didn't, I didn't, I want to make sure we got it off.
Okay, uh, luckily we've had, now that we have Julian to drive this baby. Oh, uh, again, we already kind of, already kind of beat this up, we're going to have the final process. We've got, uh, Julian, like, is Julian any help you need from me or, I'm sure the folks.
The committee, we've been working kind of slowly on a process and there's been, we're kind of going around in a circle because we don't have an administrator, I mean, um, I'm, your interim, I'm sorry, but, um, an administrator for the residents to go to, to start the process. Um, so there's some things that we still need and also getting clear on public act one eighty-eight. Um, we had Mike Homier, um, attend last meeting and he answered some of our questions. But there's also, um, we have this township-wide, township-wide road S A D that is up for renewal and the process hasn't been done properly, so we need to either tear that apart, but so.
What is the relevant, what is it?
Right, but what I'm saying is that we have some things to, to figure out.
Yeah, no, understood, what I, what I.
There's lots of action.
So here's, here's, here's my expectation would be, first, I, I probably want to see like a flow chart, right? So just kind of like, you know, we start here and then it goes to this person. If they say yes, it goes here, it goes this next step. They say no, maybe it goes back to start again because you didn't do that kind of thing. So just a flow chart of how things, a, a yes, no, logical flow chart of things. So I understand, okay, and then, you know, finally when we get down to somewhere, right, there's all these yeses and nos, it gets down to approval of process, right?
You know, maybe, um, having a, a, a meeting, maybe the three of us with Linda, Linda Smith as the chair. So I don't want to overstep her responsibilities either, but this would be really good because I think, I mean, she's kind of new to committee, so if we could.
You, you, you own it, man, whatever, whatever, whatever you want to do, whatever you want to do.
So I do have a question about the scope of this.
So, just so you know what, I say you own it, I mean, you own it.
So, so is the scope of this the sad process for private and public roads? Or is this the sad process for the special millage? What's the scope of this slide?
Yeah, it's.
Roads, road in.
It's roads. Roads. Road, I've been in maintenance.
Okay, wait, one, one more scope question.
I, I, I agree, I was trying to.
Yeah, let's be clear, roads, but wait, is it roads and East Delhi Bridge or not? Because I know that there's an issue with that right now.
There's an S A D that was established back in two thousand eight, um, for the Delhi, for the maintenance of the Delhi Bridge. And, um, I don't know if that resides with the roads advisory committee. It seems like it sort of belongs there, but I don't know that it, there's a need for the roads advisory committee to be involved.
Is it township-wide or limited to the, those?
It's a, it's a special assessments district.
Designated area.
Specific properties that are included and, um, so it's sort of like a neighborhood S A D.
Very similar.
Yeah, it's very similar, but it, it was part of an agreement with the roads commission.
So put, so you got.
I'm thinking it's like sad going forward, how do we want to do it better in the future is kind of the scope of this?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, there may be special cases like that, that it's not a typical neighborhood road improvement project. But I think the norm is neighborhoods that come together and they may, for the most part, they're public roads. But sometimes it's like Merlin Way, it's a private road.
Private building.
And, and there's slightly different circumstances for them, but it's pretty much the same process.
Yeah, there's some, Roy, we had a meeting with Roy, there's some ideas that we.
Yes, yeah, the roads advisory committee is working on, on both a chart of the process and, and, you know, step-by-step description. But it's also working on the larger village.
I mean, just, just, just to this help, I mean, I, I'm just kind of doing ad hoc here. You know, the, the flow chart, hey, what are all the requirements, you know, open it up. You know, the flow chart, hey, what are all the requirements, you know, open it up here, the whole thing you have to have, you know, kinda before you start, before you begin, know these things like, you know, the box or something or something. Have these tools ready, all these things, you know, here's kind of the rules of engagement, you know, where the approvals are in the step, where the costs are in the step, where the estimates in the step, those those kinds of things. If you want me to help you with that a little bit, I mean, flow chart.
Sure.
God, everything we do in our company, so uh. Um, happy to, happy to.
He should have been a doctor, psychopath, his handwriting.
Well, there's also the township. It has some software that might help for diagramming it.
Uh, Powerpoint's got all set and stuff, yeah, I mean, there's all kind, yeah, there's a billion.
Is the three-one deadline workable?
Four? No.
Oh, two-one, I thought you were.
For what?
For describing the process?
Yeah, they have this, they have this kinda, this 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 thing done. When do you think you could have a flow chart, all this stuff? What what they would.
Oh, so you mean the special assessment process?
Yes.
Completely.
Yeah, like that.
Well, we meet once a month and so, Mark, let's talk about this later so I can get some more insight. There's a lot of working, Kathy knows, she's on the road and it's been, I've been frustrated, put it that way.
All right, well, give me, give me a worst case date and we'll always make it better. Can I, can I have it done by four-one?
Okay, let's do four-one.
That'd be good, beginning of fiscal year.
Hangar pools.
That's it.
I hope we can beat that deadline.
Well, hey, she can, can test, right?
We have.
Well, it's just they've been working.
Three meetings.
It also might be necessitated by people coming forward to us wanting an S A D.
Well, let's hope.
Well, we're actually Park Ridge.
Opera in the works.
Yeah, Park Ridge and.
I don't know that that one's ready.
No, it's, but it's helping with our process.
It's prompting, it's prompting the discussion at the Roads Advisory Committee, but it's, I don't know that that neighborhood's ready to do an S A D.
So we take a snapshot and then move on to the next one?
Yep, I got it.
No, 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 that's her problem. Okay.
It's mine. I'm bringing the problem to y'all.
All right, next slide, please. Legal fees. Well, I gotta agree with a few of you folks on here that we spent a lot of money on legal fees unnecessarily. Uh, I also have to agree that we have a, I think this is Kathleen's angst, if I'm not mistaken, a few others. Uh, that to have a uh legal counsel uh for four hours in a meeting is not a good, good use of our monies. Um, I would suggest that we do is, based upon the agenda, we request any, all legal questions that are any at the beginning of the meeting. So if we're gonna have this, maybe we're gonna do a kinda walk-run uh scenario or crawl-on, walk-run. And just basically say, look, we'll have this person present for the first thirty minutes of the meeting, after that, they're signed off. So if you, and if a question comes after that, that's just gonna have to wait to the next meeting. But to have this person there for four hours, that that to me is crazy town.
Six.
Yeah, or six, or whatever it is, yeah, yeah. So let's just do that. We have legal counsel here to at least maybe not answer the question legally, but say that is a legal question, right? At least flag it.
Mark, I I I read that and I liked it, but then I know and and Jillian's got a good point about making people who have business before us, they stick around until the end and that's four dot two, regular meetings for order of business. Call the order, adopt the agenda. Sometimes that takes us fifty minutes. Correspondence received, public comment, sometimes that's thirty, forty minutes, approval of minutes, that's taken time before. Consent agenda, that can be forty-minute arguments. Regular reports, those can go on, public hearings, unfinished. So by the time we get to something we needed the lawyer for, we're we're three hours in.
John, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Township attorney report. In report. There's no reason, I mean, that we can't add township attorney.
No, sometimes, but sometimes don't we want an attorney here? Don't we want, so there's sometimes.
Here's, here's what I'd say. What I'd suggest is, is what we used to do is, and and I would say, if there's an issue on the agenda that one or more of us knows we need an attorney for, want an attorney for, it's unusual, you know, certainly, anybody may do that. But that is the exception and not the rule. For every meeting, I mean, I don't even think we need this placeholder, but if others would like it, I would.
It's a crawl, walk, run, and Jessica.
Yeah, if 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 others would like it, I would suggest we maybe put it in reports. And then, and then the township attorney would just be present at reports. And then if the township attorney has anything to say, but that would be a time for questions, John.
So I'm not sure that this is workable, honestly, because because in the past, we've had legal issues come up unexpectedly and I expect that that will continue to happen. And we've had people assert points of law in debates. And if we don't have a township attorney present to deal with that situation or with um matters of procedure, uh, then.
Will, are you just talking about me? And I just mean for clarity. Wait, no, no, really, is it, is it just about legal things I've asserted or is it other people?
Do you want, you, well, be respectful? Uh, is it, is it, I hopefully it's not just Jillian.
No, no, it's okay if it is. It's okay if it is, but I just, I'm trying to get clear on what the issue is. I really am, Will.
Yeah, so we'll continue. Share your thoughts here.
So I, my, over time, it was my impression, and I think other members of the board as well, that it was helpful to have somebody here to play that kind of referee role. And I think that is um part of what this pushback is about. It's it's being framed as legal costs and, oh, we need to save money. But what it really is, is we don't wanna referee anymore. We want a free-for-all.
But, Will, I got your back. Mark's got your back. If you're the subject of a personal attack or if something comes up, well, I I'm telling you. I don't think Mark and I are gonna tolerate these, 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 these ad hominem attacks a- and if it comes up. I don't think you need a lawyer here to protect you.
Well, I'm willing to try it.
When the, when the group should protect you, when I'm committed, when Mark's committed.
I'm willing to try it, but it's not ad hominem attacks that I'm worried about. It's about people sort of saying, this is the law.
Like, what's an example?
I dare you to knock this chip off my shoulder.
Okay, 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 so, all right, hold on, hold on.
And you know, with the previous board.
That's how, whether that's real or not, this is how Will feels. This is how he feels. Our teammate feels this way.
Okay.
So so is our teammate, right? He's our teammate. He's obviously got reasons why he feels that way, see? You can call that bit constantly.
So, wait a minute, wait.
And and uh, and and we have to, we as a board have to change our behavior, so he doesn't, so either perception or not, that does not occur. And he says he's willing to try it, and that's a big step for for Will. So I wanna call that out and let's try it and see it. If we fail, then I think we go back to, then we'll have to go back to return. Well, at least try it.
Okay, so.
We have thirty minutes of availability, like crawl, walk, run.
You talked about how Will feels. Check in with everyone else, because we all have feelings too.
Hundred percent.
And I think that there are major changes we could make. We don't need a township attorney sitting through all of our meetings. That's a waste.
Right, I think it's, I think Will's agreeing to that. That's what I'm saying.
Well, that's not exactly what I heard.
That's my sister. Did I, did I hear you correctly, Will? She said you were willing to try that.
Well, we're, we're talking about the parameters of how this would work and stuff. We're still sort of working it out. But it seemed like where people were headed is they wanted to limit the amount of our meeting times where we had town, a paid township attorney to be present. But what I'm saying is, I'm open to exploring that, but the the reason that we moved in that direction, in my view, is because we needed someone to play multiple roles. One of them was as sort of a referee um about process. And the other was um to be able to answer legal questions that might come up. And sometimes that happens unexpectedly.
But I can't think of examples of that. I mean, the, the, the we, and and it's just data. Like, we never made this decision. The board never made the decision to have the attorney at every single meeting. What, and 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 it was, it 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 changed when we hired an additional township attorney, and that's fine. But, but no, but timeout, I gotta say one thing though, because this is, this is important. Like, for example, I was chairing the election commission before the August, August election. Suddenly, Foster Swift shows up. I mean, so there's even meetings that Will is calling attorneys to that aren't even board meetings. And so I feel that some of it is about, you know, Will and me. And and he, he sometimes has the attorney.
Okay, but Will just said he's willing to try it.
Right.
Okay, so that's whatever we all certainly wanna do. So let's try it.
I, I, I don't.
Enough discussion, all right? He says he's willing to try it. That's great.
So with the previous board before twenty twenty, I sat in on all the meetings except for one. But the only time the attorney showed up is when there was something on the agenda that needed legal. It wasn't to sit there and babysit and referee and all of that. So this is really us board working together and coming to a consensus.
Fine on, Jillian. So so Will has made a concession, said, all right, let's, let's try that. We'll have for the first thirty minutes, if we have any legal, legal issues, I'd like to make it zero.
Yeah.
But I feel like let's just crawl, walk, run.
What if we start, I mean, I'm open to either. I'm just thinking, if Will, if what you're, you're feeling is that Mike plays a helpful role in, I don't know, kind of, you know, throughout, kind of unexpectedly in in the meeting, then I don't know that even thirty minutes. I mean, it just feels like, I I don't know that that's gonna meet that need. And I don't have.
I'm just trying, I'm just, I'm just trying to, Jessica, and you may be right, by the way, I'm just trying to come up with a compromise. Let's start there.
I, and I don't think we need an attorney present at all unless we need him or her present for something specific. Now, in 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 supportive Will, when somebody says, M C L one, two, three, four, five says this, 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 and this, and this. Just because somebody blurts it out doesn't mean it's right. Did, so, I, you know, if someone blurts it out, it could be on point, it could be not on point, there could be a case law that distinguishes it. So I, let's not fear those people who like to uh cite the law as backing them up.
The only two people that that should, that should, that should play attorney are probably Kathy and you.
I'm not gonna play our attorney.
Cause you got our attorney.
So like, so, so I, my point is, let people cite law all they want.
Okay, so so.
Yeah, don't.
Well, yeah, I mean, and also, let's not fear reading and comprehension.
How about this? How about this? How about this? How about this? Okay, let's look, let's pass go. I think Will said he's willing to try. Will, can we try the next meeting without an attorney and see how things go?
I, we need to look, see, this is the other question. It's like, what's on the agenda that might actually call?
I understand. We need an attorney, that's different. But if we don't have anything on there.
Our next agenda is gonna, I I have to look at it, but it is packed with all kinds of stuff that we may want to have an attorney for. So I, I, I.
But, but the attorney is there for those reasons, not to keep peace in the family.
Hear what you said.
That's a whole different reason. I think everybody's okay with that.
Well, shouldn't we, if we've got our package, shouldn't we have reached out to the attorney in advance and say, what about this?
Absolutely, yes.
It shouldn't come up, like, we shouldn't be asking our, our lawyer, legal things in a public record. We should go into, couldn't, you should potentially go into uh.
Right, you should know in advance, right?
But even in the past, the attorney was sometimes, the township attorney was sometimes called to meetings. But obviously, we're living in a different world now with the, with SIO Township and its board than in the past. So I think what we're talking about is trying something different, less attorney presence at meetings. But we still have to sort of sort through what is appropriate to have an attorney present for. And sometimes it won't be possible to, you know, get all questions answered, all legal questions answered in advance, but obviously, that is the ideal distraction.
Okay, so I'm sure you say, we're open to legal, but it's recognized and driven by the agenda. That's one thing, right? There may be some things that pop up, I mean, it's called pop-ups.
Litigation update.
Might need legal review.
Well, yeah, that's.
Those will be recognized by these, I'm gonna lean on, on, on Kathy and John, for legal review, and those will have to wait till the next meeting, right? Uh, legal review.
We don't wanna tie our hands either.
No, you're not. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to be official with with using the attorney fee, that's all.
I understand, but we, 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 sometimes you spend money on attorneys and it's money well spent.
Yeah, I agree. No, I'm, I'm, so, so we'll, we'll, we at least know, we can at least have it driven by an agenda. That one's easy. I think we all agree to that one, right? We know there's just some things that we can't decide without legal opinion, right?
And if we can't work that out, one, any one of us can't work that out in advance by consulting one-on-one with our township attorney and really, really feel like the township attorney needs to be there for that issue, we'll ask them to be there for that issue.
Pop-ups, you know, there's gonna, might be things that pop up. They pop up, I mean, if these guys decide whether, I'm gonna lean on these two to tell me whether that's a legal thing or not, right? And if it is a legal thing, then we'll just have it for the next meeting, 'cause we don't have an attorney, 'cause they will be attorney.
No, I just wanna, I just wanna say, neither one of these are township attorney. We won't.
No, I, no, no, they, they're just saying, they're just saying, do they, do they recognize it? They're not giving us opinion, do they recognize it?
No, no, I'm just protecting them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We would do preliminary screening. That's, that's all.
So, you know, I've, I've done a little talking to some other townships and other township attorneys and do you, do they have attorney that shows up at their meeting? And it's often, no, they don't, unless. And and that's what I think, that's the model we should move into. The presumption is that we don't, unless.
Which is what we did in the past, which worked well.
That is what we did.
And isn't it true, Joe Fink never charged us unless we, we called him?
That's true. Fink and Fink, Fink and Fink shows, but.
I don't know.
No, it's, no, it, no, this is true. So Fink and Fink, their practices, if they come to a meeting, physically come to the meeting, they work on other SIO business, so they're billing us for that. Um, but they're not just charging us to sit there.
Okay, all right. So we got this, can we, I think we got this done, right?
So, so they're billing, they're just doing other work for the township. Okay. Yes, let's move on.
All right, everybody cool with it?
Yes. Um, now you have.
We're together on that one as a team. We'll point that out.
Did, did you wanna talk about legal committee? I saw on there before, or you wanted to?
Oh, do we need a legal committee?
I guess I'm gonna sub YouTube. I think, I think we're over here.
Can we try this, just?
Yeah, let's, let's try it now.
Of course, when I talk about that.
No, some bigger questions is, who's our township attorney for what purpose?
Yes, oh.
Cause I mean, that, I'm not trying to open the can of worms right now.
No, let's not.
But we need to, we need to look at that and I think, cuz we have seven attorneys and we just, we have no contracts with any of them. All that needs to be done.
We'll do that later. Yeah, that's another thing. We'll tackle that later. We got this one done. Anybody snapshot that? Are we all good?
I got it. Where do you see legal team? It was on the prior, prior.
Oh. Right here, right here.
Okay, somebody's going too fast for me.
We can have that, John.
Really?
And I think this is almost the last one here.
Yes, dang.
Yeah, we made some good progress today.
You're gonna get home to your smoker.
I'm gonna get home to my smoker. I just tell her wipe the head up with the pellets in it. Uh, all right, so, uh, I think that, I think we're all in agreement on this. I don't think there should be any issue. I think, maybe it was, I don't know if it is any time, but we have the supervisor supports a draft agenda to manage the meeting. And he does, I think, again, we gotta say one on that one, but I think we'll have actually a pretty good job making sure we're in that puzzle. Uh, you know, he does make a point, he's gotta control how many items on the meeting, so we keep doing the reasonable amount of time. The priority is the data available to resolve. These are, I think, all legitimate points that Will brought up to me. But anybody can add something to the meeting. Jessica wants to add something to the meeting, or Donald had something to the meeting, or Jillian, or Kathy, anybody could put anything out of the meeting. Just with knowing that it's got these caveats, revisers, right?
Right.
That it's gonna follow him, we've got a priority, we have to kinda concern ourselves with, but all voices, the point is, all voices are gonna be heard.
And, and I would, my, my observation over the last two years, we have never suffered from having too many things ready by, by Thursday, okay? So we have never had too many items for the draft agenda that are all ready. Certainly, there's prioritization of, you know, what am I gonna work on for this or that? You know, what might be coming from planning? I know Will has to juggle some of that, but we have, there, there has never really been too much ready to go.
Do we all agree on this?
Well.
Go ahead, you.
I'm just concerned about piling a lot of things on Will at the last moment. You know, we have the reports by a certain time. So I think the deadlines need to be changed to, you know, be a little bit earlier so he can get the packet to us by Thursday. So the deadline of when everything needs to be in. Um, I don't, what would be a last-minute agenda item?
Well, I would say too, I would ask, you know, since we've got, you know, some tech savvy people here. I mean, everybody can directly add things to the draft agenda, the write-up and everything. So it's not work, a lot of work for him.
So, can I point something out at the, at the risk of following our rules? Um, we do have on page two of our March eight twenty-two rules, agenda preparation and distribution. Where it says, any board member, staff, or consultants desiring to place a matter on the upcoming meeting agenda may send the item to the supervisor and the administrator with any supporting materials for the meeting packet. And then, and and then and it must be received by twelve P M. on the Wednesday, may, and then time, and then it's up to Will to decide the order, but we can all put things on there now.
No.
But I, 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 it looks to me that upon, our rules say that. Am I wrong on that?
Our, our, our rules do say that, but when you read it, we, we had this conversation when we were adopting the rules and and Will's interpretation is that his job description supersedes that and gives him final authority to cut or add items.
His job description doesn't affect my ability to follow my damn rules and put something on the agenda. That's what I want.
I think he would argue it would because it was adopted by resolution, not by motion as that was.
Well, 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 I'm saying, wait, wait, wait a second. Will, are you reasonable on doing all that?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with people submitting stuff to go on the agenda, especially if it's, if it's fully formed and it arrives. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with people submitting stuff to go on the agenda, especially if it's, if it's fully formed and it arrives, you know, early enough that we can evaluate it, but there's, there is a role for the supervisor to play as the moderator of the meeting and the bringer forth of the draft agenda to just make some determinations about what has priority, so what order goes on, but also, um, whether we have too much on a particular meeting agenda, and something needs to get cut, or if something's not, something's not ready.
But, 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 but I don't think, I don't think you should determine what goes on the agenda, you can determine where it goes on the agenda, and if it doesn't get to the agenda, 'cause it's twelve-thirty at midnight and Brazzo moves to adjourn, and then we get to it next, but I, I think, I think our anyone on this board should be able to, if they're timely, get something on the agenda. Where it gets put, I leave to you, I leave to the administrator to do, to do that, but you can't stymie someone's um, efforts at democracy, uh, 'cause if it's a stupid idea, we'll vote it down.
Uh, Donna and Jim, in the past, if I remember correctly, with the previous boards, in order to get something on the agenda, anybody, it had, there was a deadline, I thought it was two weeks before. Does that ring a bell?
No.
Or, am I?
I can send people, but there is one point.
There were some things like Planning Commission, things, those sort of things did have those deadlines.
Letting it go over here.
General agenda.
But we have our current rules, okay.
But we always, and I don't know where this comes from, something comes up, and at seven oh five, when we're doing the approval of the agenda, it, we always have had the right to add an item.
Oh, yeah.
That come, that has come up.
We always do, we always will.
You know, that's, that's the approval of the agenda step in the meeting.
But I'm not talking about that, what I'm talking about, is, is just, just how do we govern ourselves, how do we prepare to do the public's business? Knowing what's coming, having a chance to digest it, having a chance to go to the internet and look at past things, and drive by someplace, or talk to somebody, I mean, the due diligence that we have to do, eh, 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 but, but now, I also don't think that agenda items should be used to, to, for political purposes, or whatever purposes, and, and I have seen some wheresses or some things, or they, that were pretty condemning, I'm not gonna name names or who did it, but, so I, I think, don't use an agenda item to advance a political purpose. And I'm looking at you, Mark Brazzo, 'cause I don't wanna look at anybody else.
So, the zoning board, why don't we have submission, uh, submittal deadlines?
We, we do, in our rules.
It's just simple, if it's, if you're for SIO, then this should not be an issue, if it's truly for SIO, not for your own personal agenda, it should be non, it should be nonstarted, it's just that simple, it really is.
I, I would say, we have rules that we should follow until we change them.
Yeah, anytime I see politics, all you're telling me is you're for yourself and you're not for SIO, that's all, that's all I hear, that's all I hear.
Well, it's more subtle than that.
It's my ear, so I think it's just simple, we drive by priority, the volume, we have enough data to make the decision, I mean, no sense in putting something on there if we don't have all the facts we need to have something, those are three things, this should not be a big deal, we're all trusting each other, I mean, I don't know why it'd be, somebody's gotta moderate, Will, Will should do that, if we have Harper with it, we'll bring it up, but I, I say, somebody's gotta own this, I think Will should own it.
Okay.
Are we ready then? Want to snapshot that, are we all good? Alright, next one, now we're getting to heavier stuff. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, okay, new hires, I think we all know that, we did this process, I'm gonna ask everybody to follow the process, let us please drive. I'm, again, have you seen me ever get online, please feel free to bark with me if I ever get in your business, I'm a big believer in delegation, let somebody do it. I am, I have reached out and talked to Amy Sell on several occasions, I told her, the next step was I wanna get through this meeting to make sure we're all in final alignment before she goes full board, I've got her cock and loaded, ready, ready, ready to go, right? Um, then what we're gonna do, once we're done, we're gonna hand it off to the three of you, Donna, to, actually, four, it'd be actually Donna, Jim, uh, Will, sorry, I had a little, I'm on four hours sleep here, and Jessica, and you guys decide whether to consider, I, 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 I don't know the great questions you've been asking from a, from a, you know, functional perspective, just, but I can, I can look at their cognitive skills, their, can these people get along? Um, how do they solve problems, or problems, those kinds of things is what I, what I look for when I talk to them. So, John and I are kinda driving that, either John goes first, I go first, sometimes Jillian jumps in, sometimes Kathy don't, I'm sorry, Kathy don't jump, jumps in, and Jillian, Kathy don't, sorry, so you have to be three of us, that's right, sorry about that, my bad. Uh, and then, you guys are the final candidates, obviously, hopefully, we have two to choose from, from each category, that would be cool, and then there's one, which is painful. Uh, these people hired ASAP, so that's kind of just the process.
I, I think administrator, uh, uh, you know, I think our next temporary administrator, are you, you're talking the permanents, right?
Yeah, that's what this says.
I know, it's what it says. But I, I think we need to get a temporary administrator in here to relieve, to relieve Jim, who is, uh, announced he's leaving in a month and a half.
Yeah, so what, we give him that.
So, we need to get, we need to get a temporary administrator in, who has the autonomy to make the decisions, and who gets along with everybody, to kind of stabilize the ship of SIO, so that we can then recruit somebody to move their family to SIO with their kids and put in our schools, and, 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 and kind of take root here.
Amen, amen, so the way, I, the way I see the ad, you know, you call him a manager, administrator, manager, I really don't care what you.
I don't either.
I don't know, you guys get this whole naming convention thing, I don't know why, uh, it doesn't really make it.
There are differences, but.
There are differences in the statutes.
In our boardroom says we have a manager.
Still do that later on.
Yeah, okay, uh, whatever, um, I see him as kind of the CEO, I mean, you know, he's the one that kind of reports to, he makes sure they get.
He or she.
He or she. He or she, frankly, uh, they do a better job.
Yeah.
What I've seen.
Go ahead, Mark.
All the top performers with Mike over here are all female, that's interesting, so, uh, uh, but anyways, again, we, we give them, here's our goals, they're the ones who execute the goal, again, we talked about that earlier, they're, they're the ones who figure out the how, and they don't do the job, he or she does not do the job, we find a different he or she to replace, simple as that, right?
Okay.
Um.
And the others would be, you know, depending on the candidates, we could set up staff or something, when we get deeper into it with some finalists, I do find it's helpful to have Amy help with some of that second level stuff for the permanent positions, not for the interim possibility, John.
Yeah, I'm assuming she's gonna be background checks, and all of a sudden, and by the way.
A meet and greet with staff, that kind of stuff.
And I have been snaked by one, completely fake their whole background.
Yeah.
I mean, where even when you called the references, there were fake references, wow, oh, I, I can tell you some old, the elaborate stories that people have done is unbelievable, and they got past their career, and it was, my only was slip of how he caught.
It's like a Better Call Saul plot.
What's that?
It's like a Better Call Saul.
Oh, it was, I mean, it's a great story over, over a beverage.
My point on that is, do we need a permanent part-time in-house HR, or depending on who the administrator is, they might be able to.
So, I'm gonna argue with you.
I'm not, I'm not.
Alright, let's hold that whole thought, I'm gonna tell you how my vision with HR is, I think it's very different than maybe what everyone else's vision of HR is, 'cause we have an HR person who is, and I was very down on HR, but.
I'm not down on HR.
No, but I was very, I wanna say a little bit of a negative person on it, like, just prevailing, they're really gonna add, I would not, no way would I have a company that would.
Yeah, and our HR consultant recommended this particular halftime position, so we've had some assessment.
Okay, that's, we got, we got a slide to cover that, so we'll, we'll get to that, so hold, just talking about that thought for right now, but we will definitely get to that, okay, next one. Alright, so administrator, I think we have the rationale, I, look, I, I don't know all the details, I know you guys have the, the detail list, the rules, the responsibilities, but again, this person should report directly to the board, and this is our, actually, really standard org chart that would be for a, a company, right? Uh, right here would be, normally be shareholders, here it's voters, we have our, kind of the board itself, the board committee, this person should report directly to the board. Again, we give them goals, objectives, responsibility, authority, measure, right? Okay, our objective's key results, that's what this person should do, we had, now I will talk to Donna, I'm gonna do a little bit of a a sandwich here, so, I, I think they'll tell you this, that, that what I was really, at the opening meeting, I was disappointed here when I did talk to Mark Thompson, and, and, and I don't wanna belabor this, I wanna move on from this, I really do, and I need you two to really go home and think about this, and really figure out how you guys can do this, right? 'Cause what I heard from him was, Jessica, you badmouth Will, Will, you badmouth Jessica, right, that's what he said, so I'm not gonna, I'm gonna assume that Mark is not lying, right? I'm gonna trust Mark at his word. We gotta discuss it, 'cause again, when you're doing that, you're, you're badmouthing me, you're badmouthing Kathy, you're badmouthing, we're all a team together, man, we gotta stop that, right? And I guess, I believe you guys both wanna do the right thing, just go on a little bit differently, kids don't, you guys don't realize, I told you before, you guys are both actually cut from the same cloth, and I love it, 'cause you guys are driven, but you're letting some stuff get in the way of that, I'm not sure why, we just gotta end it, man, just gotta end it, right? 'Cause that's what's making Mark hold back and having second thoughts, I told him that, we're gonna get this fixed, and you two are gonna work together, but aside, aside the way, I mean, we're all just human beings, I get it, man. I have, I have got, my wife has volumes of all the mistakes I have made, right, uh, so, I'm not saying I'm any different, right? Feel free to call me out when I, when I make mistakes, but we gotta, guys, it has to end, just has to, has to, has to end, and I saw some good signs today, man. Jessica, you made some bends, Will, you made some bends, it's a start, I know that can't, you know, happen today, but that, that, I'm just letting you know, it's, it's stopping us from moving forward. This is, we all agree, this is so important to have, but yet, we're preventing that from happening.
And, and what, may I say something on the, the reporting, and I think kind of related to your questions about Mark? Um, because we had a kind of constrained part one conversation, we're meeting again next week, he's writing up some questions about finances, which, it was a very positive meeting, I thought, my concern is, I wanna make sure whoever we bring in, that they're protected by this board and able to do their job, and we just had, you know, somebody resign in protest, and so, we need to talk as a board, whether we're talking about our interim administrator, Jim Murty, our next interim administrator, or our next permanent administrator, however it is, how does this board?
That's a great point.
Manage the administrator, 'cause it's been a chronic.
So, so, so just, you know, I think, I can say, I think I can speak for the trustee side, so, for the four of us, not that we haven't, we're not talking together, right? We're talking separately, that we are in fierce alignment with this person, fierce alignment, so it'll always be, no matter what happens, a four-three majority, right? We're gonna make sure this person is fully supported, as it should be, and again, if they're, they're not doing their job, that's different, if they're starting to fall apart, we can find somebody else.
Oh, oh, absolutely, but.
We're not gonna, this is not gonna become a, if you're thinking like, this is gonna become to be a political tool or something like that.
What do you mean by that, Mark? What do you mean, I'm not, not arguing, what do you mean by that, we're in fierce support of him or her?
Supporting this structure.
Well, the structure.
The structure, supporting the structure.
And the person in their position, as long as they are doing their position.
Right, we delegate authority, we delegate responsibility. Right, we give them authority, we delegate authority, responsibility, and hold them accountable, those are the three things that we're going to do. And really big in accountability, so it's delegation, delegation, responsibility, respons-. Uh, accountability. Those all have to kind of, kind of go together, and the way I can account for them, I have to make things measurable. If I can't make things measurable, it's hard to help hold somebody accountable.
Right.
Simple as that, these are, one-on-one for all of us, we're all, every task we take on.
So how do we, as a practical matter?
Yeah.
How do we support him or her, uh, given that there's act of litigation, and given that there's some tension on the board? How do we do that, given some of the realities that we have?
Let's, let's try, well, that's a good point.
I got it, John. Keep in mind, the administrator, manager, whatever the title, runs Township Hall. The trustees, we are in Township Hall, so we see the daily, the trustees do not know what goes on day by day. So, that person runs Township Hall to keep it functioning.
I can live with that, can everyone here live with that?
And then, Hassan reports ideally weekly to the entire board, so we are kept updated.
Why would you want weekly, what about the meetings?
Well, at the meetings, yes, but for example, when we interviewed Mark Thompson, he said that his preference is to be communicating with every board member on a weekly basis, and he does this by a memo to the entire board.
Oh, yeah, sure, awesome, fantastic.
Our first, our first manager, whatever his title was then, he did that on a regular basis.
Yeah, and, and it's a good practice, I mean, it really helps.
But, he can report, but we should not step in if someone says, well, do you know this is going on? No, we do not, they have to run Township Hall and fix the problem.
It depends on the what is going, I mean.
No, they fix the problem, but they keep us informed.
I think I get what you're saying, Donna, without delving into all of the details of what a hypothetical might be that would sort of lose an exception to your rule.
It what? As, as the person who is currently supposed to be in that role, I can tell you, this is, would be an absolute dream to have this sort of a delegation, a lack of, or elimination of micromanaging, getting in the middle of projects, second guessing, getting yourself in front of something before the administrator, this is something, and as I say, I'm, I'm re-retiring, as everybody knows, I'm more concerned about the next person coming in and having it set up, where that person can feel comfortable, that you don't have people taking, you know, getting out of their lanes, doing things that have nothing to do with them.
Well, as I said at the beginning, you saw my rant earlier, everybody has an opinion whether qualified or not, and I know, I don't think it's even being, trying to be mean, or getting in business, I think it's wanting to be helpful, but you're not really being helpful, I guess, is what I go back to, right? Getting in their business doesn't help them, we trust them to do their job going forward, 'cause if you do that, nobody's gonna move forward, we're never gonna go in any kind of expeditiousness, it's just not gonna happen, right? And the same goes for all of us, I don't get, we should be getting in Jessica's business, or Donna's business, man, I'm gonna go do their job, or Will's business, same, so this, this rule applies to everyone. Right, sometimes, and it's gonna take a while for everybody to adjust, but, yep, can we all live by this?
I think so, I think, I think the one thing that, that's kind of tied together, um, and, and, and Will, I'll ask you to speak to this, is oftentimes, you talk about the supervisor and administrator's job descriptions traveling together, or the administrator and supervisor, or maybe it's just been accentuated by your, you know, your friendship with Jim, and, you know, the awkward circumstances that he came in on the last six months, but, I mean, like, you two talk all the time, and, and that's cool, but, do you see yourself as the administrator's supervisor, or do you see yourself as having, 'cause I know that that was kind of a conflict with, you know, part of the thing with David Rowley and other things, it's, it's been a patch.
Well, it may have been, but it's not, no, one percent this guy reports to the board, are we just, just, no, so.
I'd rather, I'd rather not get into a debate about what happened with David Rowley, or, or, or a debate with you about your characterization of what's going on with Jim. But, um, I think there is a reality that this role of the supervisor requires, and, and actually, sort of functions best when they're working well together with the administrator, whoever is.
You should be working well, the role of the supervisor should be working well with the clerk.
I, I understand, but we're talking about a particular working relationship, so I'm not excluding the others.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree with that, you should be working well with everyone.
You know, I think a review of the job duties would be good for all of us, as, you know, new board and whatnot, and to see, because that, it may be different, you're saying delegate, but what are we delegating, you know, just to get all of us on the same, not, I mean, I'm not saying today.
No, no, that's a good point, I think Jillian, you made a good point, that we gotta, just make sure we're all clear, we're in this, we're in this, I agree a hundred percent, I just kinda gave.
So, I have a question, I don't know if we're supposed to do business, but can we at least unanimously, or by consensus or acclamation, get behind the org chart for SIO Township as set forth in Mark Brazzo's PowerPoint? Is it, is this, is this?
We're not discussing it yet.
I, I object to the finance director reporting to the administrator, but the administrator reporting to the board.
Well, we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet, let's follow this one right here, this person reports to the board.
Can we, can we at least agree on that, is there unanimity there?
Yeah, I think, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so.
But we, we're not voting.
Yeah.
No, 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 but I, I think that's a. We could vote. We could vote if we want to, and I'm not saying we have to vote, but I wanna know, I want Thompson to know that there's unanimity on this board. That if you come in to help us out, or your successor comes in, you report to the board of trustees. Keep us in the loop. You're gonna, we're gonna delegate, give you some responsibility.
And the board's gonna have his back.
For the board. Right, so were you, you, were unanimous in that, that agreement? Or agree on that at least?
Yes.
And the reason I like this, by the way.
We'll put it in the newsletter.
The official one or the unauthorized one?
My newsletter. My newsletter. No, it's kind of funny, I'm a little cute, so come on, we can laugh, we can talk. I'm taking you two out for a beer, by the way.
One-on-one.
One throat, just show.
I like one throat, right? It's one person we can all hold responsible. We as the board can hold one person responsible if things aren't going right, right?
Administrator.
Ready, because we're, we're climbing down to your three o'clock deadline here.
Okay. So.
Okay.
So I, so I, I, I don't agree with the finance director reporting to the administrator.
That's the next slide.
Hold on, it's coming up next.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's just on that chart, I wasn't.
It is, it's gonna, we got a whole, these, these colors gonna shift here. We're gonna go to every one of them.
I, I think, I think what he was pointing out was the relationship between the administrator and the board of trustees.
Just this one or this. We're agreed on that, right?
Tell us what he's doing.
Yeah.
You know what? Just chill, chill. All right, let's move on to the next slide.
Yeah, what, are we, and the next, are we going to?
Yeah, we're all good on this, right? Everybody's good on this, right? We all think this is a good idea, because we can vote on it. We all think this is a good idea. Okay, so now we can have a conversation with Mark Thompson. Next slide.
This is the next slide.
Okay, now we're talking about the finance. And I know there's a lot of emotions around hiding this. I understand, but you have, we don't have to quit the politics that other, other township has over the course of. Here's why I feel this makes sense to me. I understand, and I did, I like Kathleen, I did some of my own homework as well. And she is consistent, right? And oftentimes, more often than that, the finance director does report. Uh, no disagreement. The reason I think this makes sense is for a couple of things. One, just of the current function of where we are, because we gotta look at ourselves right now, this is just where, there's a lot, still a lot of tension here. Uh, secondly, I'd like to see this finance director really do a couple of things. I want them just to tie the clerk together. Tie the treasurer together, and tie all these other departments together. But I think it makes sense for that person. And by the way, I did talk to Mark Thompson about this, he, this is the, the reporting structure he has seen, by the way. Okay, so this is not, you, you talked to Mark, you talked to Mark, confirm that, that he is seen and is comfortable with. Now, that should not in any way, however, preclude our clerk from doing whatever statutory duties he's responsible for. If she needs something from the finance director, she better get it, right? I mean, I would expect that to happen. Uh, I mean, she doesn't, she precludes you after that. This, I think, the, the idea that this person. My head, what a finance director does, lose all the departments together, kind of sits off underneath this role. Because really, at that point, this person's really important here. That's really where it's going, is back to Donna's. And at that point, you still have a voice, you have a voice, Donna has a voice, we all have voices.
A suggestion, so the finance director you have under, you know, along with the other department heads or full-time, um, IT, or I think it's IT. And then the full, full-time admin, but the finance director must work with the clerk and the treasurer. Because they have the finance, of the, the financial statutory duties. So why not put the finance director up? And then bridge to the full-time admin, and then bridge to the clerk and treasurer as well. Because it's, it's, they're kind of, in some ways, on the same level, but different departments, just.
You own multiple bosses, one percent, that's always a big mistake.
No, no, the, the finance, it's not about multiple bosses, it's about, you know, what if, um, the full-time, or the, full-time. The admin is telling the finance director to go do something, but it's the clerk that really, or the treasurer that really needs them.
Well, I would expect these all, people all to be working together hand in hand. I mean, that, that's pathetic. I would a hundred percent expect that if the clerk needs something, she can, yeah, be in go like this.
So why does the finance director report to the administrator?
First off, it's the most neutral position. First off, this, because if you think about it, this person's a, and here's how I see it, right? They're doing auto press, a bond rating, they're kind of responsible for, Donna, I know you do investment strategy, I would argue that that person should probably do the investment strategy, because.
Wait, it's statutory?
Nice statutory duty, yeah.
And if you all, if you all respect.
Work with you, they will work with you.
Understand, I will work with anybody, but I make the decision.
I understand, but that's absolutely all the, all the, it's a strategy. I didn't say do it, it's a strategy, right? Big difference, big difference, right? How about all of you guys, every one of you, uh, doing these types of things? But I expect there's, yeah, there's direct connection to everyone here. I mean, you're all a team.
So, can I, have we had a finance director in the past?
Yes.
Yes.
And who was he or she?
Sandy Egler.
Sandy Egler was, has been our finance director for about twenty-eight years, reported to Bryce Kelly up until I was appointed in June twenty nineteen.
So Sandy was finance?
I took over supervision from there.
Okay.
So how, statutorily, how much does the clerk do finances? How much does the treasurer do finances?
About, I'd say about eighty percent of the fin, the last finance director job description we looked at in July. I'd say about eighty percent was finance, almost very little was treasury because of Donna's preference. But it could be if Donna wanted the person to. And then a little bit was board with budget.
So would the finance, would the, would the finance director work with, uh, with Sandy Egler a lot?
The deputy treasurer, deputy supervisor?
Knows this township inside and out.
So, so I, I, I think that would be, and, and, I know, I'm, so that, does that mean, is the fin, maybe I'll just go this way. Is the finance director that we hire likely to have to work a lot with Sandy Egler?
To get to know the township, yes, her background, yes.
But to get to know or to work because of the statutory duties?
Both.
Okay.
I think you have to look at it probably from an initial standpoint, to the extent that, you know, Sandy Egler is willing. She's headed up to here right now. Assuming, let me finish my thought.
No, I'm just asking you.
Assuming, assuming that she's willing to do it, she's gonna be the primary person to bring whatever finance director we bring on. Up to speed.
And why do you say she's headed up to here, Jim? I'm just asking you, Jim, I, not, I'm, the other people can weigh in and react, overreact, underreact.
I'm just, I'm just telling from her perspective.
You're on, you're on your way out, you can be candid.
Right. She has been disrespected and reviled. So it's, uh, I'll just leave it at that. From the public, from the clerk, from everybody else that has had a certain identity to.
I would just say, I disagree with the word reviled.
That speaks to Mark's point, in my opinion, that speaks to Mark's point, at least at this juncture. Where we are in our township history, that speaks to a finance director that has to work with Sandy. Reporting to a full-time administrator, at least right now. I did my, I talked to Pittsfield, I talked to IPSE. Their, they have, their clerks have the finance director reporting to them. And someday down the road, whether that's in a month, or two months, or three months, or whatever, I'm open to revisiting that relationship, that reporting. But I think, as at the outset, having the finance director report to the full-time administrator. But work with the clerk, work with the treasurer, and honestly, work with the supervisor too.
And I'm, I'm gonna, one, I'm gonna, let me just make, I, I, I don't mean this to be harsh, but I have nuts. Mark is a good leader. I mean, I can tell from talking to Mark, if you're a fine leader, I, I, I have no doubt that you, both of you can become good leaders. I know you guys are very smart individuals and can do it, but I haven't seen strong leaderships, because I'm just being honest with you. I don't mean to be offensive, and I'll help you any way I can. Strong leadership skills to guide somebody like that, I just haven't seen it. And, and maybe it's there, I just haven't experienced it yet. So that is the other reason, frankly, I think this person, for now. And maybe as things develop, and maybe things will calm down, and you get a reaction, eventually it does go to the clerk, but that, that's long-term.
But I don't.
I don't care. I'm just trying to do what's best for Syo. Now, that's all I care about. This seems to be the best thing for Syo.
Yes, and I believe we all do, just, I am looking at it from an evidence back-based point of view. So what does the statute say? Is there anything about statute and, and the finance? I know Donna does finance, I mean treasurer, yeah, and then the clerk does. So from that point of view. The finance, it makes sense, the finance director would be, maybe not reporting to them, but directly working with them. Maybe there's a report with the administrator, but, you know, putting aside all of the emotions, because we've all been hurt. We've all been, you know, whatever you wanna call it, but we've got, well, your turn's coming. So, to bring it back to facts and evidence.
Yep. Yeah, I, I, and I think you're, you're spot on, I agree. This person should be hand in hand. This, if it's, what's the person we're talking to right now? You have another one, though, you have another person.
Don't know yet.
But who is it this? I would expect you guys to be going up to coffee and lunch every day. You guys, to protect along with Donna, I, better be.
Yeah. So Mark, um, when, when you're ready, I, I know you've got a three o'clock.
Well, I, I at least could call my wife to turn on the smoke.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so, so when you're ready, I wanna, when you're ready, I wanna show kind of a different per, different perspective on it. Got a couple of slides on it.
Yeah, I know, I know, and we're gonna, I wanna, we'll, 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 we'll show.
Now, listen, I also think who the finance director reports to, a full-time administrator, is different. Than you having access to books and records. And I don't have a problem with the revisiting of that. Because I know that you assert that at every meeting, and I'm open to revisiting your access to books and records and things of that nature. So, so, so I, what I guess what I'm asking is, for the good of the order. Can you live with a finance director temporarily reporting, uh, to the full-time administrator? And then the revisiting of the access to the books and records that you have as the clerk?
Can we begin with that?
Like, is it, like, as a big picture compromise? It might not be what you want, it might not be what he wants. But is it something we can kind of temporarily just do?
No.
Knowing that four of us can do it anyways, if there are four votes.
Isn't, isn't that what, is that what's best for the township?
No, I don't think it is. Because I think.
Well, I've been working on so far for the last two years.
I know, no, not books and records, that's just an aside. I'm just, I'm just trying to come up with.
Talking about the reporting.
Compromise.
I'm, I'd be, I'd be happy to, let me, let me tell you how it's been going. So, you, do you want me to share perspective or not?
We, we gotta, we gotta get, no, if, we gotta, we gotta, I knew, I knew this was gonna be this, I showed me this the last slide, not the, the second slide, that was my mistake.
No, it's okay, I just wasn't sure what, what you wanna do, I just wanna, because, because here's the thing. The, the whole checks and balances in this township have been off ever since. And, and I think they were off for a long time. I think we should have been more like other townships. I think that the clerk and the board did not know what was going on here as much as they should have known. Now, this assertion of everything was perfect, everything was fine, is, I just disagree, it's just not accurate. We've missed out on a lot of opportunities to grow and professionalize, we've been behind on norms and standards. We don't do normal planning and budgeting and all this stuff, and we have it for years. So when I came in in June twenty nineteen. And I still assert, it's my, it is not the board's role to, over my objection. Where you find other places where the clerk may not supervise the person carrying out their statutory duties. That's because the clerk has, the, the board has the clerk's agreement, right? Just as you had agreed, you had agreed when you were clerk, right? But the manager would supervise. And so when I came in, I had seen, I had experience in local government, I saw how, you know, off the wall our budgeting process was. How off it was. And so I came in and said, hey, if I'm gonna have statutory responsibility for finance. We're gonna approach it differently, because, because.
Financial, for books and records, there's a big difference right there.
Both, finance and books and records. And, and with the finance, and this is part of.
Well, I'm sorry, is that, is that accurate, everyone?
Yeah, well, she has custody of all records.
Would you guys, can I just give my?
I just wanna make sure it's accurate, I just make sure we're on the same page, that's all.
Why don't I just share?
Just let her say what she wants to say, and then I, I have another point of view.
The last two are pretty easy, the IT and the HR, so could we do?
Do you mind, do you mind if I just?
A hundred percent here, just.
No, it's okay, I, I honestly tried to prepare this, make it super succinct.
No, 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 Mark, Mark, I think HR and IT are gonna be kind of no brainer.
Those are yeses.
The next two, the next two slides.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah. No, no, I, you should be heard, a hundred percent. I thought you were gonna put, uh, put in the slide, oh, you gotta.
Yeah, I do. I'm just, I'm just gonna go put it on.
Go ahead, Jessica, yeah, please, please do. Let's get this resolved, man.
Because I, I tried to make this as, as, as sheer.
Think as I could.
I know this is important to you.
Well, you know, it's, it's been over, over a year, and I certainly, you know, am not.
Here's what, here's what I would say, Jessica, this is my only preamble to it, and then I wanna hear you out. As long as, as you were saying things, it's for the good of Syo Township?
Yes.
And why it's good for Syo Township?
Yes.
I am all in.
Yes. That is all I've ever been about, and why I became heard, was because I saw how the finances were working here. Well, the point is unanimously on that, so.
Jessica, would you turn on your microphone, please?
Oh, sure, thank you. Okay, so I can zoom through. So. So I just had, let, let me start with the end slide, okay? So this is really how our organizational chart, with all of our policy decisions to date. This, this would be the end game, this is what I can live with, this organizational chart. And we'll work backwards, but if you look at this chart, Mark, everybody, you'll notice kind of four sections, okay? And this is the separation of duties in a township, where you've got a.
Excuse me, it's not showing on Zoom.
What?
Did you not share screen?
I, I see you guys.
So I'm gonna text my wife here, give me one second, let me just, let me text my wife.
There you go.
Smoker going.
Thank you.
Hold on, just one second. Okay, okay.
So.
You're a little slow sometimes.
Not yet.
Okay.
I still see, I still see the board.
I see it's right in your smoker. I got the smoker going, okay. Well, seven o'clock.
Okay, we'll see you.
Yeah, yeah, but the meat's gotta smoke before, huh?
No, no, we'll, we'll see you there.
So, you gotta show up with beer or something, yeah. When it comes after your hand, it will be, it will not be admitted. All right, Jess, Jess?
Yeah.
And by the way, is it fair to say, Jessica, if you've ever been heard out before, this is the first time you've been heard?
I.
It's not, Will, Will, man, dude, seriously, stop.
Yeah.
Say, partner, she's your teammate, let her speak, teammate.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'll tell you what, I, yeah, I've been heard out, and I can't tell you, I mean, how. Um, frustrating it has been to feel, and I'm not talking about arrogance of these individuals. But I do think it's arrogance of a board to say that they know better than the legislature. It is arrogance of a board to say, we're gonna defy the statute. We're not gonna respect the fact that the township clerk was voted in to carry out the township clerk's duties. You all hear Donna say, oh no, I'm in charge of investing, and everybody goes, okay. But when Jessica says, I'm in charge of the books, suddenly because we've never done it that way before. Because I'm young and proactive and gay and a woman. Because I am disruptive in hopefully good ways, because I want this to be the best township it can be.
So, so Jessica said, I don't think, those last three, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with them.
I'm saying historically.
Okay, okay.
Okay, because it is new for Syo Township, right? I get that. I get that Syo Township did things differently. Had a manager, that prior clerks, including one sitting here, thought everything was okay. Everything wasn't, excuse me.
Sit that way.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, let's, Jessica, let's get to the, let's get to the facts, right? Because that, I don't know if that's helping. I understand your frustration. Give me, give me, give me the meat, that'll, that'll, give me the, the meat of the matter.
The meat of the matter is this, the separation of powers in a township exists only when the clerk is independent from the board. The supervisor is independent, the board is independent, and the treasurer is independent. The board does not have the right, under forty-one point seven five A, to delegate responsibilities that are statutorily given. To an elected official already. The board couldn't say, you know what, we're gonna make a trustee the chief of se, assessor. Because Will is our chief assessor, under forty-one point six one. He is the one who assesses our property. The next step in the process is our treasurer. She collects the money, she's the custodian of our monies. We can advise Donna on how to invest our money, we can suggest banks, but the people elected Donna to decide that.
Yeah, okay.
She's gotta be independent, she holds the cash. The board is responsible for budgeting and authorizations, right? And so all of that goes there, and then the clerk is responsible. Right? And so, all of that goes there, and then the clerk is responsible for accounting and reporting. In Syo Township, our problem for decades has been that we haven't had an independent, fully-resourced clerk. And you look at this, you wanna know how do you get checks and balances over your cash? You have the clerk account for it. So, I included all of these citations, and everybody's welcome to check them. You can call my comier if you don't wanna read it yourself, but it's very straightforward. And this accounting and reporting has to be separate from the cash. You don't want the person holding the cash suddenly giving you advice on how you're modifying your books, which is what we have now. You don't wanna have.
What do you mean? So, how, how's, how does that happen today? Can you give me an example?
It's my objection to the board ha- to the board having allowed Deputy Treasurer Egler into the books back in May. You don't wanna have somebody who's managing the cash modifying the general ledger, which was, you know, part of the dispute and part of the legal challenge I present to this board every time to return the books.
But Jessica, where does it, and I have this in front of me, where does it say in forty-one sixty-five that a finance director has to report to you, or a finance director can't report to an administrator? Where, I mean, you have in custody of the records, books, and papers, you keep opening and keeping accounts and, and charging the treasurer. Where does it say that you also have to have the finance director report to you?
What the statute says is I must.
Which I have in front of me.
Yeah, good. What the statute says and the whole check and balance between.
Well, it doesn't say, I don't see the word check or balance.
John, let me get it in front of me, too. So, all right, so. First of all, let's go to the two sentences, and this is why I was going bonkers when Jim was trying to pull three hundred thousand dollars from the quote-unquote cash position of the fire fund. Look at, the township clerk shall open and keep an account with the treasurer of the township. Shall charge the treasurer with all funds that come into the treasurer's hands. Shall credit him or her with all the money paid out by the treasurer on the order of proper authorities. Shall enter the date and amount of all vouchers in a book kept by the township clerk in the office. That's the balance sheet.
Yeah, but where does it say a finance director has to report to you?
What I'm saying is, it says, I take out a personal bond, I'm personally responsible for doing all of those things.
So, where does it say you get to be the boss of the finance director?
And it says that I shall, shall actually, because right now what we have is we have somebody.
Which I'm not against it, by the way, but what does it say?
I'm, I'm finishing what I'm saying. The, the treasurer, the treasurer keeps the cash. This place should want, that you talk about who's most independent, and I understand from the outside, it looks like, oh, maybe the administrator's most independent. But in fact, you have a very powerful treasurer, you have a very powerful board, you want a very powerful clerk, you want equally. In Syo Township, the clerk has been here, and we haven't had good, independent financial reporting. I'm not saying there's been anything wrong, I'm saying we haven't had that independence. And that line that I just read is the balance sheet. That's the balance sheet, right? That's our assets, liabilities. The next line, the township clerk shall open and keep a separate account with each fund belonging to the township.
So, why can't you do all that but work with the finance?
And shall credit each fund with the amounts that properly belong to it. That right there, that's our revenue and expenditure report. So, when our fire fund has negative five hundred thousand dollars on it, and I've got an administrator, treasurer, and supervisor, and a deputy treasurer, deputy supervisor saying, take two hundred thousand dollars from that negative five hundred thousand dollars, that, that explains the issue in itself.
All right, okay.
There's several books.
I've never said anything like that. You gotta clarify that statement now.
What? I'm, I'm, I retract that paraphrasing. I'm referring to the conversation regarding the OPEP contribution.
So, let's, okay, so Jessica, let's, 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 let's just take, let's, let's, let me just repeat back what I just heard, right? About the balance and everything you just told me. I wanna make sure I understand where you're coming from. Um, so. You, you're the, you're basically tracking all these books, and you have access to all these books and records today, and you are tracking all those things today, or you're saying you're not?
No.
Is that correct?
Right.
And what, when you say you're not, and what is preventing you from doing that exactly? What, what?
One, the board, two things. One, I do not have enough qualified staff to do the work.
Okay, so it's just a lack of staff.
Two, the one that is available has been taken away from me and given direction by this board that to, to handle the books in a particular way. Three, the board through its interim administrator took, I believe illegally, the control and custody of the journals and ledgers of this township. And Donna, it is not just the general ledger, it is the journals and ledgers of this township, which exist within the eight financial management modules of BSNA.
So, when you say they took it, what do you mean by took it? I mean, locked you out, uh, I mean, what, what do you mean? I mean, you have to explain to me.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm, I'm, by the way, I'm not being sarcastic. I just don't know. I have no, I'm just not sure what you mean.
No, that's fine. Um, so, so let me just say, let me, let me back up a little bit and try to, try to just go on, on this slide, if that's okay?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand your position. I mean, I'm just trying to get in your head here, so I just understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not so much my head as the statute and, and the norms of all, and why I'm so passionate about it, is this is really, you know, a corruptible situation that we have here. This is super troubling. The reason why the public is flipping out is cuz they have every reason to flip out. We are giving them no confidence. By this, this, the board took away the authority I had. When I walked into office, I had authority. I was supervising the finance director and the finance manager. They had not had close supervision, training, mentorship. And when I started putting eyes on things, I realized we are out of compliance with a lot of things, just kind of behind the times.
Okay, so, so, so when you say, when you say they took.
That's later. So, so let me, let me go through the steps here, Mark. So, what, what I would say is, if anybody has questions about MCL forty-one point six five, you know, you need to look at legal definitions and accounting definitions. Journals and ledgers are types of books. Journals are books of original entry, ledgers are books of final entries. There are, there's a general ledger and sub-ledgers. And the journals and ledgers exist throughout the eight financial management modules. Now. If you all have questions about this, that's another conversation. But I would say, what the board did beginning in August of twenty twenty-one is they took over my objection, the authority I needed to carry out my statutory responsibilities.
Your opinion?
I, I think it was arbitrary. I think it was animus. I think it was control. I, I think it was, I don't think it, I, I don't know. But let me say, I'm saying what the solution is. I even took out the problem heading for you, Mark, cuz I'm trying to be positive. Solution, return the necessary authority to the clerk so that the township can restore the checks and balances over public funds and begin to re- repair public trust. Restore.
So, when you say restore the authority, tell me what you mean. Tell me what you don't have that you, can you give me a little more detail behind that? What authority? That's been taken away, do you think you need back? Or?
Yes.
Specifically?
Yeah, let me go through my slide first, Mark. I think it'll answer your questions.
Okay.
All right, so, one, restoring the job description for the administrator that enjoyed unanimous support in July twenty twenty-one. That was hard-earned consensus. We all approved it. That's what we recruited David Rowley from. And then establish a finance director job description that reflects statutory responsibilities. I can't tell you how many hours I spent in circles where Will would strike down, strike down, strike down any mention of statutory responsibilities. All I ever had, and all I've ever asked to be returned to me is that I directly supervise the finance director and the staff insofar as they carry out my statutory responsibilities. That's what I had before, when the finance director carried out treasury responsibilities, well, then obviously they'd report to the treasurer or doing the budget, obviously they'd report to the board. And then what happened was, over my objections, the board voted in August twenty twenty-one. It was sudden, it was mean. February twenty twenty-two, it was sudden, it was mean. And July twenty twenty-two, and I think that was when Amy Sel was helping to develop a job description, which we all agree on except for the recording. And she really tried to reach some consensus there, and there was, there's no, no, no give, um, from Will to move the finance director from the clerk's supervision to the supervisor administrator. So, those resolutions, I'm saying, need to be repealed. One of them says the finance director reports to the supervisor. Another says the administrator. Then, over the clerk's objections, the board voted in February twenty twenty-two to give the board's administrator quote-unquote ultimate authority. That was a phrase we talked about a lot that Mike Comier danced around. Over the administration of and access to the assessment roles, tax roles, and financial journals and ledgers. Take a step back. What supervisor, treasurer, or clerk should ever let that happen?
Okay, so, what page is that on in the job description? I, I, in anticipation of this, I printed these out.
What version?
The ultimate authority. You, you said about February twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's in the February twenty twenty-two, um, administrator job description. I think it's bolded. And it says ultimate authority over BSNA, um, access. And then what happened was, on May thirteenth, three days after Jim was appointed, on a Friday night, Jim took this resolution, showed it to NetSmart, Will rammed it forward, and they said, and NetSmart said, this is weird, supervisor's calling me on a Friday night. And then the administrator, Jim, went into BSNA, gave himself enterprise administrator authority, took mine away, and started giving people access to change the journals and ledgers. And despite what Jim has, Jim has made some changes. Jim has never restored my full authority. I cannot see what Jim has done in any of the files. I do not know who all has access to the journals and ledgers. And once Jim has left the organization, part of the audit we're going to need to do is to relook at all of our files.
Okay, so, give me a lot right there. So, hold, hold on right there. Just full, give me like five minutes of the process. I'll talk to these folks, just so I can get it out of your thoughts.
Well, number one, she doesn't have anything necessary to do with the tax area or the assessing area.
Okay.
Um, in regards to the other, anyone that is capable of doing journals, entries, et cetera, if it's allowable, maybe I always have to go back to statute, maybe sometimes you do. Anyone running an organization would know the competency of the staff who would be doing that.
Good.
That's always been a question because we've had some real messes to clean up. But, that's my experience, just a sidebar.
Good.
So, you know, the black and white could say anything. You, of all people, know that you said it today, that person can't do the job, means out of here, I get somebody who can. Doesn't work quite that way with elected people. But it's just as critical. We're responsible to get the job done.
Right.
That's a big part of my objection to the way it's presented, that I have total responsibility. No, we're too big of a township. Doesn't work that way like it did in, what's my favorite expression, fourteen ninety-two. Okay? So, we keep, I keep trying to balance, but there's difficult.
Okay, hold, hold on, hold on, Jess. I wanna hear, Will, cuz I, I know, I wanna stack, try to take this whole thing as totally, I'll never, I'll never be able to get at it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, there's, so, there's a lot of narrative there. I don't wanna get into a big debate about the history and all that, but I think the key, the key, yeah, the key thing here is why was, um, that, that, um, authority added to the township administrator? And what was the intent of that? And that what, the reason for that was, we were trying to put in the hands of the administrator, the sort of neutral person in the middle, the control over access to all of the BSNA modules. And, um. Um, I'll explain, um, because, um, there was kind of a gatekeeper role that was being played with regard to all of the BSNA mod- modules, that we wanted to make sure that was in the hands of the neutral township administrator because there were some problems with people who needed to have access to do thi-. Well, that's the, whatever you, your story is, this is my story. Of the, the, there were some, there were some people who needed to have access to these things. And the gatekeeping function was keeping them from having the necessary access to do the work for the township. The, the, the determination of, um, access is not the same as control over the books and ledgers. And, um, the general ledger is the key thing, and that's the thing that we realized, that needs to remain with the clerk. The rest of it can stay with the township administrator, and that way, that person who oversees all the staff can be in the position to make sure that people who need access to particular things in BSNA have the access they need in order to do their work.
I, and I, I just wanna say.
Who needed access, Will?
Hold on, hold on, man, I'm, I'm, I've got a point here. I got an agenda.
I know, but, but one more fact. It is the IT director who has full access, who, who isn't that smart, and they do, too.
That all works.
And, and it is BSNA who provided me my access as clerk of this township. And I wanna note, David Rowley, despite this resolution being enacted when he was here, he never thought it was right and didn't do it.
Okay.
I would also say, if Mike Comier were here, Will, he might tell you all to stop talking at this point.
Okay, so, so Jill, I knew that's.
Yeah, so, the clerk by law must, um, provide a bond, a personal bond. And there's, I'm assuming there's a reason for that because, um, the safekeeping, and this is from, uh, statute forty-one sixty-nine, the safekeeping of the records, books, and papers of the township in the matter required. There's more to it than that as well, but, you know, there's, there's really no, there would be no reason to be posting a bond if finances weren't involved.
I, I personally, Donna and I are different than the rest here. Donna and I each have a personal statutory responsibility. So, this language of, I shall open and keep, I shall credit, I shall do it, that's in the old days, like, due in the book. But what it means is, I shall not be prohibited. This board shall not withhold staff, withhold the records to, to allow me to do my job. The minimal amount that I need to do my job has not been provided. I will also say, I am not subordinate to the board. Neither is Will or Donna, and that was one of the errors that the board made in relying on the administrator.
And I agree with all that. So, okay, so go ahead.
So, BSNA, just to be clear, BSNA is, that's, holds all the records of the township?
No, it's a suite of twelve modules.
Okay.
Two are assessing roles, which are Will's by statute.
Okay.
He apparently consented to give them over to the board. Two are tax roles, which by statute are Donna's.
Okay.
And eight are financial management modules, which are mine, which have been taken by this board, and why I keep reminding this board that you have the opportunity to return them.
So, so, the eight, um, just to be clear, you say taken, so that, so other, if anybody, let's say you had control, and somebody went in there and changed them, and there was mistakes and, and whatnot, you are held personally responsible.
That's right.
Your clerk wrote.
Yes, I was elected to do this, and this board is not allowing me to do it, and I put up a bond to personally carry this out.
I got, I got, Josh, you're leaving.
Okay, so, I wanna just clarify something. As I understand it, part of your objection has to do with when another person has been granted access into the BSNA software, and you can't see whether or not they have manipulated any data, whether they have added or subtracted data.
Very distressing.
I'm just, Jessica, let me finish, Jessica.
This is good and maybe necessary, and maybe the dumbest idea ever to talk about in a public meeting when there's an active lawsuit, but be that as it may. Does this go to whom the finance director necessarily has to report to?
I don't think it's even, I don't think it's a finance director issue.
No, I don't think.
I think it's, it's deeper than that. I think it sounds like.
I agree.
I'm trying to get to that. Is it really the accessing control of the books that you've not been granted? Is that?
It's both. So, it's the, the finance director, because we have not had sufficient qualified finance staff, one. We have, it, the, and.
Yeah, but, but Jessica, whether that person reports to you or reports to somebody else, it's, as long as that, you have that staff, you've got that staff available to you.
But, but if, if it were, but, 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 Mark, what I'm saying is, the board requires my consent on that. Now, and, and I would say, again, what I'm asking for is what I had before, and what I believe I'm entitled to under statute, is that insofar as they're carrying out my duties, insofar as some. is that insofar as they're carrying out my duties, insofar as somebody is actually going in and entering items related to mine, that I have oversight of that. I can direct that work. How could that not be the case when I have personal responsibility for it? Same, same with Donna.
So, so, so let's, let's, let me give you an example. Let's say we're deciding to hire, we can't afford to hire one right now. We're, we're, we're in a budget crunch. Can't afford to fire. What, what, what would you need right now for you to say, okay, I can now do my statutory? So take the people out of it right now, what changes would need, would have to happen?
I need qualified, trained staff to carry out the accounting.
But let's say right now, we, we can't afford to hire, we're, we're in a budget crunch. What do you need from a, is there an access challenge here? What, what, what are the, other than a body?
The, the illegal taking that this board did through Jim Murdy needs to be undone.
So when you say taking, you.
Tell me what that means. I don't know what that means.
What that, what that means is, is that when I go in to the journals and ledgers, and I honestly think that some of it is Jim's misunderstanding of the permissions of BSNA. Because, because, you know, when I read his sworn affidavit and you read my reply affidavit, contrary to Jim Murdy's affidavit, comma, blah, 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 contrary to Jim Murdy's affidavit, blah, 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 you'll see, I mean, I will say, and, and this is a benefit of the doubt, Jim, you know, some of it's that I think Jim Murdy doesn't fully understand how BSNA permissions work.
Okay, so I want to get to the meat of the matter. We got, forget about the people.
Yep, yep, the meat of the matter is I need to be, I should have sole authority to determine who can enter and change data into the financial journals and ledgers.
Okay, now we're getting to it. That's what, that's what I'm looking for. That's what I'm looking for.
You are too.
Right.
Is. And I want it too.
And, and Mark, Mark, the board currently in court, the board has said that, the board has said something different in court. The board has said, the board made up this term called concurrent access. I don't know if that was Jim's or Mike's or Will's, but.
Okay, so do you add sole, I'm just asking the question. If you add sole, I'm not saying I'm agreeing to it, I'm just trying to understand it. Authority, control, access to the BAS, the BSNA.
Not sole access. Anybody can view, and I'm saying sole authority over who can.
Update.
Modify the journals and ledgers.
Well, I'd be updating.
Sure.
Okay, so anybody can update. Can't go.
Oh, one more.
Okay, so that, that's, that's your name. So if you could control.
Who is that?
Update. Right, all, anybody can view.
Obviously.
Anyone can.
Yeah.
View. This, this solves your, your, the big challenge, right?
Yes.
This is the big elephant in the room. Am I right on that one?
That's one, that is one of four, yeah.
That's the big one.
No, I would not say it, it is a bigger or smaller elephant. It is not bigger.
But Mark, just to be clear, the eight modules.
Mark, there, there's no, there's no negotiating here. I mean, the, the eight modules are covered there.
I think, I'm, I'm understanding.
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no, 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 I know. But what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna, look, I, I can't say which one's bigger or smaller. Like, if I have no staff or no access or no authority, like, gosh, how can I choose?
I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get everybody to get down to the, to get to the next one. I'm just trying to get to it.
So that's what it is, is, and, and so that is one area that, that, and I do believe, and I think that the disagreement that the board has expressed in court is that the board believes the board should have authority over who can enter during, into the journals and ledgers.
Okay, so let's, 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 because that's what technically is one of the four, right? So this is number one, right?
No, no, why, I think. So that's the question.
So that's number one, so.
And, and why don't you, you talked about the Jim.
Yeah, so now, so now I want to ask these people, because let's just cover this one time. We're just gonna go over the board.
And again, this is, this is the board, the, this is all the board. This isn't about the treasurer supervisor.
I understand. Well, thoughts on, on this? I mean, this doesn't sound unreasonable to me, but unless I'm missing something, but I, I don't, I, I, I don't have, I don't know enough to have an opinion. Right, because I know everybody's.
So these are, these are public records, as you, as you said.
Right.
And the question is really over control, administrative control over not just access, but over ability to work with these records. Now, for most, for most people in the public, it's just a, a matter of access, being able to look at them. And that's not really what's at issue. The clerk has that kind of access. She has access to look at them. Now, if there's some level beyond being able to look at them that the clerk needs for all of these in order to perform her duty as, in, in, in sort of carrying out her work, I, I don't know that she has not been granted that. It's just, the question is really control over other people's ability to work with them. And because, like the township of finance director, that role is supposed to serve multiple parts of the township and be working with them.
She's saying this, updated records.
Records also are, are to be available for people to work with beyond the clerk.
Does work with mean access, update, input, change, like there's a record, you create a record, you change your record, you delete a record.
Right.
I mean, I mean, and you look at a record. Am I, am I right on that? You can look at, you can add.
We, we call it CRUD, C-R-U-D, right? Create, read, update, delete. It's a CRUD operation.
So, so.
Those are the four things you can do.
Okay.
Does, does the clerk have all four of those functions?
No, no, and I used to.
Okay, a, a, of, of the CRUD, which does she have?
On some of the eight modules, I can see. On all of the eight modules, I can R, some of the information I need to see. On some of the eight modules, I can U. And on some of the, and on one of the eight modules, I can D. So meanwhile, there's been other people unknown to me.
So was that, was that a?
See, you, and being.
Was that, was that, was that a knowing decision to give you, to assign you certain functionality with respect to the different modules? Or does somebody just not know what the hell they're doing, and you got what you got?
I believe, so according to the public court reports that the board has filed, the board has.
No, well, not my board. I was, I'm new to this lawsuit.
Well, the board, you'll have to read the board's most recent filing, because they explain what they say their rationale was. I'm not gonna sit here and speculate.
Okay, okay, so what I'm asking, uh.
Is a horrible decision for many reasons.
Without regard to, to the prior decisions, um.
And, and John, I've also offered several ways to solve this, and one was that David Rowley and I were going to do is, again, lack of sophistication in the organization. So how it was with BSNA was Jim used to be the IT guy as well as assessor. So Jim was used to having adminis, enterprise administrator control. Lots of people could. Not many people comfortable with technology here. Most places have policies, have granulated permissions, but we've never done that. And so David Rowley and I said, great, we're gonna write a policy, we're gonna do that stuff, and we were gonna do that. Meanwhile, this happens.
That's called, a thing called an ACL. It's called ACL, that stands for access controllers.
Yeah, and I'm happy.
So it's sort of an ACL, based on where you are in the org, of what, and the ACL drives this.
Right.
Okay, it's all standard.
Right, and the ACL, I would be happy to work.
Is this something we can turn over to you, Mark, since we're assigning stuff for people that don't have anything better to do to do?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is child's play, uh.
Well, the, the, the mechanics of it, but, but deciding who should have the role.
Yeah, you guys, somebody's gonna decide. I mean, it's pretty easy. The admin, any admin gets, I mean, anybody can set it up. It's not.
So there's something, this, if, okay, if the clerk has control of the eight, or supposed to, have the eight modules because under statute and the bonding, and but somebody else is going in there changing things, she's still responsible. So, so the eight, so at least having the clerk be in control of all eight modules and then allowing whom she feels or the clerk feels.
Here's, here's my suggestion, just from right here. In my opinion, and again, I could be wrong on this, Will, I'm gonna look for, and Donna, you guys can be input on this, right? I don't know why the clerk wouldn't have CRUD operations across everything. She's, now.
That's what I did.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. Everyone else, right, she shouldn't, first of all, be full, full access, right? Now, what everybody else should have, that's up for debate, right? Some people still may have, kind of to Will's point, some people need to work with it, so some other people may have create and update actions as well. But minimally, she should always have everything. What everybody else has, absolutely.
She should also, because if, if, if the clerk is bonded to take care of the eight modules, I'm leaving the treasurer and assessor out, those two, four modules. But just to give somebody access without her permission, or the clerk's permission, I'm, any clerk.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna have a whole list of who, who, who beyond that has it, because she now has control. We all have to agree. Yeah, like, well, somebody's gonna need access to X, Y, or Z, and Donna's gonna need X, Y, or Z. Whatever those things are, we have to kind of mutually agree on it, but at least she should have, or just in terms of, just Jessica only for right now. Let's just talk about that. She should, I would believe she should have those operations.
And with Jessica, and the ability to determine who else can modify those records.
That would make sense to me.
Uh-huh, this is it. This is what, this is the key point.
Well, no, well, no, but I would say, I would say insofar as somebody, there is only one, one or two of those eight modules that overlap with Donna's.
Would the administrator determine that?
With the, no, this is my vote. I mean.
Shit, there.
Well, there's the narrative, and I just want to point out that.
Well, well, the clerk would do that too, she would do that too, so.
We've now, we've now ventured into an area where it would be helpful to have Mike Homier here.
At least, at least.
Well, no, I mean, there's.
Jim, this is, this is, this, folks, this, these are necessary, but awkward discussions. Let's not make them anymore, so.
Yeah.
Everyone, for the good of the order, we're making some progress. We're, we're, we're hearing people out, so let's try to keep it moving forward. Uh, if, you know.
I, I get it.
I would, I'd like to understand.
I understand this issue. I'm sorry, I, I just want to say, I understand this issue. I understand the permissions, the ACL. I've been working on these things for a long time. This stuff is new here. And, and so I know all the issues. And I'm just sitting back here listening, trying to let everybody air their grievances.
Well, I, I, I'm not airing grievances. I'm trying to get to the bottom so I can understand where everybody's coming from. Okay, just to be clear, so eight modules, and you said there's a couple that, that others would have to do with, with those.
Yeah, so there's eight, there's eight financial modules, and there's a bunch of journals and ledgers within those. And it's only the treasurer's office who shares in some of those. The custody is one hundred percent the clerk's, but it is, a couple are shared with the treasurer, and that's working fine. That's always worked fine. It is.
Do you agree with that, Donna?
Oh, I know it works fine. I can't do cash receipting.
Okay, so Donna, you're okay with this? So Donna's okay with this? That's what I'm hearing.
Well, this is.
But I have to work with.
So who else, who else has access to?
Well, that, 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 that there is modules that the treasurer will be able to do these operations, delete, update, always, they'll have certain, they'll, they'll have certain CRUD operations as well.
Oh, oh, just, oh. Oh, certainly, yeah, and then there's, you know, you, you know, people doing utility billing or bringing in the, you know, receipts for the fire prevention invoices. I mean, yeah, Mark, I mean, this was, is all basically set up. It was a, I will say, this whole thing, this, and, and it was never stated in any of the court papers or the public record. I'm hearing it now for the first time that Will is saying there was a gatekeeper problem. The IT, IT, BSNA, they have all of our credentials. I mean, anybody who came in, we had a lot of new staff. I was helping people out because I was.
You know, I, I, I gotta, I gotta, we're, I gotta.
It's just a non-issue.
So I'm just trying to figure out why, why does anybody have angst giving the clerk full CRUD? Is there any angst sent to her, her, her doing that?
Well, for one thing, I want to make sure I understand what CRUD means, you know, represents. But my understanding is that the clerk has full access to all of these modules. That's not really the question. It's the question of whether the clerk controls who else has access. That's really the question.
And why is that an issue? Let's, let's even say that's, that's true for, for, why is that an issue?
Access to manipulate, access to change the.
Why, what, what's, why, why is it an issue?
No one in this township in at least thirty-plus years has ever manipulated or stolen, modified.
Not a, not a.
No, modified unless directed maybe by.
That is not true.
They plan Moran when they said you need to do these turtle entries.
That is not true.
Yes, it is.
Wait, 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 okay.
Sandy Edgar made two hundred journal entries.
Please, please.
She reversed two of, two hundred.
Kathleen, Kathleen, this is not helping.
She posted, posted. One, you entered the record. Two, you posted, meaning it's saved, it's a valid record. And those have never been corrected.
All, but it's all been under Jim and Will's direction over my legal, ethical, moral objection. Because this is what destroys controls over public monies. And, you know, I may be fair game, you know, politics, this and that, but stop, you know, this board, the prior board, has disassembled the basic checks and balances, and it, and it's gotta stop.
Okay, so here's, here's, so I think this is system meets, and maybe I'll, I don't know, this sounds like the big one.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, and it's really, uh, it's really back with the treasurer. Is it fair to say Donna is on your side? I mean, are, do you feel today you have the access you need to the, to these systems, everything that you need?
Everything that I need, yes. I've never run into any problems.
Okay, so by the way, there should be, anytime, any of these operations are, all go to a log file, by the way. So there, you can't, I, I do not buy it for a second that we don't know if somebody's created to, to update. It's all, all should be in log files.
No, it is all in the log files. I don't have access to them, but, but I'll look at them.
So, 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 can we, can we fix, fair to say, as long as, let's, let's, I'm assuming Donna says she's okay with whatever she's got right now. I just asked her. She told me she's all right. As long as you have CRUD operations, we're good?
But I want, I don't want the board staff person to have permissions that can override.
A board staff person. It wouldn't be a board staff person. She'd get.
Murdy, Jim Murdy, Jim Murdy.
The township administrator.
Jim Murdy, because our.
She doesn't trust me to, to not do what she's.
No. But, but because, because you, you.
That's what I, but this is all about, someone.
Well, okay, so, what I.
Trust somebody.
But what, what I want to say is, it was unnecessary operationally. I had, I, I want to say that this was done in, the, the policy was made by this board in February twenty twenty-two to, and it's the quote, ultimate authority. And I objected, and I made my case, and I said, gosh, it would be terrible because it could be construed this way, taking records.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, all right, all right, let's go.
And then, but, but then it was done.
Okay, all right, all right. So we're gonna, in my mind, whoever the IT person that we hire is typically is an admin of a system. That's very standard procedure.
And they are now, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it would be.
Um, I hate to be the dumbest guy in the room, which happens more than I want to, but somewhere very smart in the audience looked something up. So these eight modules, what are they, just?
So we've got, you know.
As a general ledger budgeting, or, or, or what are they called?
So they're, they're, and just so you know, what they're called is not all of what they contain.
No, I get it.
Okay, general ledger, AP.
Hang on a minute, is that accounts payable?
Yeah, and Donna, tell me if I missed any. General, GL, AP, PR, which is payroll, UB, which is utility billing.
Is that like, is that like water?
Water and service.
Yes, water.
FB, FA, fixed asset.
What is that, like, how, what, what, what capital, what we own?
Yes, it will be as soon as we, we fill it up.
Okay.
Um, and then we've got, um.
The GL, the, the.
Miscellaneous receivables, MR.
Thank you.
What is it?
Miscellaneous receivables.
Yeah, and then cash receivables. And then PO is kind of a floater, but purchase order, yeah.
Purchase order, okay. And those are, those are the eight things you're talking about having that.
Donna, which ones do you need to exist in?
Well, it's part of each.
Wait, isn't there four more though?
But those are tax and assessing.
So, so, so purchase orders.
Mark, it's a little more complex than that.
I understand. I know it's a lot more complex than that. I'm just trying to get a, just a general feel here, just a general.
Thank you for the sidebar.
I have some access to utility billing.
Yeah, she should have some access to most everything.
Anything that's connected with cash, come in.
Yeah.
So which ones?
But I have limited.
Yeah.
You know, I can't go in and do certain things.
Got it, okay, I, I got it. Just a sort of, uh.
AP would be one.
Good.
Miscellaneous receivables, that's another one.
Is that it?
Yes, and then of course, then the ones that are not on that list.
Okay, so again, back to Jessica, full CRUD, all eight modules. Uh, Donna has some cruddy, level of cruddy on these four modules. Overall, it's pretty good, right? We've gotten, and other people may have to put their fingers in this a little bit, maybe have POs or something like that.
Sure, I mean, if, if somebody would be, you know, David Rowley and I were gonna come up with a policy so it wasn't, you know, it was more granulated. But I will say what I, I, I want and insist is that this board has never involved itself.
I have a brilliant idea for you.
What?
I have a brilliant idea. Here's what you. Here's, I want you, got a picture of this?
Oh, here we go.
I got it, I got it.
Not yet, hang on.
I got it, I got it, here's what we do. You're gonna love this, you're gonna love this.
Kathy, could you send that to us?
This is a, this is a picture of newspaper, okay.
Everyone wants to say bye-bye.
Alright, I got it, I got it, alright, Jess, here you go. I think it's gonna make, eh, I think this is gonna be, this, this, yeah, that's interesting, right? So, you're gonna list, uh, all you can do is columns and rows, how you do it. It's gonna be every department that you have, so treasurer, oh, start with clerk, they start with treasurer, uh, supervisor, admin, uh, administrator.
I'm only gonna take on the financial modules.
Alright, whatever, whatever it is, then here you go, you gotta go, what's this?
Yep.
Right?
I hate math.
So, clerk, you're gonna get an X, 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 treasurer, and then you can do the same thing by, by every module, right?
Okay.
And then you're gonna come, you, you present, you, you create the plan. I mean, you, you, you start with a, this is, you can do this in spreadsheets, right?
But, and that's fine, and I still object to the board continuing to have override authority over all of that, which is what the board has now.
Nobody, no, 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 I said it.
No, you didn't, I'm just saying that that's, that's part of what we gotta address too, but I will come up with that.
I, I, well, right now, but here's the challenge, you get a lawsuit, so someone, we're gonna be involved, this is what we have, we have a choice, we suck this into the lawsuit. But, that, that is, that is, I'm just putting the dead pig on the table, as they say, so.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm feeling very confident about my lawsuit, and I want this to get resolved, I never wanted to have to be the clerk suing the board, but these crazy actions.
I mean, look how we got here, I mean, I'm just.
I know.
Obviously, it wasn't, if it was a good idea, it would have better results, but anyways, that's, that's, here in order, let's move forward, so I'm trying to empower you. So you give us what you propose, okay? I, I, again, I, I'm totally for you, that makes sense.
And I, and what I propose is that the board stay out of the supervisor, treasurer, and clerk's records, bottom line.
Give us a spreadsheet that shows all the crud, right, just give me a spreadsheet, you're gonna do this for every, uh, every module, right?
I'm happy to do that, I will say, it is, and not for you, not anybody individually, but to have to re-explain basic statute again and again to this board is, is nauseating.
Okay, 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 you, you've done it, you, I, I hear you, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to bring us to resolution.
No, you are, you are, I'll, I'll do that.
I don't, I.
I really.
I can read a statute, but it's more than an explanation of a statute, it's different people's takes on a statute, sometimes, sometimes.
Please. Sometimes.
Okay.
I won't ask you if it's this time.
Okay, can we, can we, can we, we can do that, right? You'll, you'll do that, and then, cause we all agree, then this, this is.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Mark, what's the other aspect of the statute, what, what's the other supervisor, administrator?
I don't think we all agree, Mark. Admin, admin.
I just got clerk, treasurer, supervisor, admin, one of the departments are, I don't know what other departments are.
Departments, yeah, and I, and I would encourage the board, if the board, if the board does all agree on some part of this,
The times eight.
to please just, you know, tell, tell my homier to contact me and my attorney and tell, say, hey, we're, we're making some problems, we're agreeing on this. If there's something the board all agrees on. Doesn't sound like there is.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I don't know, there might be, there, there might be consensus, majority, unanimity, I don't know, that the clerk henceforth shall have crea, you know, creation, read, use, and delete of the, the eight modules. Is, is that, is that agreed to?
Yeah, I would agree to that, I agree with that.
Or no? I'm not saying exclusively, I'm not saying others.
I was saying exclusively.
I, well, no, 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 I'm not saying, I'm saying the clerk, without regard to what the treasurer has, the supervisor has, the administrator has, and departments have, that the clerk, the role of the clerk in Syo Township, whether it's Jessica Flintoff or whomever in, in the future, the, the clerk shall have creation, read, utility.
Updated.
Update, thank you, eh, eh, uh, not, not exclusively.
Yeah, I agree.
You're saying not.
I think, so I think.
I'm saying not exclusively, because if, if she can, if, if the clerk can create a record exclusively, then the treasurer can't. If, if, if the clerk can read exclusively, then the supervisor can't. I, I'm saying, I, I.
The way it's supposed to.
No, 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 but someone else can't read it?
Oh, no, well, everybody can read it.
Any read access is different, we're talking about.
Yeah, so, I'm talking with respect to the clerk.
Treasure, on, on module one, they have a click, uh, I mean, everybody's probably gonna have read, you can't imagine, everybody, everybody does have read.
Yes, yes, everybody reads, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm only talking about the clerk's access to records, that I, I don't object if henceforth the position of the clerk, not without regard to Jessica or his named personnel, that the position of the clerk shall have, be able to create, read, update, and delete the eight modules as discussed herein.
Yep, uh, in fact, I'll write that down, I, I mean, unless somebody has objections to that, I don't.
Well, there might be objections, Murdy's looking at me like, what in the hell are you doing?
Yeah, this is, this is layover simplifying, thanks.
What?
I mean, first off, the, the, all those eight modules, that's part of the lawsuit. The, the judge did not say that because.
I'm not, I'm, I'm talking a policy discussion of how we.
No, but it's very important to.
I'm sorry?
I don't think it should be in writing at this point.
If the.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's in writing.
This is what the judge didn't say, that all the finance areas of the township were under the control of the clerk.
It's a, but I, but.
Specifically, a specific, allowing the public sitting here.
Well, aren't these.
You can't say that. You can't decide what is yours and.
Aren't these policies, aren't these, aren't these policy decisions that we can confer on whomever that we, we want to?
They, they.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
And I want to.
No, I'm talking about just today.
Yes. But the treasurer and the supervisor, she doesn't, the clerk does not have oversight, you know, assessing and tax, uh, um, right?
We've got two attorneys sitting here. We are in a lawsuit, which has been very, quite a bit mentioned in the last hour. I do not think we should make any action, whatever, until that lawsuit is settled.
We're not, we're, we're having discussions today.
This is a policy discussion, this is a po, I'm talking from a policy.
A policy discussion. Donna, this is entirely appropriate, a policy discussion, we're the policy setting body.
I'm not. I'm not, I'm not talking about.
We're not setting policy discussions.
I'm not take, I'm not saying.
Let, let me just give you an example, John, let me just give you an example, John.
To do this to get rid of a lawsuit?
So you're saying that, that the treasurer should have, or the clerk should have the authority to, to be able to go into the utility billing program and then delete an account, for instance? That's the, that's the access that you're.
If, if, if it's appropriate, not if it's inappropriate, if it's appropriate.
If it's talking about, don't you think that the utility director should have that ultimate authority?
Has she, has the clerk not worked with the utility director?
I don't understand what you mean.
Has the clerk not worked with the utility director, have you had conversations about?
Well, no, that's, that's irrelevant.
No.
Well, then why would the clerk go into the utility director?
No, I, I. I already told.
For the same, for the same reason that the administrator would go in there and grant access to something that the clerk didn't want.
I guess.
Great, Jim, Jim. Jim, Jim, I'm talking about.
It's exactly the same thing.
Jim, I have a question, when you say account, in that, let's use your example, when you say account, are you talking about, uh, like a home account? Or are you talking about a financial account?
I'm just talking about having administrative access to the utility, uh, the utility module.
Okay, so, so Jim, and this is where.
There's, there's a, there's a great deal of, there's a great deal of granulation that's allowed within each one of those applications.
What does that mean, granulation?
Oh, it means that you can, for some areas, you can grant permissions, in other areas, you can't.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I've been saying.
That's, and that's.
So you're saying not to leave?
That's beyond the scope of clerk, supervisor, the treasurer, it's beyond the scope of everybody
So, what the clerk's, the clerk's statutory need. But.
that, uh, that really doesn't have a full understanding of the applications.
Absolutely, but Jim, that's where I'm worried.
And that's why you don't just grant carte blanche crud, as you put down, for any of these applications, the old, and in fact, even the, at least the policy that is now, you can't give, give carte blanche crud ability to the, even the general ledger, because there's a portion of that that the board has given access to the supervisor, meaning the budgets.
Okay, okay, hold on, Jim, but, but you're, you're conflating things, if, no, hold on, wait, no, no, hold on, I got a solution.
So it's, so it's.
But Jim, Jim.
If, Jim, what you're talking about is the non-granulated permissions that you have used year over year, there is the ability to do more granulated permissions, so that I would not be able to go in and delete somebody's address in utility billing, or some nonsense like that, or change how much water they used, but for the journals and the ledgers that are in there, I should be able to pull that, I should be able to pull that. I should be able to know who's actually changing the financial accounts, and that can be granulated. So again, there are these eight modules, and then there's several journals and ledgers within that, there are pieces of those modules. We can do this, it's just, you know, we need to do what Mark suggested.
Let's, let's have, let's have Jessica take a shot at it, you say.
I think, and here's why, and I, and I have no problem granulating such that you, all these sub-journals
Yeah.
that exist within the.
Is it backed up, is the data backed up, let's say she goes rogue or starts.
Of course. Oh, come on, John, don't even use it, as a example.
I said, I, I was gonna say deletes my water bill, thank you very much.
Yeah, my.
I, I, I know my point is, if it's backed up, it, it, cause what I was gonna say in support of you, Jess,
Point's my line.
is that the township clerk shall prepare and maintain the journals and ledgers necessary to reflect the assets, liabilities, fund equities, revenues, and expenditures for each fund of the township, those sound a little akin to BSNA modules.
A lot.
And, and, and if you, a little akin, a little akin.
For, for, for proportion of that.
Mark, I have a question three, so it seemed like what you were heading towards was having the clerk take a crack at, uh, creating kind of a, an ACL, the, the term is, and then, um, presumably, just like with the newsletter,
Yep, that's right.
um, sort of circulate it for people to respond to.
Yeah, there's an issue with it, like you said, Jim, Murdy went with a breakdown, one that doesn't make sense, which sounds like she's totally in agreement with like, I don't need to update a water bill or whatever, which is an example you made, so there's breakdowns of those inside those modules, we'll figure those out. So it might, it probably will go deeper to your point and to Jessica's, but it'll probably go deeper, eight, it'll probably be eight, probably, you know, one, eight point two, eight point three, right? There's multiple modules within there, right?
Yeah.
But she's, well, let's not, Jessica, take first shot at the annual list, the access control list, you're, that's what, basically, you're creating, and you can do that in multi, I, I would say, Jessica, I would just set up separate, separate spreadsheets on every one, probably be the easiest way to do it, the knee is temp.
Yeah.
The next one, right, for every module.
And, and I think to supplement, what would be good, just to kind of undo the mystery around it. Jim, give everyone on the board, the, or at least me, the, and maybe Mark, the full access of everything that I have and don't have in BSNA. Because now, now, you can talk to your attorney first if you want to, cause I know that what you said in the affidavit was different than what you released in the FOIA to Kathleen Brand, but I think that's an important.
I was on the kind of order, Mark, Brazil, and I haven't said anything in our affidavit.
I, I didn't, I wasn't, I was talking to Jim.
Okay.
Um, but what I wanna say is, there's been questions about what access I have and don't have, so let's just get it out there in a starting point.
You know, you know what you can also do, when you're doing this list, if there's one that you feel that, you know, you should have access, but you don't, put it in a different color or something, so we can, we can highlight.
Yeah, and right now, I don't, and right now, I don't even have enough access to be able to go in and, and give all the categories of access that I need to propose.
Get as far as you can, get as far as you can, and if there's something missing, we'll figure it out, so at least start here, we got at least a starting point, so I, I'm, I'm powering you.
That's fine. That, that's, that's fine, but Jim Murdy, I need enough access to be able to see all of the checkboxes.
So she's saying, what's the word we pass it on, right?
You know what I mean, Jim?
No, I'll, I'll make sure you do it.
Yeah, cause I used to have that, now I don't.
Okay, so Jim's gonna give you, Jim's, Jim said you do it. Okay, we're, we're gonna move on, I, I think we've beat this one up enough for today, it's not done, but we've beat it up enough for today.
Okay.
Okay.
So, could we take a break, how much more to do?
Yes, let's take a five minute break.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Okay.
Mark, you want to run it real quick or no?
And then, Mark. Mark, I can check.
No, I, I already, I already texted, she's, she's.
Don't erase.
Sorry, uh, here, I, I just had owner just, it was good too.
Is there any way we could get like a pad of paper?
Okay, alright, so what we're gonna do, let's take a five minute break, I am gonna jump real quick to the IT person, or the HR person, we'll ju, jump back to this.
I think they, I think those are.
Gonna be pretty quick, good, so let's just do it quick then, everybody take five minutes real quick.
Good, now I get to talk. I, I did the FOIA on, on authorizations for all Syo Township. I asked for that, I got it. Uh, there's one employee here, that could run correctly the whole membership, and that is wrong segregation duties is totally not.
Oh, yeah, well, I just.
They can take receipts, they can pay bills, they can do payroll.
Careful, Mark, you can try to brainwash him. Can't brainwash him, your version. This is, is this trash?
She said, maybe that.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll get there, man.
You gotta reimburse that gay little kid, I don't want him banned from our stuff. Is there a gumdrop back?
Uh, what's that?
There's a big, big wasteful.
Thank you.
It doesn't help, like I said, how's it going the last two years, but here we are, so tell me this is all worked out. Your day, brother, you know, you're a consultant, we don't have to throw out the job. Hey, hey, and say, see ya, bud, 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 you're like, I don't care, just go.
What was the point of saying statute, the prime is direct, of course, it doesn't say that because, isn't it to me?
Yep.
If I talked about the concept, what I can show you, it's somebody's gonna do some drinks, where in their webpage, when they say, who the reporting is, they may go to, unless it's statutory, uh, for going after.
So that's why they do it. Well, you might look at the job descriptions, you know, that's why I keep saying, look at the job descriptions that.
Yeah, cause they show us very good, I mean, you know, I, I hired him, I did myself, I report now to my own, I hired my own boss, it was a day, when I hired a senior, I'm now this, I report to him, so I have a problem.
Just go take her all day.
Yeah, just get some money.
But the point is, if I was, I, I, he said three o'clock, I said, fine, fine, email him.
Like this guy. I saw that, I, I told, I, I, my husband, he was great.
I was like, you know, um, and. I was, I was like, right, I was like, that news.
We used to have it from nine until one a.m.
So the ladies, we got a lot of stock.
Because there are.
A lot.
Because there are statutes.
I, I said, you know, those.
It's a previous, previous board, actually said, where we go from, where we go to.
Well, we started later in the day, because Mark was.
Where we were trying to play new ones.
I think, I think ordinary, like, started.
You can't raise this.
Now, I heard Mark's whole bit, I don't know, I, I, I was about to have.
Uh, just to get that out of the way.
And I knew there was, I didn't.
I don't know, I don't, but I.
Was, I'm interested in the time.
I don't think the Mark's will be the knowledge, uh, for this agreement as this board, and I think that makes for a matter.
But we didn't do anything right, so maybe we should.
The Markles, I have no idea.
I will, I'll, I have, uh.
But I gave you that.
Oh, good, good, you're one of these.
I, I gave you that, yeah.
He's a part timer, I mean, he's not gonna be here.
Well, and he's, and, and.
Yeah, this is mentality, this is.
I think he just wants to get out of house, you know.
That's what I was trying to come up with the right term, yeah, he does.
Whatever.
Ready?
Oh, the sun's coming out after the rainbow, right?
I know.
Yeah, you're right, if you wait long enough, and miss it, and the weather will change.
Serious, was there a rainbow?
Well, that was a storm.
In my mind.
Have you ever seen one in the morning?
Yeah, I know that.
Oh, yeah, 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 but I'll bring it to the right one. Sometime, I've seen a double rainbow behind my house.
Okay, so let's just go with another case, then we're gonna go back and, and kill this.
I first.
And I know, Jessica, you had one of four items, I did not forget that either, I just wanna get through those other two things, make sure we get, so can somebody jump back, but, yeah, please.
Nice.
Or more, okay, full time I T person is, so I heard everybody say we're all behind this, I just hope that's true. I I cannot find this right, right person. Again, uh I think that we can take all the existing in-house. Uh I every, those guys are, your office company is doing it and then some. We find the right person, they can help us create all the SharePoint sites, no problem, they can maintain email, create emails near real time, you have a problem with P C, they can fix it real time. I expect him to be here i- in the office. Uh no reason they can't take all our in-house systems and show up to the cloud on in A W S or or on Azure, you know, you know, I have. Fair for you to want.
Mark, I want a person that went all of a sudden and go to do what I'm supposed to do and there's something.
Yep.
Burps. I used to be able to say, Jim.
Yep, raise your hand, right, hundred percent.
It was in-house.
Yep, exactly.
It's not twenty-four hours later, sometimes like that.
Amen, Donna, Donna, we're having somebody gonna give him a cubicle over here. You're ring the phone, you know, I T Bob or whoever it is, I T Bob over, help me fix my P C, it's stuck or whatever, you have hundred percent.
They're not working from home generally?
Right.
They may work from home, one, I typically give make them come in four days a week, you know, Friday night they can work at home. But no, they should be here in the office.
So that should be made clear, cuz that's a tricky thing these days.
Uh they're 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 easier to find, they say, shouldn't be too difficult.
Especially office space.
Well, we can figure that out.
It's uh, well, that's easier said than done, but it's uh.
These are all solvable problems.
Yep, okay, yeah, I mean, the the good, the good thing about those guys, you know what they say?
There's empty.
Whether it's onsite or not is important.
You know, the difference between a I T admin who's an extrovert versus an introvert? The extrovert looks at your shoes, so.
Yeah. Alright.
True story. It took me very introverted people, very, very introverted people.
On that, on that note, it seems like we have broad agreement on the sort of the.
Yeah, as long as the service.
Yeah, this is what I'm gonna have to pay, I I checked around, and what I can do is have my I T folks vet them.
Yeah, and as long as the service would be better, I know at the time when Jim was leaving, he recommended we do this. We did a little bid process and looked at different ones, so as long as you think the service will be better, I'm good.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Oh, and they they should be really, honestly, you know, the more important they have, they should be all your backend call, hey, I need X Y Z, X Y Z, X Y Z. All all she's gonna do is maybe manage this time, but.
Yeah, but but also like somebody who can write policies to like, you know, set our, you know, like, cuz we don't even have policies about like, you know, issuing a computer, using.
Oh, yeah, 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 and they should set up, uh like our guy does everything, you know, for, we, he set up like uh um uh uh L L M S, we have a learning management system.
You know, that stuff. Yeah.
Hey, here's a phishing scam, like you gotta get, you know, phished a lot of times. Here's the things to look out for phishing, you actually use a little test, we actually have a little test that you pay.
Yeah, that's what they do too, yeah.
Fail it, uh I gotta stay, all our, of course, all our salespeople, it's a P O attached. You know, click on it, everyone, the salespeople, so they'll do that, uh.
Manage our, all of our hardware.
Yeah, key factor authentication, none of us have, I mean, imagine somebody broke in and took all your records. Talking about embarrassing the menu, want holy hell from the president.
And and I'd like them to sort of move us to a dot gov website too, cuz we're not a dot org.
Uh yeah, as long as that's available, yeah, I don't know what the rules are, if you get the dot gov.
Yeah, yeah.
Shall we move on to the next slide?
Yeah, we're all agree?
Do do do, do the people who are here more than me, the four of you, agree that we need a full time I T person or a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think we've we've had the experiment with outsourcing and.
Oh. We were spoiled.
Okay.
So I, yeah, and there's some things I really like about outsourcing, except the recent changes, the service is bad. Um I will say, I wanna make sure this person, I think they will, but have experience with software, be a really good trainer. Because that's what we don't have, we have such low tech skills around here for, you know, using SharePoint, Excel.
Gee.
Yeah.
It'll probably be okay, I don't feel like great, it'd be that'd be a lot.
I don't know about for that salary pushing, but uh. That you're getting five, it's about all that.
There's, yeah, the training part might be a little tricky, that's a separate thing, but there's L M S courses, all kinds of other, there's maybe other ways we could.
Well, even if somebody could just even, you know, roll that out, you know, for us to to build up our proficiency.
Little bit, little bit, I know, I know, I'm over promise, that's all, I'm over.
I think most of those programs offer a.
Tutorial?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I think you really have.
Uh next slide.
We are on the next slide.
Oh, uh, oh, H R, yeah, so here's, let me just share with you how our H R person works and what they do, right? So it's more than just doing hiring and firing, she probably don't have a whole lot of turnover here anyway, I'm guessing, right? But what they do is really manage all the internal communication of our company, so everybody knows like my development staff knows what my professional services staff is doing, knows what um our uh A I uh physicists, cuz nobody understands how they they do, really taught, understands what executive branch do, they're all, we're all in constant communication. And also making sure there's any kind of challenges, um uh they're always brought to attention, so if you have a personal challenge with somebody, they're they're making sure of that. They also make sure they just keep their morale up, they do this just dumb little thing, we had this thing called the virtual, uh we're on, it was called Virtual Friday, cuz we don't know Friday. And said, alright, everybody, we got a contest, you know, so something that's, it was uh awareness month, show everything that's something that's pink, right? So everybody had to run against something that was pink, right, or it's just, it's just something that's a kind of a bunch of team building. And it's really effective, it's just really raising the morale of the company. In fact, they said on surveys, we get a survey every month about, how do you feel about the company, how do you feel about your boss, right, and they're all anonymous, right? It's it's a lot more than just the hiring and firing, now again, I don't think we have to have somebody full time for this role, maybe somebody part time for this role, probably be fine. I talked to my um uh uh our my agent person, who's, this woman is awesome, uh out of Toledo, uh. And she said, look, she does a lot of people retired, and we'll do this on a part time basis, and she seemed to feel that we could get, you know, four hundred dollars a week with no benefits. And has some two day H R experience, uh two day H R experience, but bachelor's degree, she said, I, she didn't see that would be a challenge. And I think we need that, we need to get the team, I'm guessing just the morale, we have, guessing the morale is bound to tie together, the departments all wired together, there's a fire department, everything that the steward department is doing and anything else, right? In fact, we sent out, she sends out a weekly internal newsletter, it's like, what you guys, electronic, it was like a little two page, here's what's happening.
I, this is like number two, right after finance director for me, we've, we approved this position over a year ago, we haven't recruited for it, I think it's so important.
That's not true. We had a candidate, we were ready to offer the, we actually had offered the position, and that person backed down.
Diane Benson.
No, Diane Benson oversaw a recruitment, that was one of the last things she did, we had a candidate, we had someone from was uh from Brighton, um I can't remember her name, but.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh, okay, that's right, I forgot about that, that was my. But 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 what I wanna say is, you know, I think, I think, you know, we need, um, you know, you know, basic, you know, one-on-one, you know, personnel files up to date, getting into compliance with the law.
Oh, yeah, we manage all those, you know, right, all the hiring and firing.
Right, what I'd love, what I'd love, what I'd love to see before ideally, like by April one as a goal, is a, is classification of our positions. Because we, you know, just kind of scaling, so that as we go into budget season, we can kind of look at things and understand if we need new capacity, you know, what what that should be and what that should look at, cuz that was something that, you know, when Diane Benson was here, was so helpful. Um because um historically, it was kind of, you know, we hire people and they have roles. But we haven't ever had a really good kind of classification compensation scheme.
Oh, yeah, 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 the the our H R person is it was, so they'll they'll know if we pay within the fifty percentile, seventy fifty percentile, based on these skill levels, what that job pays.
And then performance management, right?
All that, all that stuff, yeah.
Implement that, train everybody, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh again, I could have uh our person uh interview, she'd be much better than me, at least the first, you know, I'll gather, and then if we like that person.
Yeah. Thank you.
To you guys, so I'll do the same for the I T person, the H R person, you like them, great, but I'll have my team probably better, maybe better than me.
Thank you, Mark.
Good, is that all good with everything? I mean, is that a vote or?
Whoa, the board, the board makes the final hire, we we all make the final hire decision still.
So, my my question on uh admin and uh F finance director, I T and H R, is it budgeted, can we afford it, what's it gonna do to the bank?
Well, that is the, that is the point where David Rowley said he wanted to stop in the budget process last spring.
Get a.
With with, yeah, he wanted, he wanted to get a better handle on um the finances before proceeding with any of the hires.
So.
And that's where where we sort of hit a stall.
But then we hired a parks director, so um so what I, what I'd say is, you know, and and I'm open to to any order, I know we got this opportunity for Mark Thompson as interim, but I would suggest that we not go for a permanent administrator unless there's somebody great out there. Until we get a handle on on.
No, but if Mark's only six months.
No, I know, I know, but what I'm saying is, even just kind of um by April first, it's not just if we have enough for an administrator, but somebody who comes in with H R, like we're trying to convert our retiree medical benefit um for this side of the house, that'll save some costs, but take some.
Into a V or something, or.
Hmm?
Or anyways.
And and then the other thing is, all of our our benefits and retirement programs, there's a lot we could save there for overhead, so right now, and you know, healthcare, everything's going up, so I just want an H R and finance person to come in and um get it together, I mean, we can do it all at once, but we're gonna have some, you know, more retirements in the next couple of years. Um so that'll reduce our ongoing costs.
No, but so I guess the question is, is are we going to be able to afford to do this, or is that a a a a discussion we're gonna have to have down the road?
I think that I, it's a discussion we're gonna have to have down the road.
It's not like we've budgeted for it, the money's just sitting there in a pot of money waiting, and we're actually better off ahead cuz we haven't had to pay out the salary.
Right.
Well, some of these positions are budgeted.
In a million dollar deficit budget.
So what would be the number one thing that we would have to do first in order to?
Finance director.
Administrator.
And then it sounds like the budget?
Finance director is forecasting.
Okay.
Typically.
I mean, I mean, fi- finance director, H R, all of it's important, I mean, the more we get more efficient, we gotta start looking at our service delivery, start looking at cross-training staff.
Okay, but if we don't, you, from what I heard, is that we don't have the the bu- the mu- the money budgeted to hire.
What I'm saying is, the budget that this board adopted a year ago has a million dollar general fund deficit, so if we budgeted it, it's still was in a deficit, so I mean, do we have the money in the general fund, potentially, but so, look, we, it's a bigger conversation again. I will say for the two thousandth time, we need a qualified finance director, and we can get moving, I'm not saying, I'm not saying these others aren't also important, but like when we we go through these exercises and we have an admin committee, we say, okay, what are the costs gonna be? We have current staff do analyses, and we don't have all of our questions.
Well, I think it's more than an exercise, we interviewed a guy a couple of centuries ago, he is uh and talked to some over the phone, and he, he very well could be, if the board likes, he, we could potentially take up his uh bringing him on on December thirteenth.
The uh the.
Yeah.
Administrator.
Administrator, yeah.
Yeah, so I I don't, I think it's more than a theoretical.
If you guys have talked about salary, let's talk offline and let's.
No, I haven't, no, I haven't, no, I haven't, but I'm saying.
I'm just saying we can look at what's in the administrator's budget still.
It 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 looks like someone's potentially coming onboard, we're ready to onboard someone pretty quickly, am I right on that?
Yeah.
A- a- and is there, you know, the good news is we found somebody, the bad news is that he's not working for free.
Right, so so I'd like to know, and I don't know, if you guys could kind of get a sense of what, what the package might be, we have an employment attorney who can help with a contract.
Pretty general.
Yeah.
But but we, what we have is we budget the general fund by department, we have an administrative department, so that's easy to look at, we can see how much money's left.
So I, yeah, I was just raising the big picture, it's like, hey, it's great, we're bringing all these people on to.
Yeah, you say that's a general question, you say it's.
The safe side, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, with the asterisks is what I'm hearing, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so Jessica, before I get to the finance director, I just wanna make sure, I respect for you, that, you know, we talked about the crud, it's called a crud, the the first top topic we covered, right? I'm gonna put the green checkbox, I think we have a a plan.
The crud A C O.
Create, read, update.
Yeah, crud, crud echo, I'm just putting it in the checkbox by the.
Chart, right.
At least we talked, we have a next step, right?
Right.
Okay, you said there was four issues.
Yeah.
What were the other, well, I know the, I know one with the finance, right, what were the other two, just in high level?
Oh, yeah, the other two, and we can talk, let's talk about them another time.
Could you change that to money, money D, because that looks like fire department.
Oh.
Oh, please, add this finance director.
Alright, cuz I thought we.
For our, no, for our discussion.
I'm like, now he's talking about fire department.
No, we're not, we're.
We'll we'll talk about them another time, just tell me where they are, just 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 a.
No, I know.
Yeah, 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 I mean, they they all go to this packet, this is the org chart.
Just give me where they are.
So, um.
We can both.
Well, unfilled position, position and under managed people, we just talked about that, all those issues.
Okay, so.
Um and then the the last one is the deputy treasurer, deputy supervisor co-appointment. I would really um recommend that, you know, the deputy treasurer return to deputy treasurer full time. Um and you know, that is, in terms of the appointments, it's entirely Will's call about if he and who will be a deputy supervisor, and Donna's call who will be a deputy treasurer, but it's up to the board um um if we'll support their compensation.
Okay, so, yeah, I I don't, I don't, I hear you, um, when you say unfilled, so this is in addition to the financial, is that you're missing an F T E or something?
No, the unfilled positions are, well, first of all, with the finance director, Amy, so everybody has said, once we bring in the finance director, they're gonna say, okay, here's what I'm gonna need, maybe another person.
Okay, so you.
Uh the unfilled, I was talking, H R.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're getting that, okay.
Yeah, really the H R and then, and really more training for current staff. Um I I can't emphasize how much room there is for improvement with the efficiency of our operators.
Okay, alright, so so for me, then, if I if I still had to go back, the the crux of your big issues of this and this, if I had to, if I had to pick two, I guess.
So so.
Just to.
Are you talking, are you on your slide, number three, unfilled positions and under managed people?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
It's kind of what we've talked about.
Okay. Alright, yeah, I, well, you're right, let's get those, cuz we're we're in four o'clock here.
And they're under managed because who they report to, or they're under managed because of the sloppy jobs that they get away with doing, or they're under managed cuz they don't have good job, what do you mean by under managed?
I mean, the board.
That's a loaded term.
Yeah, I mean, well, what I mean is, I don't think the township I has done, been deliberate, I think sometimes we have built jobs around the people and not around the needs of the organization. And I think that um we have very good people, but I will tell you again, they are, have been under trained, under managed, like I said, when I came in to supervise finance director, um finance manager, um I saw that firsthand, I see that with our office staff, you know, and they, you know.
Hey, everybody can use training, let's just be honest here, I mean.
Yeah, but training, and we we have no performance management, and so, again, when I see these.
Part of that would be to see, no.
H R.
Yeah, that all, this part, all parts of falls under the H R function, so, alright, so here you, got it?
Exactly.
Checkbox on that one, let's, 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 let's leave this one alone for right now, uh let's, let's go to this finance director, cuz I think if we get to those two, the other ones, I think are are uh, so we go back to the org chart, we can talk about it, um.
Which org chart, the one you have?
Yeah, or what whatever, yeah, I think we've already gotta beat beat it up.
I thought we just worked through your entire presentation, what else are we trying to resolve?
I think the only, the only thing we kind of put to the side, we can call it a day if you want, but what I think we've resolved yet is the finance director role, because we're not gonna hire anybody, and if, we're not hiring a finance director, so it's clear who they're gonna report to, we're not doing that.
Well, I I don't see how we can resolve that, the Jessica said earlier that she's um determined and optimistic about her lawsuit, and her lawsuit revolves around that question.
Well, I would, I, what I will say is, I have, I'm asking for only what was the status quo, which is that. I supervise the finance director and finance staff insofar as they're carrying out my duties, insofar as they're keeping the journals and ledgers of the township. And I don't think it's the board's place to tell me, when I have a personal legal statutory responsibility to do this, for the board to withhold staff and not hire, or not allow direct me to direct it, so that I can certify that these journals and ledgers are correct. I mean, this last year has been a disastrous example about what happens when a board interferes with an elected official's duties, I mean.
Okay, so I I hear what you're saying, I don't know that, I I guess where I'm coming from, Jessica, it is whether they report, here's what I'm hearing, here's what, here's what, I guess, I'm just you know, I'm honestly, right, is when I hear they have to report to me to make that happen, that feels, I'm just telling you, my my gut reaction to it feels like a pot of bread, that's kind of what it feels like.
And 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 here's what I'll say in support of that, in your org chart, you've got the clerk with the finance director, and you've stripped the supervisor's deputy, even though statutorily he can have one. So he doesn't get a supervisor, but you get a finance, I mean, he doesn't get a, he doesn't get a a deputy, but you get a finance director.
It's a return to the status quo.
No, but but it does look like a little bit of a power.
Wait, I I'm, I I'll I'll comfort you as much as I can about how it looks, but I'm telling you, it is a return to the status quo, and and I will say.
We never had a finance director, what do you mean status quo? We had a finance director, it was Sandy. We had a finance director, it was Sandy. Well, okay, she was our accountant CP, she doesn't have a CPA, but she's a.
She was the CFO.
A CFO, isn't it?
And she reported to Donna on things where she was carrying out her duties and me to things where I was carrying out.
So was there a call reporting, is that right? Did she report to you on stuff?
She technically reported, so when I came in, okay, let me back up. When I came in, and Kathy and Donna, please, I believe Sandy technically always reported to the manager.
Yeah.
Who did her annual re- who did her annual review?
That's not something that was done in South Township, any reviews were not.
And that's probably long, long time.
Ever, and so when I.
Long time.
So so when I came in and I was deputy clerk for two years before I was clerk, and I came in and I, you know, will remind the board that I've managed many successful teams and I have overseen public funds and I know what kind of normal practice is, I saw that there were big areas for improvement here. I saw that Bryce Kelly, the manager, who's a lovely guy, had a lot on his plate. I had private conversations with him. He was supportive cuz he understood the statute, the whole board was supportive. And so I said, I'm gonna directly supervise and I had a whole plan for implementing policies, getting training, all of this stuff. And the first board was supportive, that's why we have a CIP, why we have any policies, why we have the budget and finance committee, why we've taken those steps. Now, where the conflict started was around where we had differences of opinion on if Sandy still had, given the changing business needs of the organization, the qualifications to do the job or not. And that's where this is stemming from, I believe. Now, Sandy exited the finance director position to become a full-time deputy treasurer, um which was Donna's demands had grown, Jim Murty was retiring as assessor.
And Donna, are you, you're happy with the work that Sandy's doing for you in a minute?
Oh, she's one hundred percent.
Okay, so you're you're, that's all, that's all, that department's all good.
A hundred percent what, a hundred percent good or a hundred percent bad?
If there's a nickel off on anything, you don't move forward until you find it, that's how deep.
So you're satisfied with her work?
You betcha.
Are you, how about her ability to work with others?
She works with us most of the time just fine.
Okay.
Hello, Kevin, I'm there, most of the time.
How about with, how about, how about her, how about her ability, this is a, you know, a public meeting, sorry, her ability to work in transition with and coordinate with the finance director, no matter, without regard to who he or she reports to.
I think she would do that because they need her.
Do others agree at this table?
I would hope they would.
That Sandy would work well with with the finance director to whomever he or she reported?
I I think so, I I think that Sandy has a ton of historical knowledge, she'll be available and help anybody who comes in. I think that it's important, though, and I will say, as clerk, you know, I want to move the finances to be more professional.
There was a public meeting, there was a public meeting and there were a lot of fireworks, I thought, when when she, when she, I didn't want to say testify, it's my day job, but when she, when she spoke, when she gave her presentation, it 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 was an awkward, like, whoa, there was.
Well, you should just stop.
I have that concern. Woo.
From, how long could you take being beaten down and told you're not, you don't know anything? Jessica, how long?
I I I never um said, I I would not characterize my supervision style as beating down. And I I think that there's, you know, we brought in a lot of resources, a lot of coaching, when I saw that that wasn't um of interest, um I realized Will concurred and um so so what I wanna say is, so so Sandy moved to be full-time deputy treasurer and I fully expected that the board would hire a new finance director um by July or August twenty twenty-one. And then here we are, and then and then these proposals start coming out from the prior board to, oh no, the unfilled imaginary finance person is gonna report to Will, oh no, it's gonna report to the administrator.
Because we can't get along as a group oft- oftentimes.
I I think that.
We, I say we, I'm not pointing anything.
No, 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 I know, I think we're here because there is, I think we're here because I think that there is not a commitment to do the right thing by the township for good checks and balances.
The township is the board or is the township?
The people.
To a to the voters?
Yes, the the taxpayers and.
The voters don't wanna do the right thing?
No, 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 the, I don't think a hundred percent of us are on the same page about what the right thing is to do. And I have been so concerned with the actions of this board because they're so clearly, to me, anti-democratic, anti-good governance and eroding the checks and balances. No, I'm.
Anti-anti democratic, come on, man.
Anti-democratic norms, absolutely, because we're, because because I will say, you know, a separation of powers is so important. You have an independent treasurer, Donna always says, you know, you say, I break legs or something like that, which.
That I do, don't try to take that money.
Right, okay.
Good, hold your legs.
All right.
Tell your friends.
Well, no, but what I'm saying is, that's what we need in a treasurer, is an independent treasurer, holding the cash. Now, here's my question, what honorable reason does anybody in this township have to not have an equally independent accountant?
But wait a second, wait a second, Jessica, we already agreed, and I I I I fully support your whole crud situation, cuz that is you, really you, managing, making sure those books are independent, you're the one who controls them. So I think I stand behind that a hundred percent.
Sure.
Right, I mean, I'm the one who brought it up and asked you to go put the chart together. That, to me, is the whole crux of that that issue right there. That is the heart and soul, everything, cuz that's where the 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 data lives, where the data, you agree, that's where the data is.
As long as it's including who is entering the data.
You're the one, you're the one setting up the echo list, remember? You're doing that, right? I'm assuming, I I'm, and again, I will support you, vehemently support you, as long as everything makes sense, right?
Yeah, 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 as long as it makes sense.
Hundred percent, I think you get the backing, I think everyone here on that, that's, that, to me, out of everything that's here.
People out?
No, I mean, well, you mean to of what?
Well, you said.
Like, for example, for.
Of the CRUD, of the the create.
Oh, so so for for example.
Update, delete.
Okay, so, for example, when I, um when Sandy Eckler transitioned to deputy treasurer, she was no longer working in the general ledger. She still had the ability to view the general ledger, but I did lock her ability to make changes to the general ledger because that's not proper for somebody handling cash to be also modifying the finance records. Rebecca was doing that, it was fine, it was all getting done.
Yeah, I guess what Mark doesn't wanna do is create a fiefdom with respect to books and records. And I'm not saying you are, but I mean.
You know, and this this is where, this is where I really think, you know, and Mark, with all due respect, man, like, you know, you're like, really? Democracy, really? And it's like, I'm not trying to be hyperbolic, but like, yeah, really, like, and I hear fiefdom and things, but but no, 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 and I'm not, no, we're good, guys, but I'm saying, like, that's what it's about, you want somebody independent from the person assessing, the person taking in the cash.
At the impression, I mean, he's been the same as, you, it was almost accusatory that some people were being undemocratic, I just thought that was a little strong, man.
Well, I do believe that in the past.
Maybe in the past, but I don't see this group anybody.
I'm I'm not saying that.
Explain that statement, that, explain that.
Well, I think that, I think that wanting to consolidate power in certain offices when the statute clearly, clearly makes it.
Oh.
And and for the board, I mean, how many hours of board meetings did we sit here? And and then the board, and we had attorney after attorney saying privately to you and me, Will, saying, don't do this, publicly, all the, don't do this, and then moving forward and doing it. And 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 Donna, I even remember you saying, well, even if we take away your authority, it's not like you don't still have responsibility, you know?
That's right.
Right, and I disagree with that. I, if I have statute.
You can't take their authority until, wait a minute, hold on, Donna, you can't take away your authority until she's still responsible, that's not.
That's what the board did.
If she knows how to read the letters and the books, she knows what to look for and she could spot inappropriateness. That is responsibility without.
And that.
The ability to do whatever, cuz she should not do that either.
Now, that is the board telling the clerk, who is elected by the people, to be the clerk, that is the board infringing on the clerk's resp- on the clerk's ability to do her job, Donna, without the respect. And I will say, I have never, you know, gone, you know.
But all right, we're we're going around circles here, we've 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 come up with a solution. You're 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 gonna figure out this crud, we're gonna have, I I the first thing I'd have to do is just tell Donna, make sure she was.
Oh, for sure.
The thing that's gonna be the first.
It's fine, she's got her chance.
Okay, everyone's gonna circle.
Understand, but I guess if I had to put the priority order, it'd be Donna, right, that's all I'm saying, right?
Gonna Donna's gonna be comfortable with, and Donna's I'm comfortable with, and I'm gonna ask a lot of questions, right?
Of course.
So we got that, I think we get, we talked about, I think we got two kind of covered already, I think we'll solve that problem. Three, I'm just gonna just table that for right now, I don't see any any benefit, we gotta get to four here. And what I'm telling you on four, we have an open lawsuit, we have all kinds of challenges, having that person, we we will not hire somebody, if they have to report right now what you're proposing, we'll we'll not get anybody there.
And I disagree, I disagree, I've had people tell me they'd be happy to work for us.
Well.
Under that scenario.
Not the candidates that we were interviewing, they were came from the south.
I I guess, I don't think that's, in my opinion, right now, the way I see the finance director tying everybody together, working with, working with Sandy Heckler.
Sure.
Working with Donna, working with departments.
But why couldn't the finance director work, what what's the biggest concern about Sandy Heckler?
Again, I don't know why you were so, the message I'm getting, Jessica, is they gotta report to you, it's a power thing. It shouldn't matter where they put, who, you should be like, who cares? Literally should be, who cares?
If we had, if we, if if we had, one, we don't have an administrator, two, we have a brand-new board.
We're gonna have an administrator.
Gonna, 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 so what I'm saying is, in the future, I can imagine a future where I'm comfortable delegating that responsibility for somebody else to supervise the finance director, for sure. But I am so far from that.
But everybody's so far from from where you're at, so how do you, how do, who's the, I just gave you a gift, I gave, I gave, that was your biggest crux, it's about the.
I didn't say that was my biggest crux, you said that's the biggest elephant, I said, I don't size elephants.
Well, if if somebody works, reports to you or not, that that's, that's, I'm just being honest, it's a red flag.
Yeah, so so here's.
If I heard that from anyone I employed, it'd be a big red flag.
Exactly, so let's talk about this, cuz here's probably where the difference is, what do you mean by report?
Line of authority, supervision.
This is never, never, no supervision, not not, not how they do something, there's never a how.
Right, and it's not, the board always hires and fires.
Yes.
So, right, but what I'm saying is.
I I don't, I don't think that, I don't think the role of what the finance, in my mind, what the finance director does, does everything just for the clerk, the finance director does things for Donna, does things for departments. It's not just for you.
Right, but 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 the, I'm sorry, but.
Supervisory, in this in this particular case.
Yeah, exactly, I and I agree with you that that would be the role. And and insofar as they're carrying out the duties of, I mean, right now, we have an an interim administrator who has taken the books, who is directing finance.
We can put all that, I don't care about that.
I I know, I know, but you talk about that as it's the past, that is our present.
Mark, can I interject just a second, cuz it seemed like you were on the track of something a moment ago that I thought was a key thought, I mean, a key concept here, and that is, who's the treasurer supervises the finance director insofar as the finance director is carrying out work for the treasurer?
Which I agree with.
The clerk, and the clerk would supervise the finance director insofar as the finance director is carrying things out for the clerk.
Which I agree.
But the reporting relationship, like all of the employees in the township, the the finance director would report to the township administrator.
Yes.
Yeah, so that is, I, it seemed like that's where you were headed, it seemed like a simple.
Yeah, I don't know why that'd be a big deal, you're still gonna do everything you asked them to do, and they're also gonna do everything, here she wants to do everything, and Donna needs.
And and that's where, I can imagine that scenario working, I, until we clear up, but.
What do you say, imagine, why is it even, why is it even random?
Why do you imagine?
I I I guess, I'm just gonna use by that.
Yeah, 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 so I can imagine consenting to that scenario in the future. The reason I I don't at this point, but but I agree, and all it's ever asked for is to supervise the activities where they're carrying out my statutory duties.
You got it, and you got it, that's what I'm telling you, you got, you got, you got it.
But how do I, how how do I, how how could I be assured of that?
You've got six people here behind you to support you, six people here to support you, why wouldn't we, it's what's, it's what's best for Sile.
Here's one of my concerns, is what Mark said.
You're killing me, get.
Is the camps.
Okay, I think.
You got yours.
Coming out?
Sorry, Mark.
I don't have a camp.
No, no, no.
I'm saying, I think there might be a perception out of the public, rightly or wrongly, that there are in fact camps, that you have a deputy and they have a deputy and never the twain shall meet. Now, I'm not saying that's accurate, but there's this perception, and as long as there's this perception out there that there are these factions, that it's gonna make it harder to bring somebody in. And I think bringing somebody in who initially reports to the administrator, but works closely with you and works closely with you and you too have necessary will, but that initially reports to the administrator, gives the the administrator the autonomy to supervise, but one of their big assignments is to work with the clerk. I'm okay, based on my research, my research, calling people, talking around, see how it's doing, if if if, when when there's a more stable, less acrimonious uh form of government, knock on wood, say some prayers, that 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 it, the finance director would report to the clerk and maybe it's something we revisit every six months or something like that.
And I see it, I I I I see an evolution, I see it opposite, though, starting with clerk, cuz I wanna get the books clean, I wanna make sure that everything's okay. I want this board out of the financial records of this township so that I can say to the voters, to the residents, things are good, got a good finance director.
But have that finance director not uh re- report to the admin, does nothing to preclude any of that. So that that argument does not have water at all, zero water.
Well, that's exactly what what's happened here, we had um the administrator go in and start changing the books against.
Already just talked about echo, you're gonna drive all that.
We're we're talking and we're making progress and I appreciate you guys a lot, I do, but 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 what I'm saying is.
But you know what I'm hearing, I'm just gonna be honest, I'm hearing, I am right, it's, you gotta be right in this, that's what I'm hearing, Jess.
No, what I'm, what I'm, what you, what I'm saying is that I need to be able to be assured I am personally, statutorily responsible for making sure that these books are correct. If I don't have the authority, if somebody has the authority to direct the finance director and say, put in this different journal entry, put in that, now, we would hope that would never happen, but in recent history, yes.
But line authority over a finance, I don't see line authority over a finance director as something contained within the four corners of MCL forty-one, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-nine. Uh if you work with that finance director, if you work with the administrator on the fin- if one of, one of the things that we assign the administrator to do is to recruit a finance director, help recruit a finance director who shall work closely with uh the the clerk in 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 the, with respect to the records and books and paper.
We we had language, so so we had language, even in July, that Will kept nixing, frankly, in in meeting, in meetings with Amy Sell, where I I was coming up with compromise language after compromise language around, okay, but it's gotta say, because treasures change.
I got an idea, let's just do this, why don't we take the finance director's roles and responsibilities, right? And make it clear in there that 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 even if they report to the to the to the admin, the, you have control of, like, you're concerned about them and the records and whatever.
I have three versions of that, that were all nixed, so I can bring those to this board and everybody can take a look at it.
Bring the one that you like, bring the one that you like the best, and let's find a compromise, so you have that comfort that the books aren't gonna get marched or whatever that you discussed, though this person would report to the to the admin. And Mark, what do you mean, you met Mark, he's a good guy, he's not gonna play games.
Oh, yeah, and I was very comfortable with Mark and David.
Perfect, so let's let's do that, and then that way, you still have what you need, we've got a good compromise here, we can go, we can be hired, and we can move forward.
Right, and I would say, too, we can still recruit, even with this question.
No, I wanna resolve, I I I don't wanna, cuz they're gonna say, who am I reporting to, I'm not sure, I'm not doing that.
Yeah, well, and I would say, too.
I'm not doing that.
Jessica, what I heard John say was possibly an interim solution here for six months, and then we reevaluate at the end of six months. I agree, the finance director should report to the clerk. However, we've got a lot going on here and they're proposing a compromise with the option to reevaluate in six months.
How about at three months?
Whatever, whatever that sounds, three months, sure.
Because six months is out in that, at the interim ad administrator.
But why not recruit, I mean, what what is the problem with recruiting for a finance director that ever boards into the work?
Because I think an administrator who wants to come here wants to know. I, I don't know. I, I would think that an administrator is going to want that person to report at least initially to them. I don't know.
I, I mean, what is the barrier with posting a finance director that reports to the clerk, which was the status quo?
Because that's not going to be the way it's going to come into it. They're going to come in, reporting to the finance, I'm sorry, to the, to the admin. And I want to be crystal clear about reporting structure when somebody comes in.
I think we need to be clear too, but I also think we need somebody who, who would. I mean, I think anybody who works in local government understands, there's going to be some roles that the treasurer has, some roles the clerk has, and hold on, no, Will, but.
Not, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, but, but Will, but Will, in all of these conversations too, we need to disentangle the supervisor from the administrator. Because we are.
He's got part of any of this.
We are talking about, we are talking about the finance director.
I, I understand, I understand, but part of this is, no, but part of this is, this comes up when we were going through this job description before, you know, um, Will talking about, you know, all of his authority and this and that, and, and, and it's just this control, control, control. And it's, it's, it's gotta stop. And.
Jessica, give it time, give it time.
Jessica, you're here.
Well, Will hasn't, I haven't seen Will do any power grabbing today. And, and, and you know, Will hasn't said, mine, 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 I want it, I want it at all. Cause if he did, um, I, I think he, there would be some pushback on it. I know he's got, he's got, uh.
We have to repeal the resolution.
I, I was going to say, there are three or four or five, maybe six, seven, eight or nine resolutions regarding his job description and I don't know if, if, if you have a job description, or if you have a job description, or if other clerks have job descriptions. So,
I have a. Under the resolution.
We, I, the revisiting of the job description, I think is going to come on its own.
Well, I look forward to that.
I, I, I think it's going to happen. So, so, you know.
It's gotta happen first.
Really?
No. So the first thing I, I feel is.
Well, it's gotta happen.
It does have to happen.
The administrator in first. Mark Thompson, if, if it is him, we're still interviewing, right? And we all have to agree or not.
And you're meeting with him Tuesday as well. Good.
That would be the first real, real concrete step that we can take other than the little things that we've talked about.
And I will say that one thing he has asked for is clear delineation of our org chart. He has asked for that.
And he, in his mind, the finance director should report to.
Did you? And I agree.
And I did not hear that I didn't have that discussion with you, but that's okay. Cause I'm in agreement with you. So, it's okay.
Come on, man, it's not. It's, it's, it's what's best for SIO really is for today. The way SIO is, it really is. It doesn't impede you your job.
Yeah, I don't see it. I don't see it.
Okay, it's, it's back to the I am right. You, you, I've got to be honest with you. On this one, you're playing I am right. Yeah, you can, a hundred percent you are. A hundred percent you are.
No, I.
Give it six months.
You're not doing what's best for SIO. That's why we're in the crap hole ring right now. Jessica, come on.
Wait, 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 wait. We can't, okay, I understand about the I am right. We're all in a team. But if we all are able to bring things to the table and Jess, you have things that you could show us. And it's not just, I want to power grab. I mean, when I read through things, um, you know, I, I feel that the finance director should be under the two statutory duties because I'm back to evidence and fact-based, the two jobs that have statutory duties regarding finances.
Look at the evidence. The evidence is this place is.
Right. Well, right. I agree with that.
Evidence. So I'm just trying to come with a way to listen. I, I'm not saying that eventually it doesn't go to Jess. I'm not suggesting that doesn't happen. I'm just saying, today, given where we're at, let's get a finance director hired, see how things go for us, bring the temperature just down in this place, build some trust back up with Donna, build some trust back up with Sandy, cause that's where I hear a lot of the friction happening here. And once that happens, we, we can reshuffle some things around. It gets us moving forward. I'm just trying to get us moving forward. Right? And it's, it's a compromise. You're right, but I, I'm trying to work with and say, here's a compromise here. I got these guys to bend on this one. Right? Cause I think in your, and I, cause I, Jessica, and the reason I think you're right, I think you're spot on on this one. So I will support you. You know me. I, I just trying to do what's right here, man. And I support you a hundred percent on this one. I, I don't today on this because it, given the circumstance, the proponents of the evidence that we have and we're at right now, I'm going to ask you to bend on this one. These other ones, I think we already solved this one. I'm just asking a part of it. That's a reasonable gift. And that's the only way we're going to move forward. Cause if we don't do that, we will not move forward.
But, but I, and I, I want to talk more and, and I guess, you know, I, I can talk to Mark about it, so we haven't talked about that. I mean, but, but I can talk to Mark Thompson about, we have, didn't get into any of the reporting stuff, of course. That was kind of.
And, and let's, and let's get you some more, let's get a more to Donna. So if you're comfortable, make sure that there's enough job description that make sure you have whatever you need from that finance director to make sure that you're comfortable doing your job. And I know you guys are, everybody's kind of got some sour grapes about what's happened in the past. I can't fix that. I can just tell you going forward, you know, hopefully some level of trust in me and Mark Reiser, and certainly with Julian, and certainly.
Yes, I know. You're completely sincere. I know.
And I'm going to support Will and sort of Donna. I'm just going to do whatever's right. I'm just going to support whatever's right.
And that's what I'm trying to do too, Mark. I am.
Okay, so there's going to be a little compromise.
And, and I just, I just don't, I, you know, let's look at it. I'm, I'm open to talking more, but, but let's look at it. I, I, I want to be assured that this board won't, through its administrator, interfere with my job.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, but we're not there yet. I hear the intention.
You know what, you know what? I, I think here's what we need to do. We've been here for six hours. Let everybody go and kind of just suck, absorb and think, get things through. Cause I have found every email, I write all my emails at night and every Sunday at, at night. I always send them the following word because I'll really know, I go, shit, about some of that. God, uh, so, uh.
I have one thought though, that just, it, it's something that just went through my mind.
Go though.
Finance director, I'm sitting here thinking, wait, wait a minute. That is a board hired position who is here to help us run the township and answer to all of us.
Yep.
Not one person. It's, yes.
So make it to the board, like, just make it like on a, on the same level as administrator. You got the administrator and the board.
That's what I said in the. Eventually, yeah. Eventually, I'm sure he'd make a report to the board.
So I made it the same, I made the finance director the same level as the administrator, cause I agree on that part. So insofar as, insofar as.
What, Mark, here, here it is. So I think she's.
But as a starting point, cause, cause that's an important point.
They would answer.
I don't see that on the right.
They would, and actually, and he's, he's a department head in essence, answers to them, you know, the administrator. And I don't like that term answers to, I mean, reports to.
The finance director can.
Why the hell didn't you say this two hours earlier?
I don't. Well, I'm sitting here trying to think.
You guys, but you guys really, what I have said is.
Actually, well, as the structure shows, report to the administrator.
Why did she say that? God, he's.
But he's a board hire.
That's what you're saying right here?
Not a clerk hires.
I don't think that's what she's saying.
I know, yeah, I.
Well, I did in the beginning, but I think he is a department head. Therefore, I think he should report to the administrator. I, I think.
But, oh.
Okay, so what I've solved. All right, so let's, let's let it absorb, let's let it absorb it. You know, wrap this up. And I think we have some public comments.
This time, yeah.
But, but I, but Donna. Yeah.
No, we don't. We have no, one public comment at the beginning.
I've been here for six hours. I'm going to give you a public comment.
Yeah, no, 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 but.
By acclamation of the board.
Wait, wait, hold on. What are our next steps here, Mark?
Did Donna say report directly to the board or you didn't?
I did, but then she realized that that's not what she meant.
But I would, well, wait a minute, Will. That is what she said.
Okay, ask her again.
And I said, but I was in my mind, the organization chart, report to the administrator, cause it's a department head. Can't change these all around and house you guys.
What I don't want is, what I like about Donna, your initial suggestion, and why I want the finance director elevated to be at least a peer with the administrator, is because I don't want the operations and all the politics of the board that the administrator absorbs to, um, influence the finance director. Finance director needs to be able to be independent.
And that's a compromise.
I can live with the, the finance director initially reporting directly to the board and adjusting it later.
Yeah, come on.
Well, I would do that too.
Let's, let's, as you suggested, let's absorb this, because I think there's a lot to think about in that little slip of the tongue that the trick remains.
Uh, honestly.
Yeah, it was comprehensive.
And, and I will say again, that is one of the things I have said is that insofar as they carry out board responsibilities, they report right to the board, treasurer, treasurer, clerk, clerk. It's consistent.
All right, public comment. Pam, you're on.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, ASIO resident. Thank you all for this session. I know it was long and tough, but I, I, this is a good step forward. A couple of little things. Um, trustee Reiser, there is no power grab because you're not voting on anything. So what you're hearing are people having a conversation but not committing. And I, I feel that there, you can find a disconnect when you come to vote on it. It's my concern and what I have seen in this previous board, uh, the last two years. So, and I want to, I want to make a comment about Jessica and, uh, the deputy supervisor. She was the moving force, um, giving, um, deputy treasurer, her salary of ninety thousand dollars. The treasurer earns half of that. So that's a, that's, that's a major, that's a major thing. And, and Jessica supported that because that's what she was getting as a finance director. And, and it was, it was kind of a weird thing to send the, to get the deputy treasurer to have almost twice the treasurer's salary. This chart here, when was the last time we had a deputy supervisor? I don't know the history, but I don't think we've ever have, had one. And I don't understand why that's important. I don't understand why that's needed. And I think as a township, it looks bad when we have the same person having both the deputy treasurer position and the deputy supervisor position. And I have another note here and it's like, um, okay, I already got that. Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
So, um, we don't really need a motion to adjourn, but why don't we say that we're adjourning at quarter to five?
Hey, did you fix that clock?
No, it's not fixed. I'm, I'm adjusting in my mind. It's two minutes, it's two minutes fast.
Are you picking up the wall and adjusting? Oh, yeah, you're, no, no. I think that we fixed it. It's four forty-seven.
Mary, Mary fixed it.
Oh, she did?
Yeah, a while ago.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So, hey, how about a round of applause for Brassall.
Great job, Mark.
He tried.